Councilmember Cormac?
Here.
Councilmember DuBois?
Here.
Mayor Philseth?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fine?
Here.
Councilmember Niss? Councilmember Koo?
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka? Six present.
So the... That's probably for Joe. So the... Probably Joe. So the... We have a couple of special orders of the day. And the first one... The first one is... One of the most serious I can remember. Which is, we're gonna have a... We're gonna have some recognition for Dijo O'Komena. And so I guess, so how are we gonna do this? I think Councilmember Cormac is gonna read the proclamation.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, if... Yes, once you... Councilmember Cormac has read the proclamation, I will receive the proclamation as will our Utilities Director, Dean Bachelor.
Okay. So you wanna read the proclamation? Please proceed.
I'd like to thank Mayor Philseth for this opportunity. It was my honor to travel to Dixon for Mr. O'Komena's funeral, to pay my respects and our respects to his family, to hear each of his four daughters speak about what his presence was like in their lives, and to see his family receive the folded flag that was a mark of respect for his service. What little comfort I took on that day came in the form of our caring and professional staff, and I'd like to recognize them by name. City Manager Ed Chikata, who spoke during the service; Director of Utilities, Dean Bachelor; Fire Chief Gio Blackshire, who met with the family before the funeral; Chief People Officer Rumi Portillo, who has been a source of support to everyone throughout this process. I'd particularly like to commend the Fire Honor Guard, who stood by on the day of Mr. O'Komena's death, and again on the day of his funeral. I am personally grateful for their presence on that difficult day and for their gift of compassion and strength in equal measures. And now I'd like to read their names into the record: Captain Mark Muzzi; Firefighter Emilio Tiscareno; Engineer Orly Hatfield; and Fire Inspector Scott Woodfin. Honoring Donatus D. Agben O'Komena, whereas the city of Palo Alto and the broader community lost a valued member in Mr. Donatus Agben O'Komena Jr. on November 16, 2019; and whereas, on behalf of the city of Palo Alto, we wish to record our deep sorrow over Donatus Agben O'Komena Jr.'s passing; whereas, Donatus Agben O'Komena Jr. was a beloved father, friend, and colleague who chose to serve his community in a very high-risk but critical role as a line person with the city of Palo Alto; whereas, Mr. O'Komena was an accomplished and well-respected individual within the electric utility industry and dedicated his career to the service and safety of others; whereas, Mr. O'Komena served faithfully in the United States Air Force as an electrical systems journeyman for nearly four years and received the Air Force Training Ribbon, Air Force Outstanding Unit Award, and the Air Force Achievement Medal; whereas, upon completing military service, Mr. O'Komena continued his career as an electrician with the Sacramento Municipal Utility District, later with Pacific Gas and Electric, and finally with the city of Palo Alto Utilities; whereas, during his career as an electrician, Donatus Agben O'Komena Jr. founded his own company, O'Komena Electronics; and his life and service will forever be cherished by family and friends as well as respected and esteemed by colleagues. Now therefore Eric Philseth, Mayor of the city of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim appreciation for outstanding public service to Donatus Agben O'Komena Jr. and extends our sincerest condolences to his family and everyone whose lives he touched.
If you could... Oh. Perhaps I could just make a few comments here as receiving the proclamation on behalf of the family. And staff will make sure that we convey the council's proclamation to the O'Komena family. Would note that, as the council's aware, Mr. O'Komena, or D., as he is known by his friends, was a new employee with the city at the time of his passing. This really makes it all the more impressive that he was able to make such a positive and meaningful impression on those of us that had the privilege of meeting him. And that includes his new employee orientation cohort. His loss is certainly tragic, and we hope that the council's proclamation this evening will be a lasting tribute that his family will have to add to their cherished memories. Would also like to acknowledge that times of tragedy are also times for the community to come together. And this is evidenced by the support that we've seen by the Palo Alto community. Added to note, we have representatives from SEIU here this evening as well as the utility managers took a leadership role in providing support to the O'Komena family. Also note the ongoing individual and organizational support that's being provided for our workforce. So on behalf of this administration, we will ensure that D.'s family receives this proclamation and the council's condolences.
We have a second proclamation this evening, which will be read by Councilmember Lydia Koo.
Thank you, Mayor. Second proclamation is to the Project Safety Net for their 10th anniversary. And it goes, "Whereas youth, parents, educators, youth-serving organizations, faith community, healthcare providers, legislators, business, government staff, and resident advocates came together in fall 2009 to form Project Safety Net. And whereas, Project Safety Net was launched as a collaborative community network held together by a common interest of fostering youth well-being and suicide prevention in Palo Alto. And whereas, Project Safety Net came together over the last decade to create change by collectively responding to tragedy through mobilizing community support and resources in Palo Alto. And whereas, Project Safety Net's notable efforts includes restricting access to lethal means to harm along railways, elevating youth social and emotional well-being through developmental assets, leadership development, and community service initiatives; initiating centers for disease control, EpiAid, investigation of youth suicide in Santa Clara County; and advocating for stronger youth behavioral, health, clinical services, infrastructure. And whereas, Project Safety Net includes nearly 50 partners working collectively on community education, outreach, and training; access to quality youth mental health services and policy advocacy. And whereas, Project Safety Net envisions that young people are empowered in partnership with the whole community to advocate for themselves and their peers. Youth suicide is ended, stigma is nonexistent, and high-quality mental health services are culturally relevant, accessible and well-utilized, and Palo Alto is a community where youth and young adults feel safe, supported, and accepted. Now therefore, I, Eric Philseth, Mayor of the city of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim 2019 as a year to honor Project Safety Net's 10th anniversary. Thank you."
Okay, I think the collaborative is welcome to come on up.
Thank you, and I welcome everyone, every individual, to come up and receive this recognition. Thank you. Come together.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for everybody from Project Safety Net. You guys are doing really important work. It's hard to believe it's been 10 years already. But thank you for keeping it going. And hopefully it will continue to flourish. So thank you.
Very good. Okay. The next item is a rail communications update related to the XCAP.
Yes, I'll kick it off.
And CAT staff.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. So tonight is an update on your continuing discussion of Palo Alto's rail grade separation, or maybe train, what do you call it, train crossings. Now, as a way to ensure council's ability to engage and guide the ongoing community-based process to address increased traffic congestion expected as Caltrain electrifies and services increase along our Caltrain right-of-way throughout the region, including here in Palo Alto. We've got, let's see, presentation. Just a quick overview on the purpose of tonight's item. We'll first provide an update on communications and community engagement. And Megan Horgan-Taylor will report for staff and consider next steps. We also have an update from Nadia Naik, the Chair of our expanded community advisory panel. Would note, just as a couple of key elements as we talk about the next steps, and we'll get into this in more detail, note that part of the update is related to what had previously been discussed as a Rail Blue Ribbon Commission. And as you'll see in your staff report, staff is recommending that that concept be dispensed with, and we no longer consider that. So council may decide that you wanna take a formal action with respect to that. Certainly your call, or we could simply drop it. Also note that we'll be talking about council participation at town hall meetings that are being scheduled for the spring, as well as question of how council would like to remain engaged with the XCAP as it continues its work over the next few months. So with that, let me turn it over to Megan.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Megan Horgan-Taylor, Chief Communications Manager. Wanted to give you a brief update. This slide here is probably familiar to you now. We've been presenting a few times, just talking through the phases of connecting Palo Alto. So in front of you, I wanted to highlight where we are. This arrow here highlights that we're now in the community conversation phase. And the goal of this phase is to provide community-wide awareness and engagement. And we've started that early part of November with a community meeting that was very well-attended. Over 160 members of the community participated to provide input but also be informed about this overall initiative underway. In addition, this phase will provide additional opportunities to engage both through multiple town hall opportunities as well as small informal discussions with staff about overall transportation issues that the community is facing, but also an opportunity to talk about the rail process. So what I wanted to highlight is a couple of key accomplishments to date. Of course, the community meeting that was hosted, that we felt very well-attended, and the community was very engaged and provided a lot of feedback and ideas at that meeting. A new website has been launched. And so that's been a great opportunity to reinform the community but also provide an opportunity to bring others up to speed that may not be as well-informed or even know about the conversations that are taking place. A new blog series has begun. We're now on blog series number three. And that series provides an opportunity to take small bites of information, share information with the community, and point them to resources and other online tools if they want to get as much information as they want, but also to answer questions that they might have during this process. In front of you today, and also in the back of the room and online, we have fact sheets available. Those are hot off the presses and provide a deep dive, not too deep, but deep dive enough to talk about each alternative that the city's considering and evaluating, and provide additional resources, information about the alternatives, data, and where to go for additional information. In addition, in front of you, also hot off the presses, is a flyer that highlights the main ways that we're going to be engaging the community through the three town halls, as well as a series called Word on the Street. And that's the more informal conversation that we'll be providing to the community with staff. So this timeline provides a little bit more information about those specific dates, as well as those opportunities for the community to be informed and engaged about the rail crossing opportunity to discuss further with staff, but also with council. And so on the top line, above the months here, what you'll see is a gray line that's called Community Conversations. And that highlights all the ways that, right now, we're planning to engage with the community, and also community conversations and additional conversation tools that we'll be launching, including an online survey, and social media surveys, and those types of opportunities. And that's really a parallel conversation with the XCAP meetings and their technical review that's taking place. And so that blue line below the 2020 there provides that process. And both processes are a way to help inform the council as they make a decision on this initiative. And so we're leading towards that timeframe. And at the end here in green is where council will hopefully make a decision on preferred alternatives. So with that, I just wanted to provide this timeline. We can come back to that if you have questions. And wanted to close with some comments that reinform what the city manager was speaking at the beginning of the meeting, which are the areas that we'd like council to consider tonight. The first item is a... Just wanting to discuss with you the elimination of the Rail Blue Ribbon Commission. The second item that we'd like your feedback around is confirming council participation at the town hall meetings. And the anticipated format so far is, of course, you're invited to participate and attend. Staff and consultants will conduct a brief presentation and provide an opportunity for a listening session with the community. We're not expecting council action at that meeting. But meetings will be recorded and summaries prepared to then share that with the broader community that might not be able to attend the meeting but super-interested in participating in some way. The last area for consideration is council format to stay engaged and guide the XCAP work that's underway. And examples there could be a council liaison and/or an ad hoc committee of council, or some type of format thereof. So with that, we could take any questions or comments that you have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's see, are we gonna do... Is there gonna be public speakers to this item?
Yes, you do have some public speakers, as well as the report from the XCAP Chair.
So...
Could I make a request?
I'm gonna come to you in a second here. So... So, as well as verbal... So when should we do the XCAP verbal update?
To proceed with that next.
Okay, so why don't we do that? Councilmember Niss, you have a question?
Could... Would it be a good idea to hear from the Chair and the Vice Chair of the XCAP Committee, who happen to be here?
I think that's an excellent idea. Why don't we have the XCAP...
But I'd like to hear sort of what's going on in their words. Because this is a lot to swallow.
Let's see, I see Nadia here. So you have the floor.
Great, thank you. I am going to read from a prepared statement, and then I will answer any questions. You should have in front of you a memo that was distributed at places that's sort of a summary of what has happened with XCAP. So again, my name is Nadia Naik. I am the Chair of the Expanded Community Advisory Panel. And before you this evening to update you on the work that's been completed to date since our last update in October. In the interest of time, you've got the memo. And I know that Supervisor Semidion will be coming afterwards, so I figured I would do my top three things I'm gonna be covering. So one is I'm gonna give you a quick update. Number two is I'm gonna highlight two recent developments that might be of interest to the council. And lastly, I'm gonna give you some visibility into the near-term time horizon for you guys to figure out your next steps. So you may recall, at the last meeting, we talked about the XCAP being broken into some small working groups based on various topics. You should see those listed under Item 2D on your memo. These groups are not functioning like traditional subcommittees where decisions get made and get brought back to the group. These groups are responsible for doing a deep dive on the questions related to each domain and organizing those into one synthesized document so the questions can then be turned over to the appropriate entities for answers. And those will ultimately help the XCAP both develop a recommendation and form part of the eventual report that we have. It'll sort of be in appendices of what was the working information we had at the time. In addition to help support the technical working group that we put together, we were able to recruit four retired civil engineers who live in Palo Alto as a way to both save the city some time and some money and be more efficient while leveraging the incredible Palo Alto community and their domain expertise. So we have Joe Teresi, who's a former City of Palo Alto employee who worked extensively on stormwater management and is retired; Ron Oze, who's actually a current member of the city's Stormwater Management Oversight Committee and has experience with tunnels and has worked on water issues and environmental remediation; we have Sridar Rao, who's worked for over 50 years in tunneling excavation projects. He also worked on the BART projects and has expertise in techniques such as deep soil mixing, which is the stuff they use to support the walls in the trench. And then we have Edgar Ugarte, who's also a former City of Palo Alto employee. While he was here for the city, worked on seismic retrofitting on places like City Hall. But he also was actually working in the city of Belmont when they built the grade separations for Ralston and Harbor. So he has a lot of hands-on experience of what it was like to build an active grade separation at the time. So per council direction, the XCAP invited new iterations and ideas from the public. And we got six new ideas, iterations. And I will keep doing that because there's a few of them that are new ideas and some of them that are just iterations. The XCAP ultimately voted to do a two-step verification process for these ideas to move forward. So the first was a vote to see if ideas really warranted a closer look, excuse me, by the technical working group. And all but one idea passed that phase. And then the second was to have the technical working group and the volunteer civil engineers, and actually AECOM, give us some initial feedback to see if there were any fatal flaws in the new concepts or ideas that were put forward. So we've had one meeting so far, which included a... It was very lengthy, and we had our city manager and Ed Chikata and our Chief Transportation Officer Philip Cami and Chantal Gaines as well. And so we'd like to thank them for their extended time. It was a long meeting. And we'll be announcing the results of that meeting at the next XCAP meeting on the 18th. We're planning on having a second meeting, hopefully before the 18th, where we'll be reviewing the work that's been done to date to get kind of some feedback from them. The two interesting pieces of information that did come out of the technical meeting that I thought the council should be aware of is, in discussing one of the creative ideas that came forward, there was a discussion that even when you're only lowering the road... So at Jefferson Avenue in Redwood City, when you go to the movie theater, they only lower the road. Even in those scenarios, Caltrain has required a shoe flight track during construction. So with electrification, that adds time and money and complexity. And as you know, it was previously represented that Mountain View and Sunnyvale were ahead of Palo Alto because their alternatives did not require touching the Caltrain tracks and likely didn't involve any shoe flight tracks. And the new information would seem to indicate that the alternatives being considered by Mountain View and Sunnyvale may be a bit more complicated than at first thought and a bit more expensive, which may eventually have implications for Measure B money. So I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. Second is that Caltrain has begun the process of replacing... Of doing an RFP to replace the 115-year-old San Francisco Creek Bridge. And you may recall that early evaluations regarding Palo Alto Avenue had two alternatives identified by AECOM. One was a closure, one was a hybrid. But the early drawings showed that the hybrid would impact that bridge in particular. So this new information could have implications for the city's timetable related to the downtown coordinated area plan. And I wanted to be sure that that was, you know, brought to light. The new information might also impact the consideration of the Churchill closure. But since Palo Alto Avenue is not part of our process, there's currently no way for the XCAP to integrate the traffic impacts of a potential Churchill closure with traffic mitigations to any potential Palo Alto Avenue closure and any bridge reconstruction. So what that means is XCAP is still in the information gathering phase and hasn't started any deliberations. But I wanted to give council ample time to consider that you may need to agendize at a future meeting the discussion about the potential interplay between those two intersections, meaning Churchill and Palo Alto Avenue, and how that might impact XCAP's process, your downtown coordinated area plan, your tax and polling discussions, and even any of the polling or the online survey that we saw here for the communications team related to grade separations in the coming months. At the January meeting... So at our next XCAP meeting, which is December 18th, we'll be reviewing the new ideas that came forward. And the ideas for us to decide whether there's any new ideas that we'd like to recommend to council. We would like to come back in January to do that. So we would ask, even though I'm not... I don't know at this time whether we have anything, I would recommend that in January we be sure to agendize having this... Having an action item for you guys so that if there is a new idea and you guys agree that that new idea warrants discussion or warrants action, that we would be able to do that. So with that, I will close and answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We have any questions for Nadia? Vice Mayor Fine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Nadia. Very helpful. Thank you, staff, for bringing this. I'll try to be brief. For the XCAP, April deadline, still looks good?
I would say it's still going to be super-compressed, and we're gonna need help along the way. I mean, there's a lot of information to review. Just in January alone, we're hoping to have Caltrain come and speak. We're hoping to have an attorney that's specializing in property impacts to come and explain the process. And also potentially having someone to talk about safety. And all of those meetings are super-important, but it also means we're not yet digging into the meaty stuff, right? So it's gonna be tight, and we're gonna need help.
One or two others. So on the number of new ideas, you know, you said five of six have passed the first vote. You know, council did say some new ideas. We can all figure out what "some" means. I guess just my recommendation would be, you know, if you have new ideas, give it a fast thumbs up or a fast thumbs down.
Yeah.
And I know that's hard in this work, but let's try not to expand the scope as much as we can. And then, any comments on a council liaison to the XCAP? Thoughts?
So, I mean, certainly, we haven't discussed it as XCAP, so as my role as XCAP, I can't really discuss that. I mean, I think there's a fine line between having really good communication with the council and also making sure that XCAP is independent and that we're doing what we need to be doing. At the same time, there really is an important need to make sure that we're moving and agendizing things appropriately to be able to hit that April deadline. And so, to be honest, I'm not... I don't know. I know it also depends on your schedules and your availability. I will say that, you know, there's levels of liaising, if you will. You know, there's having to attend every XCAP meeting, which I don't think would be useful. I think if you guys decided that that's what you wanted to do, that it would be important for that person to be able to have meetings with myself and certainly Vice Chair Larry Klein and staff. That would help probably more. But I don't know that it should be at the level of having to attend every meeting, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Niss.
So, Nadia, just to make sure, you're not thinking of using any other consultants between now and April? Am I right?
Not... I'm sorry, what was that? Not using what?
Not using any other consultants.
No, we don't have any authorization to use...
Well, thinking of your new group that is sort of consulting...
So they're really...
I realize they're pro bono, but...
And they're not really... So there's no decisions being made. It's just helping us evaluate whether there's any obvious flaws. Because, you know, the members of the technical working group in XCAP are not necessarily engineers. So if someone comes forward with something that has a very obvious physics flaw that we didn't have enough physics to validate, that's what we're using it for. But there isn't any recommendation. So there's no decision coming out of that. All the information's gonna be presented to XCAP. And ultimately, even there, we still will have to present it to you. So...
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we're going to go to the public now. Let me make a couple of remarks first, which is, so looking at the time, it is now 5:35. And we have a study session scheduled with Supervisor Joe Semidion, who can be here between 6:00 and 7:00. And so if we have not finished by 6:00, which I sort of anticipate we won't have, then what we're going to do is break, have our session with the supervisor, and then continue at 7:00. So it's a little bit awkward, but we're sort of trying to juggle various calendars and so forth. The second thing I would say is that the item on the agenda tonight is a short update from the XCAP, which we've just had, and a council discussion of how the council interacts with the XCAP. So it's a very process and procedural kind of item. So what's not on the agenda tonight is, should we close Churchill, or should we build a viaduct there? Should we put a trench in the south, in South Palo Alto, or should it be a viaduct, or should it be hybrids and so forth? So we're not going to talk about any of that kind of stuff tonight, and it's actually not agendized. So I'm going to request that folks from the public focus on the action item tonight, which is the interaction process between the council and the XCAP. And I think we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 9, so everybody will have two minutes.
And the first speaker will be Barbara Hazlett.
Good evening, council staff and neighbors. My name is Barbara Hazlett. I am a longtime resident in Professerville. My comments relate to rail crossings and the proposed Churchill Avenue closure. We all know that if Churchill is closed, it will have an adverse impact on Embarcadero and the Professerville neighborhood streets as 10,000 cars a day are diverted. Council permitted the XCAP to invite new grade crossing ideas other than the ones currently under consideration by council. However, the XCAP advised us at their last meeting on December 4th that the window is now closed regarding submission of new ideas and our recourse is only to council. New idea: Leaving Churchill the way it is and building an underpass for pets and bicyclists makes the most sense. Nobody loses their home, hundreds of millions of dollars are saved, the kids have a safe way to get to school, and the drivers who can't tolerate the new wait times will find an alternate route. More robust signage and technical advancements in signaling can be installed at the tracks. Also, I do not think a viaduct is an appropriate solution in our town. The elevated railway serves as a signifier of urban decay, a visual cue for areas of crime and dilapidation. Please consider leaving Churchill open at grade. It will function as it always has, as an important east and west conduit. This solution makes the most sense for my stated reasons and provides the greatest equity across the neighborhoods. I would ask the council to add this new idea to the list for your consideration of Churchill crossing. Thank you.
Thank you. So this particular remarks is what I very much hoped we, exactly what we would not do tonight. And again, whether to close Churchill or not and whether to introduce new ideas is actually not on the agenda tonight. What's on the agenda tonight is how the council interacts with the XCAP. And of course, you know, we can talk about anything we want, but we have a number of items on the agenda tonight that we have to get through. We have Supervisor Semidion coming in in 20 minutes, and I hope we can focus on, and the council's going to need some time to discuss whether we want to do an ad hoc committee, whether we want to do a liaison, what's the, how we want to think about the R break and so forth. So I hope we're going to focus on the item which is actually agendized tonight and not sort of the broad pantheon of issues related to rail separation in Palo Alto.
I take exception to that, seeing how is what I talked about is a direct...
Thank you very much.
Direct need for council, since XCAP won't listen to us.
Thank you very much. And can we have Rachel Kellerman, please?
I believe my remarks are on point to the agenda. First, so thank you for listening. And I will say that a great way to increase public engagement is to have these agenda items the first rather than the last on your council agenda. We are grateful for the hard work of the citizen volunteers who have given so much of their time, energy, and concern to the XCAP. The city and council's lack of community engagement around this process has been of serious concern to us, and we are happy that there is now staff time and effort being devoted to meaningful outreach. We just hope it's not too late. Prior to the last community meeting, Tom and I and Megan Khan, who alone has represented the entire population north of Embarcadero on the XCAP, made and distributed flyers about the meeting to hundreds of Professerville-Embarcadero households. It was the first time many of our neighbors had even heard about the process. In fact, our neighbors who live on High Street just north of Embarcadero only learned that the traffic consultants had a concept planned to put a stoplight at the end of their narrow street when they saw the image on our flyer. Communication with significant stakeholders should not be left to citizens bearing flyers. Since then, we've had a couple neighborhood meetings. Many neighbors remain confused and frustrated and feel like significant issues regarding Churchill have already been decided without the proper regard for a Professerville-Embarcadero neighborhood that continues to have unresolved traffic and safety issues with the city. Our neighborhood asks for more thoughtful and productive public engagement with city staff, council, and AECom consultants. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Kellerman.
Thank you. I'm also speaking to the community engagement aspect of the agenda. So we've now had the opportunity to review the recently issued traffic study as it relates to current traffic patterns and the projected impact of diverting traffic in the event of a Churchill closure, as well as a conceptual mitigation plan for the Embarcadero-Alma interchange. We have also had discussions with some of our Professerville neighbors regarding the study. This has resulted in many fairly detailed questions and observations. The structure of city council and XCAP meetings is really not designed to have a question and answer between community members and the experts. It's just not the way the meetings are structured. But we do believe that that would be an important element of gathering appropriate input. The traffic studies and the ongoing analysis of the experts are a hugely important part of crafting a viable solution, as is the community input. So as a result, we would ask that the council or XCAP schedule a workshop or a Q&amp;A session with the community generally to provide an opportunity for this kind of question and answer analysis. It would be essential that some members of the city staff and the traffic consultants attend the meeting so as to provide the appropriate input and the response to questions that are raised. So we would ask that this kind of forum be created to capture the appropriate dialogue somewhere in the community communications plan. Thank you.
Quick question to staff. Does staff envision what this gentleman just asked for as part of this?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you. Dexter Gertin.
Hi, Dexter Gertin, 1141 High Street, right at the intersection of Embarcadero Road and High Street. I will defer my talk because it does directly involve the closing of Churchill and its impact on Embarcadero Road. So can you please advise me when I can present my information next time? You can do it?
A XCAP meeting. I'm looking at the city manager. When's an appropriate time for, I would guess, during these sessions or at an XCAP meeting?
Actually, I missed what gentleman was proposing.
He'd like to know when he can...
I'd like to present it, I'd like to present it eventually directly to the council members.
I think the town hall would be most appropriate.
Town hall would be appropriate.
Mayor, we do have oral communications.
Oral communications on any night. Yeah, you can do it tonight.
Yeah, just let me know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Michael Chacon.
I ask that you indulge me for the next two minutes. My name is Michael Chacon, and I live at the corner of High Street and Embarcadero. I just recently found out about the potential closure and the impact it could have on Professerville. I work at home as well, so I'm there pretty much all the time. I support the goal of improving safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and automobiles at all the at-grade crossings. I don't, however, support either option currently under consideration for Churchill, and I will get to a bigger picture here in a minute. The viaduct or closure, both of these options are seriously flawed and lack a significant element of foresight. The viaduct will be visually and physically intrusive, while closure may be welcomed by some who live in proximity of Churchill and Alma, it only serves to shift the traffic to Page Mill and Embarcadero Road, thus increasing already unacceptable levels of service and reinforces the bifurcation of the city. In the recently released traffic studies and reports, use of the term mitigation implies acceptance and transference, as in, you've accepted the impact and it's being transferred somewhere else. Instead, I challenge the city council to adopt the mindset to reduce and alleviate all long-term impacts. I challenge the city council to identify a solution that increases safety and improves traffic conditions. I challenge the city council to exercise foresight by considering the following: Extend the study window to beyond 2030 to capture traffic impacts from future traffic impacting projects such as Castilea and the Stanford expansion, at least up to 2040, to reflect Caltrain's projections. Six?
Hamilton Hitchens.
Am I done?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I say one sentence, one more sentence only?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to conclude, I only had two more, but conclude that you can't solve traffic problems with more traffic. That's just kicking the can down the road. Thank you for your time.
Hamilton Hitchens.
So I haven't been involved in these discussions, partly because of schedule and partly because I look at this project as, this project is about choosing from a series of bad options. This project, there is no good solution to this project. I don't consider a $2 to $4 billion price tag a good solution for a project that generates the level of value that this project generates, which in my opinion is not that high relative to the cost. I think this project has a low ROI. And what I see happening is everybody's focused on which of these options should we choose. They're sort of, they're looking down at the tree level when the question is, do we even want to be in this forest, right? I think that the whole problem with this process is that there's a real question. Is 2 to 4, is this the right way to spend $2 to $4 billion? My answer is no. I mean, and so I think this process isn't incorporating the macro decision-making process. You know, like, I think the, there's a lot of cheaper options which aren't as good, but I think the cost needs to be more fundamental, and the macro decision-making needs to be more included in this. I mean, you could pay off all the debt, like, all the pension overhang we have for what? Like, 750 million or something, right? I mean, 2 to 4 billion is just too expensive for this project and cost and how we look at overall. I don't see, like, XCAP's going to come up with a bunch of minor technical recommendations. I think that the council should really ask ourselves, is this the best use of our tax money, and take that into account when making these decisions. Thank you.
Winter Dillenbeck.
God, you're tall. So it's a funny interaction. Oh, first of all, so glad for the XCAP, so glad Nadia is Chair of the XCAP, and thank you, Larry, for being Vice Chair. I think it's great, and I think that their report, a regular report to you guys is just the ticket. I think this is a great gain that we have made with that. It is a kind of a funny thing to sit in the audience, hear the report and the details, and I had a hiccup, and I don't know, I don't know quite how this will work out. It'll be interesting. So Nadia's going along, and she goes, oh, and then Caltrain is going to be replacing the bridge over by El Palo Alto, although she didn't say El Palo Alto, but it's right over there. And so my lights went off about El Palo Alto. Now, El Palo Alto is California historic resource either number one or number two. I don't know if you know that. So Caltrain, I am assuming that, sir, Caltrain has a right of way, it's their bridge, but you all are going to jump in on this and not just let Caltrain just have their way, and you're going to be all over El Palo Alto or something and check their work and then double and triple check it. So I want to hear some of you making noises about that tonight. Just very quickly, and then my third thing is just, and this is a little off, but I go to most of the town halls. For the first time, we had materials last time, the public did, that made sense. I can't speak to their accuracy, I hope they're accurate, but we had, for every crossing, we had a handout that a normal human being could understand it. It was fabulous.
Thank you.
So thank you to whoever for that.
Kathy Jordan.
My name is Kathy Jordan, and I live in a neighborhood that's adjacent to Embarcadero. In terms of the council interacting with the XCAP, I hope that the council would be representing all neighborhoods, and I wanted to echo what Barbara Hazlett, Rachel Kellerman, Michael Chacon, and others have said up here, that obviously we would like to see not just one neighborhood bearing additional burden than others, and not to see our town bifurcated, and not to see neighborhoods being pitted one against another. As I'm trying to wrap my head around this project, it seems to me that it's a house of cards. Here we have monies that are dependent upon high-speed rail for electrification, but high-speed rail is never going to happen in this quarter. Yet, the official stance is that it will happen so that these monies can be accessed. We also have a bill of goods that seems to be sold that electrification means more frequent train service, when actually, isn't it the grade crossing separation that actually will mean more frequent train service? So we are being asked to finance grade separation so that we can then endure more frequent train service, which could then result in bifurcation of our city pitting neighborhoods against neighborhoods. Perhaps, as I'm new to this, wrapping my head around it, you can forgive me, but it seems to me that we're being asked to finance grade separation to benefit many other communities, not just ours, to the tune of $1 billion potentially, so that we can enable more frequent train service. That doesn't seem like a solution that we'd really want to, a path that we want to go down so that we would then have adverse impacts on our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. David Epstein.
So I just want to commend the council for this extraordinary process. And things are actually working out beyond my expectations, especially the partnership between Nadia and her former mayor, Klein. And also, I really appreciate Nadia, you know, reaching out to members of the community, actually outside of the Palo Alto community. This process is actually working so well, and given the challenges we're currently having in San Jose with the Adirudhan Station, which is, was also staff-driven until last week, I actually recommend it to the council that we do the same thing with our SAG group, Station Area Advising Group, and Brown Act them, and have them reporting directly to council. So hopefully you'll be seeing more of that in the coming future. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Bennett.
Hello, my name is Keith Bennett. I'm with SAVE Palo Alto's Groundwater. I just want to make one comment on the grade separation to remind people that if you build tunnels or trenches, you're going to have a great big imperious dam in the soil which will affect groundwater flows, and also depending on how the construction is done, you may pump an absolutely fantastic amount of groundwater. I just think that this should be carefully analyzed in all of your planning. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, return to council. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if we couldn't just have Dexter Gertin speak now, since everybody else did. The gentleman that came up and said he wanted to know when he could speak.
How about oral communications?
Just as long as he understands that he should get a card in with the clerk.
Yeah, so he should put a card into the clerk and speak in oral communications, which is going to be after the, after the study session with Joe Semidion. Mr. Gerton, would you care to speak now?
I'll be right at the intersection of Abarcadero. I know this pertains to what you didn't want to hear, but other people have also voiced their opinion and I'm voicing mine here. So right here, the first slide there is a picture I took a week ago this morning. It's a traffic jam. Cars headed into the tunnel towards El Camino. Next slide, please. This is a view looking easterly, showing the traffic backed up. This, this traffic backed up for 22 minutes that day. So most days, there's one or more backups. So next slide, please. Boy, that doesn't project very well, does it? One proposal says add four traffic lights, two on Abarcadero Road, stopping traffic in each direction, and one at Kingsley on Alma and one on Alma at Lincoln. In my opinion, this will result in the next slide, please. I'm sorry, go back one. This was all the massive backups. I don't see any way around it. So I'm sorry, next slide, please. My opinion is, in spite of looks, the best solution for both safety and traffic is elevated trains over Churchill. Or don't lose Churchill. Alternatively, improve the safety. So traffic has to go somewhere. It won't, it won't decrease. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We now return to council for comments and questions. Senator is Supervisor Semidion here? Yes, he is. In that case, we will, let's see, we don't need a motion for this, right? Or do we? No, okay. So in that case, we're going to shift gears and we're going to do the study session with Supervisor Semidion and then we will return to this item at seven o'clock after the study Supervisor Semidion, it's a pleasure to have you here with us this evening.
jobs are and the people who bring us utilities and electricity and of course they're very close to the fire department. It's a very dangerous, these can be very dangerous jobs and it was very, very tragic because he was very new to Palo Alto. So that was very sad. Also a proclamation for Palo Alto's Safety Net, the 10th year anniversary, and there was a great photo opportunity and that's always great as they're trying to certainly save lives and protect and help people who are desperate and trying to make a lot of headway there, particularly with the rail trains, people running in front of the train tracks and also students. So they're doing a world of, of good with that. And then we got into the rail issue, the rail separation upgrades, reports, direction on communications and community engagement, and proposed rail blue ribbon commission, and verbal update from expanded community advisor panel. Now Joe Semidion, sort of the star of Palo Alto Supervisor, former mayor, former state Assemblyman, State Center, now County Supervisor, is here. Of course Liz Niss is also a County Supervisor as well. She's back with the council. So he is sort of Mr. Palo Alto, Mr. Regional Guy, and he knows things on the state level and the regional level and the local level and always interesting to hear as he will, we will be, he is always welcome here in Palo Alto as I always enjoy hearing from him. He's here tonight. Then we're going on to a consent calendar and there's several items which is, is interesting. One of them, of course, is number 8A from last week and there was the item that had dealt with the urgency ordinance to provide just cause eviction protections for tenants until the California State Assembly Bill 1482 takes effect on January 1st. This is continued from last week. Councilmember Tanaka said if he got more information, he would vote for it. They didn't have enough votes, but Tanaka then went along with it. It is on consent tonight and that will be an interesting vote. Also is the approval of a license agreement with PT1 US Towers for continued operation of telecommunications.
Let's, we're going to, we're going to get going again here. So the next item on the agenda is a study session with Supervisor Joe Semidion, who we're delighted to have with, with us tonight. Supervisor Semidion, welcome.
Thank you.
And Joe's going to make a few remarks and then we're going to ask him all kinds of hard questions or something like that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Thank you, members of the public who are either here in the chambers or who are watching at home. And let me just say, these annual conversations have been helpful to me and my office and folks at the county because it has helped ensure that we are mindful of what's at the top of the list for the city of Palo Alto. Tonight, in advance of the meeting, just so members of the public know, my office reached out and asked, what would you all like to talk about? There were four topics that were shared with my office. Highway 101 bike bridge funding, the next steps on Stanford development, the status of homeless initiatives and services, and an update on the alcove space here in Palo Alto for teens. And some of you will be more familiar with those topics than others. Happy to just take your questions directly on any of those topics or any other. The one thing I will say, and I know that Councilmember Niss, former Supervisor Niss knows this all too well, one of the struggles we have at the county is that a lot of the work we do is focused on the neediest among us and it is sometimes tough to convey to my colleagues that there is need in the North County District, the West Valley District that I represent.
May I say amen?
And I'm hearing an amen here from my colleague. And the case I've always tried to make is that while the need may be less, it does not mean that there are not pockets of significant need and/or individuals who need assistance from the county. And I've also tried to make the case that in some ways, it's even tougher to be a person of modest means in a prosperous community where you can often, all too often, I would say, be invisible. So I, I think my colleagues have been responsive and respectful to that. It has helped candidly that we are going through a better economic period than Supervisor Niss, now Councilmember Niss, lived through during her tenure on the board. I remember those tough recession years all too well because I was in Sacramento at the time dealing with the budget consequences there. We are in a little bit better position, substantially better position these days in terms of our economic security at the county, but our county executive reminds us that's just until the next recession. So why don't I stop there, let you and your colleagues, Mr. Mayor.
Did you just mention what your budget was?
Supervisor, excuse me, some, there she is. Councilmember Niss is saying, would you just mention what the budget is? The most recently adopted budget is about $8 billion. That's billion with a B. I find that because the county level of government is the sort of least understood, often most invisible level of government, people are sometimes surprised that the level of government that they're only vaguely aware of has an annual budget of something like $8 billion. But, but all, all budgets combined, that's the current number and a significant portion of that, probably, probably half is in the health and hospital arena. So where would you like to begin? Would you like to have the mic? Why don't, yeah, so who would like to go first?
Can I continue with money?
You may. Always a good place to start.
So let me underscore what Supervisor Semidion just said. The difficulty, as we used to say, is while you may just have one very needy pregnant girl here in Palo Alto and you have 100 in San Jose, the one who's here is just as needy as the 100 that are in San Jose, making it extremely hard to get services up here. So my question would be is what have, how have you brought more services to us, some we may not even recognize?
Yeah, I think one of the challenges we have serving the North County is that because of the fact that Palo Alto is not geographically at the center of the county and because of the concentration of greater need in other parts of the county, historically there have not been significant county facilities here in the North County. And by the North County, I mean Palo Alto, Mountain View, Los Altos, Los Altos Hills, Stanford, of course, portions of Sunnyvale. I also represent some of the West Valley communities, Cupertino and Saratoga, but these are not places where there are substantial number of county facilities. So the first thing that I've tried to do is focus on hanging on to what few county facilities we do. I'm guessing that most of you do have, I'm guessing most of you were not even aware, half dozen years ago, when I came back on the Board of Supervisors, there was a plan to relocate the one social services agency, the welfare office in Mountain View, back down to San Jose. And there was some irony in this. I had dealt with this issue literally 15 years previously when there was previously a plan to relocate it. And people at the county seemed surprised that someone would fight to keep a welfare office in their district, but I just, you know, I felt strongly that absent those services in close proximity, people in need, people who did not have great resources, would be that much more hard-pressed to access the services to which they're entitled. So we were able ultimately to relocate when the structure was bulldozed, which it was because it was going to be redevelopment, redeveloped as an apartment project. We were able to find another place in Mountain View, keep those services closed so that people in Palo Alto, Mountain View, Los Altos and Sunnyvale had a place that was close in proximity. So hanging on to what you've got, replacing what you lose. Councilmember Niss, you may remember that as you were leaving the board and I was coming onto the board, there was a plan to essentially redevelop the site where we had one cold weather homeless shelter in Santa Clar, in North Santa Clara County. That was the site in the old armory in Sunnyvale. It wasn't much, but it was a place for 125 people to get in, out of the rain during the four cold weather months. There was a plan to redevelop the site with a housing project and a good project at that that included some affordable housing, but it raised the obvious question, what's going to happen to those 125 folks who have no place to go if we don't replace that homeless shelter? So I'm very pleased that over the intervening years, we were able to find another site. I wasn't sure that my colleagues would go for that, but they did. So we have a permanent site now that the county owns in Sunnyvale. We have expanded it from four months to year round, which was a very big deal in our world, and we have expanded it from 125 to 175. So where you can, if you lose something, see that as the opportunity to say, how are we going to replace this and in fact, improve upon it? And that was also frankly what got me engaged with the development of a site for homeless women and families with children in Mountain View, which some of you are aware of, at the Trinity United Methodist Church. So the first answer is hang on to what you got. Second answer is if you've got an impending loss, make sure that someone is asked and answers the question, how do we replace that lost asset? And the last part that I think you all will understand is because there is a dearth of county facilities here in the North County, it makes it all the more important that we work through local nonprofits because we have a very rich, robust, I mean, rich not in a financial sense, but just rich in a sense of community engagement and robust set of nonprofits. And so I am often perhaps in a slightly different place than some of my colleagues who are saying, can we add to this service or that service that the county provides? I may be leaning in saying, and by the way, in the part of the county that I represent, could we use the good works of this nonprofit or that nonprofit? So I see folks here from YCS, the Youth Community Services, for example, who have been the beneficiary of a modest grant over the last two or three years, but the kind of funding that I think the county can and should provide to nonprofits who are already in place. I doubt that most members of the council, maybe I'll be surprised, know that half of the new kitchen at Avenidas was funded by Santa, a grant from Santa Clara County. It was a way to, on a one-time only basis, make sure that kitchen continued to be there and serve a resource. And I know the long and complicated story there as well. But, so hang on to what you got, replace what you're at risk of losing and use the network of folks that are already in place providing services through the nonprofit agencies. And there are probably more of those being funded in Palo Alto than folks would be prepared to, to realize if we didn't give you a long list.
Vice Mayor Feynman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you Supervisor for joining us. Welcome home and thank you for your service. A couple of questions about, maybe one question, kind of about transportation funding and financing. You know, next year, there are a couple of items potentially going on the ballot, Faster Bay Area, which is $100 billion for the nine counties, potentially a Caltrain permanent funding mechanism, three counties on the peninsula, which may or may not be molded together. And then also we're in North County kind of dealing with some governance issues at VTA on, on Measure B funding for grade separations and 88 bus potential or recurring cuts to that, to that line. And I'm just wondering, how is the county approaching some of these tax measures and thinking about funding transit long-term, both, I mean, at the nine-county level, at the three-county level, at the one-county level? Like what, what does that look like? And do you have any advice for us here?
Sure. I mean, there are two, you've woven together two related but somewhat different issues. One is the issue of transportation, transportation funding, the other is the issue of tax, tax increases. And let me deal with them one after the other and then see if I can link the two together. I think it's, you know, it's not widely understood because, that the county plays only a relatively modest role in terms of transportation in a direct sense because the VTA, the Value Transportation Authority, is not a county agency or entity. It has 12 members, if I remember correctly. It has 12 members, if I remember correctly, five from the city of San Jose, five from the so-called smaller communities, those are the other 14 cities and towns. You participate in that way. There are two county supervisors who sit on that VTA board. What it means is that it is San Jose-centric. That's a source of concern to folks when decisions get made. In fairness, you know, San Jose is more than 50% of the county population, but it does mean that the other 14 cities and towns where the council representatives don't have full-time staffs and aren't full-time elected officials, the way the San Jose folks are, are sort of left to make, you know, push and shove a little bit to make sure that they get their place at the table and that their voice gets heard. The Measure B measure that you referenced, which is administered by VTA, was sponsored, as you'll recall, a few years back now, 2016, by the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. And I did something, and I think I mentioned this the last time I was here, but I'll share with you one more time. It turned out, it was one of those nice times when a little bit of effort actually produced something that was, I thought, quite effective and helpful. I just said, let's go back and look at the past tax measures and ask ourselves, how much money did they raise and where did they go and for what? And the great thing about that is you can ask the staff to do it and they do all the work. It's wonderful. It's a good system, Mr. Manager. And, and the staff came back with a report that said, that shared all that, and I slapped a cover sheet on it that simplified that what I thought was the most salient point, which was that going back to the year 2000, that 80% of the revenue from the taxes that had been passed for transportation went for BART to San Jose. Now, BART to San Jose is an important project. I support it. I have supported it. But I thought, you know, if we're looking at yet another tax measure in 2016, it's going to be hard for me to come back to the district that I represent and say, you know, we should continue to be good regional players if there wasn't what I referred to as meaningful congestion relief throughout the entire county. And you could perhaps tell from the way that comes trippingly off my tongue, it was a phrase that I developed. Initially, I think candidly, some people thought, he wants something when I said that. And I was like, no, I don't have a project. I know you all have projects in mind, but I said, I don't have a project in mind, there isn't a thing on my wish list, but I can't go back to my constituents and say, I support this unless there is a plan for meaningful congestion relief throughout the entire county. The other precondition that I had for supporting the measure was that there had to be a cap on the percentage of funds that would go for BART to San Jose. And that number was 25% of the funding, meaning that of the funds raised by the proposed tax, no more than 25% would go, leaving obviously the remainder for a meaningful congestion relief throughout the entire county. I was pleased that that was well-received and accepted and sort of baked in from the outset. The thing I should commend you and the other councils in our area on is that I was really pleasantly surprised by how vigorously city councils throughout the area said, okay, let's get in there if 80%, because I sent it out to all the councils at the time. And so all the councils said, wait a minute, 80% of the money's gone for BART to San Jose. We really do need to make sure that there's a sort of a fair share distribution the next time around. And the councils, including Palo Alto Council, were very active in rolling up their sleeves and in effect negotiating prior to the passage of the measure, some description of what that might look like throughout the county. So all simply by virtue of asking the staff, for a staff report at the county, as I say, I thought that that produced a good result. Now, as to future taxes, I tend to look at each one on its own merits. And it wasn't a tax, but it was a, an increase in the bridge tolls that you will recall, we voted on around the Bay Area relatively recently. And I know, I'm sure there was a range of views on this council. I opposed, and I think that surprised some people who saw me as a quote, "transportation advocate," but I just thought it was inherently regressive and I thought it unfairly burdened folks on the east side of the bay, was a $3 increase on top of a $6 existing toll for working people who need to get either to Silicon Valley or to San Francisco or the peninsula. You know, do the math, three bucks a day times 22 working days in the course of a month, that's 66 bucks. And so then you do the math times 12 months and all of a sudden you're saying, well, I'm looking at something like 750 bucks. And then you say, well, but you know, I can't even deduct that as a commute expense. So now you're talking about 1,000. For somebody who makes 50, $60,000, $1,000 lost like that on a toll increase is not an inconsequential hit. And as I say, so I did not support that. In terms of the so-called Faster Bay Area or the Caltrain tax, I'll have to wait and see more specifically what they provide for and at what cost and with what benefits to whom. Now, having said all that, we've had two proposals at the board in the last three or four years, Board of Supervisors, for sales tax increases that would benefit the county. The first one was a half-cent sales tax, gosh, I think two, three years ago, that was proposed by my colleagues on, some of my colleagues on the board. More recently Supervisor Chavez proposed a one-cent sales tax that would have been a general tax passable with 50% plus one. And while there would have been some discussion and description of how the funds might have been used, because it was a general tax, it could have legally been used for really any purpose. That made me anxious. It also made me anxious because again, we know that a sales tax is among the most regressive of taxes. So in both cases, I was not able to support those taxes. And it ended up mattering because it takes four votes, not three, on our five-member board, it takes a supermajority of four votes to put a general tax on the ballot. And there were three votes, certainly the first time, and I think possibly the second time, but by virtue of the fact that two of us said, we just can't go there, both measures ended up not moving forward. So, you know, I do think at some point you have to ask yourself, what is the tax burden on folks and what can people reasonably bear? And I think it's easy in more prosperous parts of the county to forget the fact that the tax burden, particularly if it's a regressive tax, can be pretty heavy on, on some folks. I, you know, I've voted for tax increases or tax measures before, but I think you really do have to take them sort of case-by-case, one by one. So I don't know what to tell you about your negotiations with the folks at VTA about how those funds get used. One of the other things that was the subject for quite a bit of discussion was ensuring that in order for the funding formula to change, there needed to be a supermajority. And there was some discussion about what that supermajority could or should be. And somebody said, well, you know, majority of 12 is seven. And I said, well, that could be five San Jose City Council members and two county supervisors. That's probably not a reassurance. Eight was proposed and ultimately, my recollections, they settled at nine. And that gave me a little more comfort that with a supermajority that was a three-quarters vote, that the integrity of the funding formula that had been agreed to would be respected. Long answer. Sorry.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah. All right, Joe. Thanks. Thanks for being here. I'll just, I have three quick questions. I'll just get them all out and then you can go for your answer.
See, we can do a lightning round on this.
First of all, on the Stanford GUP, I just wanted to thank you for your strong efforts there and I hope you remain in office for a long time and continue to work with us and the school district and the surrounding cities. I mean, you really involved everybody in that discussion. Question about housing funds, you know, county funds for affordable housing, you know, impact fees have come up and we've asked to re-agendize that here at this council. And I thought maybe you could speak for a minute or two on what we can do to help on that front. And then the last point was on the Safe Parking Program, which we've been working on somewhat slowly, but it's coming to our council soon. And I also thought maybe you could share some of your efforts in other cities and ways the county could help on safe parking.
Sure. On the Stanford land use matters, I will just say, I last spoke to folks from Stanford on November the first, which was the day that the application was formally withdrawn. I spoke with President Tessie Levine that day from Stanford. Since that time, I have not heard from anyone at the university about their plans, either for what I'll call current development under the existing GUP, the General Use Permit, or longer-term, bigger picture. I am told however, by our planning department at the county, that representatives of the university have been in to talk about the existing plans for development under the current GUP, the current General Use Permit, and have asked to meet on a fairly regular basis, I think monthly is what I was told. And I don't yet know, I think it's too early to know, how much of that will be about sort of day-to-day development on the campus and how much of that will be essentially a precursor to a discussion about a larger set of issues. I have been asked by folks, and since I have the opportunity to share with you, sort of where do things stand under the existing GUP, the current General Use Permit? And the answer is that there is about 175,000 square feet of development capacity remaining under the existing GUP. And then people say, what's 175,000 square feet? And the answer is three football fields or two small Coscos. That's just a way to try and put it in sort of comprehensible terms. But that's, that's development capacity that has already been approved and that remains under the existing GUP. The one other caveat there is that if the university demolishes current existing structures, then they essentially get a credit. So if there's outdated, if there's an outdated structure that's 50,000 square feet for the sake of discussion on the campus grounds and the decision is made to demolish that structure, then essentially that creates 50,000 square feet of replacement credit to which the university is titled. And then folks say, well, does that mean we should anticipate individual projects coming forward once the 175,000 square feet is consumed, fully utilized? And the answer to that question is no, because somewhat unusually, the university's land use pursuant to our community plan, which is part of our general plan, comprehensive plan, university development is specifically required to develop under a general use permit. So rather than see, you know, one-offs, if you will, 50,000 here and 75,000 there and 100,000 there, there does have to be another GUP, a new GUP, before development over and above the existing allocation or authorization is, is in place. So that's all I can tell you really there. And we'll know more when the university shares more about what it's thinking is going forward. Then on the housing front, it was an interesting development as part of the Stanford conversations. Councilmember Niss, former Supervisor Niss, will remember that one of the things we had negotiated as part of the package of conditions of approval on the last GUP, the year 2000 GUP, was a housing mitigation fee. That housing mitigation fee is designed to create affordable housing and within a six-mile radius. And as it happens, none of our near neighbors in San Mateo County had really sort of been mindful of that in past years. So over the last 19 years, to the best of my knowledge, all of those funds have been dedicated to Santa Clara County projects, projects somewhere in Santa Clara County. The most recent example would be, examples would be the portion of that funding that came as a developer fee through the Stanford development process and the existing GUP that was devoted to the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park, which was matched, of course, by the city. Another more recent example is, just as you did a set aside of 3 million, we did a set aside of 6 million for the teacher housing project that we've talked about, working on collaboratively here in Palo Alto. As we talked about the new Stanford GUP, the proposed Stanford GUP, with folks in South San Mateo County, council members started to lean in and say, wait a minute, you mean there's been money that we could have applied for and didn't apply for? And the answer to that question was yes. And so I think it's fair to anticipate that going forward, they'll be interested in sharing in those funds from other jurisdictions as well. But the additional 175,000 square feet will, of development under the existing GUP, will generate some developer fees that will be available for affordable housing projects within a six-mile radius. Some of those funds have already been pre-committed, if you will, in terms of the teacher housing project, but there'll be other funds there that I'm sure you all will be interested in if they are available. And I'm sure we'll hear from folks in other parts of the region, specifically South San Mateo County, as well as neighboring communities like Mountain View and Los Altos.
Can you share a little bit about the level of the impact fee?
Well, this, huh. So our, forgive me, I'm stumbling over my words here because I want to choose carefully. Back in the year 2000, the GUP that we approved, which had conditions of approval attached, established a housing mitigation fee. And the housing mitigation fee was linked to Palo Alto's. So essentially, our fee is a function of your fee. And at the time, that didn't cause much distress. As your fee went up more significantly, the university expressed concern about that, both with respect to the existing GUP and certainly with respect to what might happen in the future. It means that it's important that our county and your city staffs are talking about what your fee is because to the extent your fee is at one level, it should be matched by the county. And if that's not happening, that's a problem. You will recall the last time that you raised your fee, it got a little more complex as well as a little bit higher in that there were sort of multiple levels for different kinds of development. And that sparked some back and forth at the county about, well, which fee are we talking about? So I just, I would encourage everybody to make sure that we all are talking to one another. And again, you know, we have some significant level of millions, not vast millions, but many millions, that will be forthcoming, we expect, from the future development under the existing GUP. And I think I'll just let go of that, if I may, Councilmember, because I want to just get to safe parking. The safe parking issue is an issue that I think generated more engagement in Mountain View before Palo Alto people. And there's a sort of a quick story. I was visited by a pastor in Mountain View several years ago now who said, my church and I would like to do something. Is there anything we can do? We're just one church. I said, well, you could, you know, open up your parking lot to some folks who are vehicle dwellers. And he said, thanks, I'll think about that. Went off and candidly, I just lost track and sort of thought that maybe they'd lost interest. And three and a half years later, they were back in my office saying, we formed a nonprofit, it's called Move Mountain View. Our nonprofit has a subsidiary, it's called Lots of Love. Believe it or not, it took me two months to realize there was a play on words there. I was a little slow on the uptake with lots of love. And they exist for the purpose of identifying parking lots where people can put cars or RVs. It has, we have provided county funding for various services and support, and that county funding remains available. And I'm optimistic that in future, it could be available or even expanded. The challenge has been, as I'm guessing you all have discovered, finding sites. Because it sounds pretty easy, but it's actually pretty tough to find folks who want some number of vehicle dwellers in the back of their structures, whether it's a church or temple, whether it's a business, whether it's a vacant lot waiting for development. And I think frankly, Mountain View has struggled to find sites. That's one of the reasons why they've talked about using Shoreline for part of the year. Part of the problem is concern about having folks on the site for 24 hours. That may or may not raise certain legal issues, certain tenant protection issues. Part of the challenge is that not all the vehicles frankly move. Some of them are just not functional. So as you have no doubt read, your colleagues in Mountain View, your counterparts in Mountain View are working on this issue. I have let them know and I'm happy to let you know that in March of next year, and there are some reasons for it being March, in March of next year, my office and I are going to try and see if we can work with the city of Mountain View and if the city of Palo Alto would like also with the city of Palo Alto to promote the idea of safe parking lots. And that's obviously a choice for you all to make in consultation with your staff. But I think part of the challenge, and there are many, but part of the challenge is that no one has had the sort of the resources or the bandwidth to just say, all right, we're going to go out and make a campaign of this, if you will. And that's probably the right word, a campaign of it. And And so we're going to give it a try in March. I can't say I'm confident that it will be a successful effort, but without the sites, the rest of it's just talk. I mean, it's, and that's the hard part. If you can, I'll just, I'll throw it on your dais here. If you can find sites in Palo Alto, I will go back and do everything I can, and I am optimistic we will be able to find funding for services and for the modest infrastructure that takes to stand up a program like this. But it will take the sites.
I think we have four.
And, you know, part of the challenge is, the staff in, the city staffs, I should say, are understandably anxious about liability issues, about health and safety issues, about sanitation issues, and yet the more we regulate, the less likely it becomes that a site will prove usable. And so there's a tension there, and it's a healthy and understandable tension between saying, for God's sakes, just let people go over to the back of the parking lot and, you know, be in a somewhat safer environment, and folks saying, whoa, 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 wait a minute, it's a little more complicated than that, and it is. But again, if you come to my office or me and say, we've got sites and now what we need is some help, because I think what most people want to make sure we do is, if we're going to go down that path, are the people there screened? Do we know that they're open to improving their circumstances? Is their case management available to help them find a better option? Down the road was the phrase I was going to use and then thought better of it, but there you go, down the road. So those are services that the county is well positioned to, if not provide, at least contract for and fund through a nonprofit, and, you know, consider the offer extended, and if you can find the sites, good on you. Why don't I stop there on safe parking?
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Sess. Supervisor Semidion, thank you for joining us. When I think of 175,000 square feet, I translate that into three Mitchell Park Library and Community Centers, plus a little. So we all have our different ways of measuring that.
That sounds more appealing than two modest-sized Costco's, so thank you for that.
Yeah. So I want to start with some thank yous. I've only been in this job for a year, but I always appreciate it when people thank me before they get into questions. So the first, yes, La Comida at Stevenson House and at Masonic, we do appreciate your support of that organization, especially since it's no longer connected with Avenidas.
And if I can just interrupt for a minute, because your council colleagues probably won't know, we struggled with the issue of reimbursement rates for affordable meals at La Comida and at other providers around the county. And it was one of those sort of frustrating bureaucratic knots where our own folks were saying, well, we can't really give them an increase, even though we know it's inadequate, because we don't know what the right amount is. And you would think it's not that hard to calculate, but it was, yeah. And ultimately, you know, fortunately, the majority of the board and I were in agreement that, well, why don't we just give them an increase to sustain these programs while we're figuring out the precise amount and not let a perfect calculation be the enemy of a realistic and reasonable increase? And so we got there, and I know I've heard that that has allowed all of the affordable luncheon programs to sort of hang in there feeling a little more secure. Sorry for the interruption.
Not at all. So you should take credit for that work. The second thank you is for helping Planned Parenthood find a permanent location in Mountain View. I know that's been ongoing, and I appreciate your work in that at the county and making sure that that resource is available to us in the North County.
And let me just interrupt again.
Yeah, you're not interrupting.
And say, this is one of those times where it worked out exactly as we planned, except totally the opposite, which is Planned Parenthood came and said, we're about to lose our lease, can you help? And my thought was, and I pitched my colleagues, that we should acquire a building, a replacement structure, if you will, in Mountain View, then lease a portion of that space to Planned Parenthood as a replacement for the lease they had lost, and supplement that with services that we at the county could provide, and finally bring some county services into the one district in the county that does not have a county health clinic. And that was, I think, a very good plan. And then Planned Parenthood said, actually, we're going to buy our own building, because we don't want to be vulnerable in this way again. And I said, great, how about we lease some space from you? So the model was exactly as planned, only it flipped, which is instead of us buying a building and leasing them space, they bought a building and are leasing us space. That building is in the process of standing up literally, you know, this month and next. And I'm optimistic that within the next few to several months, we'll have services in the space that we have rent that complement, they obviously don't compete with or substitute for, but that we essentially would provide services there that are not well-suited to Planned Parenthood's business model and service model.
Well, thank you for staying engaged on that. And then the third and final thank you is for the work that the county is doing with the house sharing program with Catholic charities. I think there's a real opportunity in this community. So many people have big hearts and frankly, big homes. And certainly as we have an older population, I know the beginning this week, they will have weekly office hours at Avenidas that will enable people to screen both applicants for reduced-price housing and people who want to provide it. And I want to thank you for your role in making that happen.
Thank you.
And then the question is about All Cove and, you know, that program and when we can expect it to see it available to our teens here in Palo Alto.
Let me think how to quickly background folks on what we're talking about. This community, of course, has all too tragically known of the need for increased and improved mental health services for young people, teens in particular. That has generated a number of responses, many of which I think have been important and helpful. One of them is to make services available in the community with a somewhat different model for teenagers. And of all places, it turns out Australia had really done some very good work with a model called Headspace. And Headspace has since changed its name and become All Cove. And so, gosh, maybe three, four years ago, I pitched some initial funding through the inventory process. Do you remember the inventory process? Which is essentially an opportunity for our board members to lean in and say, hey, what about this? To engage local teens and to sort of start the conversation about what such a facility might look like and where it might be located. And I, of course, as the district supervisor, had a concern and an interest in having it located here in the North County and in Palo Alto in particular, if possible. It has taken a while, but we now have a lease on a site on Middlefield Road in the Midtown area. Palo Altons will know that the reason it's called Midtown is because it's midtown. But I think it's particularly well-suited in terms of its location, not too far off Oregon Expressway on Middlefield Road, to be accessible to folks from, teens from every part of Palo Alto, but also those who are going to come from other parts of the North County area as well. The other opening of the program will be in San Jose. The site we have in Palo Alto, which is currently, it's under lease, it's being remodeled as we speak, or at least plans are being drawn for its remodel, should be open to provide services, middle of 2020, if all goes according to the schedule. Things don't always go according to schedule, but if all goes according to schedule, the middle of 2020. And the services will actually be coordinated by a group called Alum Rock Counseling. And they're a well-regarded contractor. They will not provide all of the services. They'll sort of be the overarching service provider and organizer, partnering with others. And the, one of the things that makes the model very different is that if you're a, I'll just pick, a 15-year-old kid in Palo Alto, you can walk in and you don't need an appointment. You can walk in and you don't need insurance. There is, in the social services and world and in the healthcare world, there's a term called no wrong door. And what it's meant to suggest is that no one's going to tell you, oh, you're in the wrong place. That you just walk in and say, hey, here's what's going on. The other thing that makes the model different and appealing is that it is more teen-driven, client-driven, in this case means teen-driven. So the hope and expectation is that there'll be mental health services that are sort of higher-end, but also counseling services. I think, you know, one of the things that has been such a source of agony for a lot of us is that we hear these stories about kids who don't get help early on and who might have been well-served if only there was a way for them to get the help earlier on. So, you know, by mid-2020, we're hopeful, and we've been in touch with your staff about the site and what it takes to, you know, bring it up to standards for a 21st century service facility and a place that will serve not only Palo Alto, but the North County young people well. So stay tuned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, I just also want to thank you for your service, really appreciate it. Thanks for coming out. I just wanted to see if you could speak a little bit, you probably know that we have the vaping topic later tonight, and wanted to just kind of get your thoughts from the county level in terms of enforcement of, you know, selling to underage minors, and also just kind of what work you guys are doing. What have you seen that worked in other cities? Just kind of your general thoughts, so we can learn from it and build upon it.
Is this on the, and forgive me, I just, there was a background noise. Was this the vaping measure?
Yeah, the vaping, yeah. We have it later tonight.
Yeah. We've taken action at the county to prohibit the sale of e-cigarettes in the unincorporated county, effective, I think, the middle of the coming year. We wanted to have a reasonable, don't hold me to that date, but, because there was quite a bit of back and forth on that. We wanted to make sure everybody had time to sort of get up to speed about what the new ordinance required, because not only does the new ordinance prohibit the sale of vaping products broadly defined, but also flavored cigarettes, and it also increases the fine for violations. It's a little more complicated than that, but I think that's a fair characterization. And I think the thing that's important to understand is that it only applies to the unincorporated portions of the county. So in terms of the number of people that are affected, you know, it's under 100,000. I think the last time I looked, it's like 88,000 people countywide live in the unincorporated area. That being said, one of the things that I can commend to you and to your staff and to your city attorney's office is that it may or may not provide a model ordinance that is of some use to you. One of the reasons that the county sometimes takes these actions is that knowing that communities throughout the county are pressed for time and resources, that if we draft an ordinance that has had, we hope, some rigor and scrutiny, that it may be useful as a model. And there may be parts of it that don't apply or that are inconsistent, but as you know, and as you referenced in your question, there's been a lot of cooperation, collaboration between the county and Palo Alto already on these issues. So I would just suggest that you take a look at it and see whether or not it might help you shorten the process a little bit or help you cut to the chase in terms of what you do or don't want to do. But that's the path that the county took, and it was unanimous in our county's case. We have a five-member board, of course, and all five members supported the prohibition.
So, yeah, I was aware of that, but I guess one of the big challenges is a lot of the distribution actually happens online, right? You could go out of the express, you could, there's no ID needed. And, you know, for a city to regulate online distribution is actually quite difficult, and maybe easier on the county level, perhaps even state level. But I was wondering if you guys looked at that and how did you deal with that issue?
I don't recall that we did. It's possible that we did, and I was simply unaware of it, but I'll go back to the county and take a look. And I'll circle back with you.
I think you guys are also in charge of enforcement, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so how's, because I also hear that sometimes enforcement is not as rigorous as it could be, right? And I also know, I don't know if you guys have been tracking that. I mean, there's one thing to have laws, right? It's another thing to actually enforce them. So I was wondering, could you speak a little bit about that and how the enforcement's coming along?
I can't, I can't give you a lot of detail on enforcement per se. What I can tell you is that one of the changes in the ordinance, and bear with me if I am not clear the first time, just ask me and I'll try it again. One of the changes in the ordinance is that the fee levels are a function of how frequent, in other words, if there's a higher fee for a second violation, well, within the last year, within the last two years, within the last five years. And essentially, what we've done is sort of shortened the time so that the higher fee levels are more likely to kick in more often, rather than somebody say, well, yeah, I had a prior violation, but gosh, that was two whole years ago. Now it might be a year. Or, yeah, I had three or four violations, but those were three whole years ago. Now, so we've essentially changed the fee structure to say, no, 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 if you're a recurring bad actor and in violation of the ordinance, the fact that you sort of managed to not get caught over a longer period of time is less likely to help you out. But on the actual level of enforcement, candidly, I'm not that fully informed. So let me check on that as well, and I'll circle back.
Great, thank you. And then the other thing that I was wondering is, so one thing is the sale, prohibition of sale. What about the prohibition of, or fines for the sale to underage? What about the possession? Have you seen, what have you seen around that in terms of having fines?
Doesn't, doesn't appear to be much interest in, in fines for possession. I'll let it go at that.
Okay, so you haven't seen too much of that yet?
I haven't, but I don't, I don't want to claim that I personally have done an exhaustive study. It wasn't something we talked about pursuing at the county level.
Okay, yeah, I just, if you do some Google searching, you'll find that there's, that's actually one direction that some cities have gone. But I was just curious if you guys had much of a discussion there. But have you, have you guys, did you guys talk about what else besides just prohibiting the sale could be useful in trying to cut down the usage of vaping by underage minors?
Well, I mean, I think we've all talked about the importance of public awareness and public education, and we had a conversation, which I'm guessing will sound relatively familiar to most members of this council, which is, one of my colleagues said, you know, the challenge is, we need to reach the kids who are harder to reach when we're talking about underage campaigns. The kid who is going to enter the poster contest or the video contest is perhaps not the one most likely to be engaging in the behavior in the first place. So there is this question, and our public health, for those who don't know, we have a pretty robust public health program at the county. And, you know, our public health officials tell us that this is a sort of a constant challenge in the work they do in terms of reaching out to the community, which is, you could have a wonderful conversation and all kinds of activity over here, but you're talking to those who are already on the program. How do you get to those who really do need to be acknowledged as being a harder audience to reach?
Councilmember Koo.
Supervisor Semidion, I too want to say thank you for a lot of the good work that you've been doing, especially with the GUP, and then also providing a staff member to the Santa Clara, Santa Cruz Roundtable to keep in touch with what's going on with airplane noise. Out of the GUP, my understanding is, your colleague Supervisor Chavez has actually initiated a recommendation action, which is, because of your full mitigation, she has actually initiated action to work more closely with San Mateo County. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Sure. I think it's fair to say that there are two tracks. Supervisor Chavez has taken a slightly more formal track in that, and I, you know, one of the things I try, and I know you all get this, try never to speak for my colleagues, and I particularly try not to speak for Supervisor Chavez, because she's going to speak for herself on this item, because it's her issue. But I think she came away from the conversation, the three-year-long exercise, saying, hey, a healthy outcome from the three-year effort was a greater understanding of the fact that the impacts of substantial development are regional in their scope. And it was a good thing that we were engaged with folks in South San Mateo County, but as they make development decisions, or as even folks in Northern Santa Clara County make development decisions, including Mountain View and Palo Alto, shouldn't we be talking about how they can engage us as well? And these are my words, not hers. Essentially, I would describe it as, hey, what sauce for the goose is sauce for the gander? If we're going to be regional when it's headed in If we're going to be regional when it's headed in one direction, let's make sure we're regional when it's headed in another direction. And I think the term of art she has used is, could we develop a compact for understanding? And that's a measure that was passed relatively routinely, or a referral, we call it, where we said to staff, hey, would you go check this out and see what the possibilities are and engage some of those folks in conversation? I have been very pleased with the response that we've already gotten and that I think we'll get in the future on what I'd call a more informal or ad hoc basis. As part of the conversation around the GUP, gosh, I can't remember how long it was, but probably a year and a half ago, I could be off, I convened a meeting of the six land use jurisdictions that had land use authority, governance authority over Stanford lands. And people are often surprised that there are, in fact, for the 8,000 acres, six different entities. Palo Alto, of course, and the unincorporated county lands, but then also across the artificial geographic and political boundaries, unincorporated San Mateo County, Menlo Park, Woodside, and Portola Valley. So we pulled all six of those jurisdictions together, and it was interesting, at the first meeting, somebody sort of said, you know, in the history of land use on the campus, I don't think we've ever had representatives from all six jurisdictions in the same room at the same time in anyone's memory. And people just thought it was a good way to share information and to make sure that everyone was fully informed, and how are you finding this? And what do you think about that? What tool did you use here? That group grew, again, on kind of an ad hoc basis to include Redwood City, where, as you know, there's significant development now by the university. Also, East Palo Alto, which I think is undeniably impacted by the development and certainly traffic, but also housing. And they became active. And Mountain View and Los Altos were less engaged, but both ended up communicating and sending folks in the process. So my thinking is that we ought to continue those conversations, that we can do them on an ad hoc basis as long as we do them, that we shouldn't sort of let ad hoc become, well, we never really got around to it. And then meanwhile, I think it remains to be seen what kind of formal compact, if any, ends up being negotiated pursuant to the requests from Supervisor Chavez. But, you know, we, you know, my district is unusual slash unique in the county system here in Santa Clara County because there are 15 cities and towns in the county, and there are five districts, but I have eight of the cities and towns in my district, appreciably more than any of my colleagues do, because I represent smaller communities. And it just, it is very different than representing a great big chunk of a large city like San Jose, where you just, you know, you go to the San Jose staff, or you go to the San Jose mayor and council members, and you're done. And in our, no, I mean, Mrs. Nissis remembering us, and, you know, in our world, that's like, okay, how do we herd the cats? How do we all get ourselves together in the same room for the same conversation to make sure that we're building? And you all know from doing it in the various regional and subregional bodies you sit on, that's a different kind of challenge.
Build consensus?
Yeah, and I, I mean, on the Stanford land use matter, the, the recent GUP, we had 11 different governmental jurisdictions from the two counties weigh in in some formal way. Almost all of them actually were represented in the hearings, and all of them were either in the hearings or sent letters. And that really helped bring home the message that this was a, an issue that had regional impacts, and that we needed to think beyond the boundaries of the unincorporated county 4,000 acres that were part of the discussion.
Will this by any chance have a possibility of including transportation into this effort where there is communication with, sharing with San Mateo County?
I don't know what will come of Supervisor Chavez's referral. It's too early to say. It was a relatively brief referral. We, we have a system that's a little unfamiliar to, to me, which is we put a, what we call a referral, a page or two or three in the hopper, and essentially say to staff, hey, I've got this thought, would you think about my thought a little bit more and come back to us and tell us what you think at the staff level? And then you're asked to vote on that, and I don't know how Mrs. Nissis found it, but I find it a little troubling because I'm being asked to vote for something that is yet to be articulated. And so technically, all I'm voting for is, yeah, go think about it, but, so in this instance, as I say, it was a relatively short referral. It wasn't meant to be a fully fledged proposal, and that's as far as it's gotten so far. Certainly in the informal conversations that, that I've hosted, sponsored, convened, whatever, the range of issues is pretty wide-ranging. Certainly it includes transportation, housing, open space, recreational amenities, municipal services, all of those topics, so.
Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are, we are running up to our time limit here. I will be pretty brief here, but first of all, let me add my thanks to the work that you and the county have done on, on so many issues back to Buena Vista and since then, and, but notably this year and the last couple of years on the Stanford GUP, and I want to commend the county again for the, for the good work that it did on this issue that I think is, is helpful in just many, many different ways. Real briefly, I want to echo a couple of thoughts that, that have been brought up already. One is on the affordable housing issue and this whole issue of, you know, of distribution of funds and so forth, the things that, things that we continue to grapple with here in Palo Alto, housing and transportation obviously being very important. The, the challenge of affordable housing is how do you fund it? And we continue to, we continue to struggle with that here in the county, particularly if you are, if you're not willing to take on projects that might produce a little bit of housing in the short run, but in the long run produce more demand for it than you actually supply. And then it comes back to money, and so we continue to grapple with that. In terms of transportation funding, I, I realize VTA is not a county agency, but it's, it's a concern for us. We have three modes of basically quote, unquote, mass transportation in town. One is Caltrain, which, you know, is moving along in its arc as well. One is VTA, and, you know, in the long term is, VTA gradually reduces service in the fringes of the county, and the North County being one of them. You know, we have the potential to pick up some of the slack with, with our third, third transportation mode, which is our own local shuttle network. But again, that also comes back to funding, and so we, we grapple with that and we try to make choices around that as well. So let me close on a question, which you mentioned earlier. Can you give us an update on the teacher housing project? Which I understand there was some money from Facebook and which we are delighted to see.
We, we've made steady progress over what has now been not quite two years. As you will recall, councilmembers, I had suggested that the roughly acre and a half on Grant Avenue across the street from the county courthouse might be well-suited, would be well-suited, to a teacher housing project. The initial conceptual analysis from county staff was it could accommodate 60 to 120 units. And the first thing I asked our board to do was to set the site aside for that purpose. The board agreed to do that. Second thing I asked was that we set aside $6 million of those developer fees that we talked about earlier as a partial funding. Next, I went off and talked to five school districts, well, excuse me, next I came to you and said, how about $3 million? And you said, we'd like to set that aside. And, you know, set aside means just set aside. Doesn't mean that, you know, you need to have the money in your pocket on any given day. It just means that you've identified some funds that can and will be used for that purpose once a viable project is, comes forward. And as we sort of discovered with the very different Buena Vista effort, you know, if you've got some cash and some commitment from a couple of governmental entities, and in this case, a site, well, then you're having a serious conversation with people. And so the rest of the serious conversation was to go talk to five school districts, including our local community college district, Foothill D'Anza, and then Palo Alto Unified, Mountain View Los Altos, Los Altos Elementary and Mountain View Wisman Elementary, to say, look, let's say it's 60 units, you know, if we had five different districts involved, that could be a dozen units for each of you. Are you interested? And would you put up what I call some skin in the game money, $50,000 a unit, which doesn't sound like much here at this day, perhaps, but, you know, as former school board members, one of the things we know is, they don't have a line item budget that says teacher housing, you know, it doesn't, and it doesn't come from Sacramento that way. So it seemed more daunting, but I thought it was important that the districts be engaged in the conversation in a way that was more sure if somebody brings us something free, we'll take it. All five districts at various levels and at various sort of levels of enthusiasm sort of said, yes, they're interested, so that was good. And then as sort of part of a larger series of conversations out in the public, we talked about the need for teacher housing, because part of the reason I wanted to do this project was not just to do the project, but to sort of start the conversation more broadly. And I think I've been very pleased that if you think about it, two years ago, this was a topic that didn't get much airtime, and now over the course of the last year, if you go back and look at the newspapers and the online stories, people are talking about the importance of teacher housing. I mean, it's, it's a thing whose time has come, I believe, and I'm, I'm pleased that our effort has been part of making that happen. Then along the way, we had a conversation with folks at Facebook who said, we like what you're doing, we'd like to give you a grant of $25 million. And the key word I want to underscore there is grant, because we had been thinking about, all right, if we've got the site and we've got maybe $9 million in developer fees and some, another $3 million maybe from five districts, could we, you know, get a loan for the rest? And Facebook said, we want to do it as a grant, and we want it to thereby permanently underwrite the cost. They did have folks in South San Mateo County that they wanted to make sure that the project was also willing to serve. So the Ravenswood Elementary School District, for example, is a primary beneficiary of Facebook's large S. There is theoretically some potential for Menlo Park Elementary, Los Lamitas Elementary, these are South San Mateo County school districts, to participate, as well as staff at Menlo Atherton High School. Whether that is real or not, I think remains to be seen, depends on how many units we create, what the demand for those units is within the Ravenswood District, and how much capacity is then left for those other districts to engage on.
Do you have any idea of total cost?
Well, you know, what, the, the other thing I should tell you is we, we, at some point, this needs to be more than an elected official's good idea, so we, we went out and did an RFP, the County Request for Proposals. The county selected Mercy Housing to be the development partner with us. They came back with a much more refined analysis and said that they thought, I think, 93 units was their estimate on what it could be. No, I don't have a more refined notion about what it would cost, but, you know, typically, I think, you know, the land is probably worth 12 to 15 million, depending on property values in Palo Alto, it's an acre and a half. And then folks said that they thought I should look at $500,000 to $600,000 for construction costs, and given the fact that everything takes too long and costs too much, I immediately went to 600,000 and said, all right, so if I multiply 600,000 times 90 units, more or less, then I'm looking at 54 million, which if we've got the site, plus 25 million, plus 6 million, plus 3 million, plus 3 million from the districts, then you're looking at a loan for the rest, and it's like, let's go. So I'm, you know, every time I'm aggravated, I just remind myself, oh, no, we're really making progress, even though it seems like it shouldn't be this much work. So I think we're, we're making good progress, and, and it's real now. When you have a development partner and you have that kind of commitment of hard cash, and thank you again for Palo Alto's piece, and, you know, this is probably a good way for me to close here. I, I think we can worry to, we always have to worry when we represent the public about careful use of taxpayer dollars, fair share, making sure we get our share of the benefits, but we can over-worry that sometimes. And if we can just sort of say, look, these are tough problems, none of us can solve them by ourselves, but if we all take a piece of it, we can do this. So the teacher housing problem, look, if, you know, one project isn't going to solve the problem, but if we can get one project of 90-odd units built, well, then that means we could do a half dozen, and all of a sudden, you're talking about 500 units of housing, and all of a sudden, you're talking about tens of thousands of kids who have the benefit of teachers who haven't driven halfway to kingdom, coming back to get to work every day. Okay, that's a, that's a thing. And even this one project requires the county and the city and the school districts and a private sector contributor. Again, I don't think any one of us would have gotten the project done by ourselves, but if everybody will just sort of say, we want to do our part and not be too concerned about how sharp their pencil is as they figure out what they think their fair share is, I think it's a good thing. So on that, and that, I will leave, even though no one asked, because you're so gracious, mindful of the request for Highway 101 bike bridge funding. There is, I just figured I might as well get it out there. There's, there's, believe it or not, from 2012, there is a, from the prior supervisor, there is a $4 million commitment in county funds that has been waiting patiently for someone to say, we're ready, give us the money.
Ready.
And so, we're, so, yeah, for the record, we're ready, give us the money. And I am hoping, I can't guarantee, but I'm hoping that we can get that on our last meeting of the year on December 17th, so that the funds come sooner rather than later to the city. And just so he knows that I've seen it, I have a copy of your manager, Mr. Chikata's letter dated November the 22nd to Sylvia Gallegos, saying, and by the way, might there be another million and a half kicking around with the rationale for that, so.
I'll be in the audience when you vote to transfer it.
So, so I'm being lobbied left and right on that item, and I know you'll also be good regional players in understanding that there are other competing demands for those funds as we try to figure out how we can help you get to the finish line on this particular project.
But fortunately not Bart.
Okay, thank you. It's been a pleasure to be with you. I don't want to overstay my welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Before you go, let's see, I'm going to look at the city attorney and the city manager. We have apparently three people who would like to speak to this, this item.
I'll withdraw my question in that, to save time.
Okay, so we have a couple of people that would like to speak to this item. Do we do this on study sessions?
Well, we're going to have to keep Joe here for a couple more minutes if we do that.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, thank you very much Supervisor Semidion, who will stay. We have two speakers here. You'll have two minutes each, and the first will be Herb Borak.
Thank you Supervisor Semidion for being here, for your service and for filing for a third term. I have two planning items. The first has to do with Stanford, which has a policy of moving academic support services to the research park to free up space under its current general use permit. So it seems to me for the next general use permit, that the project should be bigger than just the campus, that it should also consider the adjoining property in the city of Palo Alto, at least, to, in the environmental analysis. My other comments regard the Alcoa site, which I've tried to think how it fits into the zoning restrictions, neighborhood commercial site for, for ground floor uses, and this seems to be something that would, would fall under some medical type of use rather than personal service, which is fairly restrictive definition. And looking at the, the code, Title 18.16, there are two sections. Point 40 refers to additional findings required by office users in addition to the normal design review, and 18.16.050 refers to exceptions where you can have office users. And it seems to me the simplest thing, which has been done for another property, is to just add the property under the lease that was adopted on October 22. And in addition, office users more than 5,000 square feet need a conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. And Roland Lebrun.
Good evening, Senator. It always amazes me when people come up to me and ask me, are you Joe? And you know what? It only happens in Palo Alto. But seriously, one I want to talk about is taxes. But seriously, one I want to talk about is taxes. And I really appreciated the comment that you made.
Please treat them well, okay? That's awesome.
I really appreciated the comment that you made about the 2014 Measure B that never happened, and why we killed it. And I want to remind everybody that right now, in Santa Clara County, we are paying 1.6% to 5% in transportation taxes. Three different tax measures, plus the 1/8 for Bart, and we're about to get up to 1 and 3/4 if we pass Caltrain. And then put faster Bay Area on top of that and starting where we are now. We're getting close to 3%. But the reason I'm addressing you tonight is the way faster Bay Area is moving, it's going way, way too fast. It's Cal Gardner, all over again, give us the money, and we'll figure out what we're going to do with it later. And what I'd like to see is for us to slow down a little bit and put this on the ballot in 2022, once everybody's agreed as to exactly what they're going to be doing with that money, and we will treat it well. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I want to thank our guest very much, County Supervisor, I mean, Joe Semidion. And thank you very much for joining us. Happy holidays and appreciate your service.
Pleasure to work with you. And the final shout should be, the city, including the city staff, was great to work with throughout the Stanford land use matter. There was, as you might imagine, a lot of back and forth, a lot of what do you think about this, a lot of what about that? And that was a series of conversations that was always easy to make happen, and it's the kind of collaboration you'd like to see when you work on things that are regional. So thank you again for that. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
And I'll give you your microphone back.
Thank you.
Cheers. Taxi.
Okay. With that, with that, I think we should power straight through and take a break a little bit later, and return to the rail separation XCAP operating discussion we had. And so I have a light on from Councilmember DuBois.
So a quick question about the town halls. Are those going to be general town halls or just focused on grade separation?
Specific to your question, they will be specific to rail.
So if members of the public show up and want to ask questions, other questions, what are we going to do?
We'll take their questions and refer them to the right staff who can answer their questions, like we normally would.
So we've had town halls in the past that have been more open forums, so maybe we should call it something else, just, or a rail town hall, or just make it specific.
Thank you.
I guess the question in the staff report about a potential ad hoc committee, or rail committee, or liaison to the XCAP, you know, if it was a liaison, they wouldn't really be able to set policy or state the view of the council. So I'm not really clear how that would help the XCAP stay connected to the council. What is staff's thoughts on that?
You know, I think we certainly just wanted to give some options to the council, and in particular, I think as the XCAP is a new group, just finding its pace and trying to identify how it can best meet its mission, having some ongoing connection with the council was the thought. And again, whether that's through a single liaison, an ad hoc, which presumably could allow two members of the council to participate, and, you know, perhaps even trade off if necessary based on time commitments, that was the basic concept.
Okay. Yes, again, my concern would be, do they really want to be authorized to state the position of council or advocate for things? Say, happy to have your communications person here. This is a major transportation project, so I hope our transportation department is involved. It sounds like the XCAP is off to a really good start. I've been getting feedback from people, I'm hearing positive things, so I'm hopeful like we've, we're finally on a good process as we kind of push on towards the end. You know, depending on what happens with the bridge, I know that's considered a historic bridge. If it were to be replaced, it would be interesting to see if we could preserve it in some way as a pedestrian bridge. And I'm definitely interested in hearing more about the new alternatives as they work their way through the process. And so for me, I think on the question of the updates, I'd like to just see those continue to come to the entire council. I think, you know, we're reaching the end of this process, and I think it's critical that we keep the entire council kind of up to date and engaged. To me, an ad hoc committee would be similar to rail committees, which we've had, but with the recusing issues we had, we kind of have settled on kind of the entire council. And it just seems critical to me that we continue to update the council more frequently. So if we did it frequently, I think we could be pretty efficient with kind of 30-minute updates. So that would be, that would be my preference.
Are you thinking of it monthly or bimonthly or what?
Well, we said at least bimonthly in our previous motion, so yeah, as often as needed, but maybe monthly. I guess, I mean, there's not that many months between now and April 8.
I think going with bimonthly is important.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
[inaudible]
I guess, I'm going to, I'm going to go to Councilmember Cormac in a second here with lights on. I just want to, I thought I'd interject a little bit, maybe I should have said this before we started. We actually have a couple of issues. One, I suspect is going to be really, our staff has asked a couple of questions of us tonight. One, I suspect to be really, really quick, which is, is there anybody who feels a compelling need that we ought to declare an ARBRIC right now? And I suspect there's not going to be a lot of enthusiasm for this. And then the next one is, do we need a liaison or an ad hoc committee? And which I think, you know, I appreciate your comments very much, I think that's a very clear way of thinking about it. My own has been, you know, I mean, the priority here is, you know, the quote and unquote preferred alternative, and actually, there are alternatives, right, that we're going to, because there's different places and so forth. You know, the council is going to make this decision, okay, not the, not the XCAP, okay? And so what we need from the XCAP process and the public process is, you know, to get the, to get us to the point where the council has enough information to make an intelligent and informed decision on this. And so to the extent that we look at liaisons or ad hoc committees and so forth, I think, I think we ought to add, ask the question, is this going to help us, give us greater confidence that by, on the schedule we've chosen for ourselves, that we're going to have, we're going to have what the council needs in order to make this kind of decision? And does this help us get there and so forth? And I thought your comments were trenchant to that. Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you. In terms of the three questions that council has asked, I'm happy to eliminate consideration of the ARBRIC this evening. In terms of council participation at the town hall meetings, I would hope and expect that as many of us as can would attend to listen. I find hearing the questions that people pose helpful to us as we chat about what the XCAP should do and how staff can help that. We had, I think, maybe a third people who weren't new at the most recent town hall meeting, and some of those questions were, what was your word, Mr. Mayor, trenchant? Yes, so I'm certainly happy to participate.
I didn't, I didn't mean that to imply one or another implementation decision on the, on how we do the rail separation.
Nevertheless, the questions were relevant. I want to emphasize the summaries that are mentioned in the second bullet here. I think that's incredibly helpful. You know, we had this experience certainly in the school district. If you aren't able to attend a PTA meeting, sometimes there's a note taker who sends that out as we think about your average person who is not here this evening. Having something written is incredibly helpful, so I appreciate seeing that. In terms of having the council stay engaged and guide the XCAP work, I will say that this one and a half page memorandum is exactly what I wanted. This is what I wanted the XCAP to do. The thorough vetting of the alternatives that exist, the opportunity to quickly onboard and consider any other alternatives, the deep dives on the six different working group areas. You know, this is exactly the level of information that I would like to see, seeing it monthly or bimonthly, as, you know, the XCAP is interested in doing. All of that works for me. So to the extent that we have this continuing, I don't see the need to add additional work for council members as separate from, you know, what we already do.
Thank you. Councilmember Ness.
I think this is good work, but I also think I'm looking at it slightly differently. At some level, I have real anxiety about April, because when you're in XCAP in that meeting, and I've gone to many of them now since Eric and I have been legal, it really reminds me that we're still very much in the discussion phase. We have not, we have not narrowed anything down, and it's December. So that gives us January, February, March, January, February, and March. That sounds like three months to come to us in April with a real decision. We don't have any example yet of real cost. We're throwing out huge amounts of money, and I think at this point, it hasn't become real, and I'm really troubled by that. Somehow, in April, we're going to make a decision that will cost millions of, billions of dollars, and is going to really trouble at least many parts of the community, especially as we know in the Churchill area, we're hearing a great deal of feedback. So not asking you to come back or to comment, but please think about it. I think having an ad hoc committee would be a very good idea, so that someone is there, someone feels that they need to be there. I have been basically a drop-in, some of the rest of you I know have dropped into the meetings. Very helpful to be there. But we are, at this point, this is a volunteer committee, no consultants involved at this point. So that's my stop, look, and listen message for tonight, saying, let's, let's talk about where we really are, so that when someone comes to us in April, presumably Nadia will come and, and report this to us, we're actually ready to vote on how we're going to do these. And I can pretty much be sure that not everybody in our community is going to be enthusiastic about the final decisions we make. Especially hearing we needed another shoe fly track, according to Caltrain, that's a major undertaking.
Councilmember Koo.
So Megan, you've done a really great job on all your outreach to the community, but help me understand a little bit more, so maybe I'm not getting it. The town hall meetings and also the other ones at the schools, I know it's not completely formulated, but is it a question, question-answer session, and the experts are going to be there so that the general public can ask the questions of them, as well as the XCAP committee members?
Sure, I can definitely answer that. So for the three town hall meetings that are planned, the two for February and one for March, those would be presentation from a staff level and/or consultants, there would be Q and A opportunities, potential breakouts to talk about specific issues with some of the specific alternatives that are kind of listed here. And then these other dates, the January, March, and April dates, are more informal conversations, kind of open house style, where staff will be available to answer questions from the community and gain input.
And, and the one that says word on the street?
Yeah.
Thursdays, these are all Thursdays, I'm assuming?
The, I'll make that note and change that on the flyer, but the February and March dates at the top, those town halls are not all Thursdays.
Oh, okay.
So I'll note that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for that feedback.
So for the XCAP, do you know how, since Palo Alto Unified School District's representatives have, has decided not to join the XCAP, how are you updating Palo Alto Unified School District on what the XCAP is doing? Or is there any?
Actually, I believe they're, we're planning to attend as a member of the audience rather than as an active participant. I'm not sure that they've actually been at the most recent meetings, but on an ongoing basis, I'm in touch with the superintendent, so we'll maintain those communications.
Will there be an effort also to speak at the PTA or PTAC that the school has to inform their PTAs?
We haven't really scoped that out at this point, so I think we'd need to see what might make sense there.
Okay. So will you get back to me on that?
I think we can talk to the school district and see what they recommend.
Okay. And also, the, this book that came back at the last packet, can you tell me a little bit about it?
It's actually unrelated to this topic.
Oh, it's, it has number three on it.
It's out of your finance committee. That may have been from a different agenda.
Oh, okay. Then I am sorry.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you again for all the work on this item. Thank you to all the members of the public who spoke, went away for an hour and came back. Couple comments, just starting with the liaison issue. I do share some of the comments of my colleagues that, you know, maybe liaison isn't terribly helpful, given the council doesn't have any formal definition around our policies here, but I will remind us, there are a few things, we do have some agreement and lines in the sand on. Some of those are things such as, we do want to make a decision by April, we have appointed a group of XCAP members, we do have a set of criteria we've endorsed repeatedly, we do understand the necessity of, you know, Measure B and potentially other layered funding. So there are a few points on which I think the council is quite aligned, and there may be a need to at times reinforce that with XCAP members and just remind the public. I've certainly heard from some folks in the community that the XCAP is working well. I've heard from others that it's really process-focused and not really digging into some of the details, so just both sides there. But I don't think we have to do a liaison. Would love to hear from staff on the San Francisco Bridge update and then the ECOM traffic reports. I know they were published in the past week or two. If staff could send those out to council, just with your thoughts and...
Sure. Let me hit that one first. In terms of traffic study, there was, as you mentioned, a distribution to the XCAP. XCAP will be talking about it at one of the upcoming agendas. I think they were trying to determine which meeting to schedule that for. Happy to forward that also to the council, to make sure that you get all the information that XCAP is having. On the bridge issue, I think it's, quite frankly, premature to speculate too much as to what is happening with that. We were advised relatively recently, and advised Nadia and other folks who were in a recent meeting, that this is an ongoing conversation, but very preliminary. Even the Caltrain staff is among their staff, trying to determine how to approach the issue. I think it's really at the, call it the facility assessment stage, rather than having a specific plan as to what will happen there. Quite frankly, as, as we've discussed it, it's an opportunity to have Caltrain actively interested in a particular element at one of our crossings. And so I think it opens up some potential that they'll be in problem-solving mode, as will we, in looking at what some of the options are on alignment methods, and what the, the fact that they have a compelling interest in, in coming up with the solution allows, in terms of the back and forth that we'll have with them. But that's, as I mentioned, just really at the very preliminary stage, and would really not want to suggest it's any further along.
Absolutely. And so that's actually super helpful and kind of tax into my next point, which I think one of the frustrations some folks I've heard from have at the town halls is that there's a presentation, and there's a Q and A, but it kind of just gets into a rat hole where, you know, maybe one person is leading the questioning, or the person answering can't provide different perspectives. And I would just encourage staff to, to recognize that and try to figure out some ways around it. Maybe you need different perspectives, maybe it is, you know, a bit of staff answering, a bit of consultant answering, maybe members from the XCAP, maybe, you know, draft one or two of us to come and answer questions from, you know, a council slash political lens, whatever that may be. I think we want to give multiple perspectives on the questions our community members have, not just staff and consultant. I know you guys take a lot, so maybe put some of else, the rest of us there. And then one other question, I saw a mention of surveys. What kind of surveys and kind of questionnaires are we planning for this process and working with on the public?
Great question. So we're planning a mix of different types of surveys to engage the community. Part of that is looking at social media and the surveys that social media platforms offer. So they're much smaller, short questions with short answers that folks can vote on. So that's one opportunity. The second opportunity is a longer online survey with multiple different questions to engage the community around different alternatives and options. And also, it is an And also, it is an opportunity to also inform the community, so there will be some information about those alternatives with some questions associated. So, it's a little mix of both of that. And the online survey we currently have out in the public is really to gauge where the community is right now.
Okay.
So, it's a comment card, very high-level question, what information does the community or will they might need to help the council make a decision? And it's a very high-level question to really better understand where the community is right today.
Okay. So, within reason of staff's abilities, I mean, maybe try to include XCAP on that, if that group has, you know, a set of questions that makes sense out in the wild. I would encourage us to consider those. And then, last question, so staff, this is an update, but it seems like there may be some action, if we want it, on the arbrick, is that right?
It's set up to allow you to do that, if you'd like to proceed with an action.
Okay. So, can you just give us the pros of, well, I guess the pros of potentially removing the arbrick option and the cons of that?
I think the pros would be if there are any confusion or anxiety created by the prospect of another advisory group being established, then eliminating it by affirmative action by the council, I think, would dispense with that. Cons, really not necessary in terms of our ability to proceed, but, you know, again, it's as much as anything else, making sure that we're clear in the messages we're sending to the community.
Okay. So, I don't know if anybody else has any more comments or questions, but I would love to hear everyone's perspectives on keeping or removing the arbrick. I think at this point, I'm in favor of removing it. We have an XCAP, we have our council, each and any of us can go to those meetings. You know, we may not be agreed in a liaison, I'm not going to, I don't think it's worth really bringing up. If we want to be a liaison, we can all do that on our own. So, I guess I'll just make the staff motion, staff recommendation, plus recommend elimination of the arbrick.
What is the staff recommendation, again?
Eliminate consideration of the arbrick.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. So, we have a motion to eliminate consideration of the arbrick.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cormac. Care to speak further in your motion?
No, I just want to thank staff for all the work so far, and the XCAP and every member of the public who showed up. Clearly, we have more work to do. There's been a lot of discussion over the past couple of years about process here. Certainly, don't think we're ever going to get it perfect, but at some point, we have to actually just do some of the work. And I think this is a good process, getting in the right direction. I think our XCAP is getting up to speed. As Councilmember Cormac mentioned, it's also a nice way to involve new people, and at this point, the arbrick seems unnecessary to me.
Councilmember Cormac, can you speak to your second?
Certainly, I did earlier, but I'll just add that, at the time we came up with this idea, you know, it was sort of still the idea generation stage. Okay, maybe we expand the XCAP, maybe we have the arbrick, let's see how finance manages. Now, we're a little bit further along, and I'm comfortable, obviously, both with the XCAP and then with the pace which the staff is working with us on finance.
Seeing no other lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes 7-0. So, I see no other lights. If there are no other motions, then I assume we will proceed as on track as we have. I personally am planning to go to the town hall meetings, as long as the Brown Act says it's okay. So, doesn't sound like we need a motion for that. And then, so the only potential is if somebody wants to move, that we do an ad hoc committee or a liaison or something like that, I suppose. Although, I think that's still at the discretion of the mayor to form an ad hoc committee at any point in time. City Attorney.
So, just a plug for the Brown Act, since you opened the door. So, councilmembers who attend just need to be mindful that they don't meet in groups with each other and discuss the item. So, you're there to, primarily to listen to the public? Yeah, thank you.
All praise to the Brown Act. Okay? Seeing no other lights, I think we're done. Thank you very much.
I'm never done with this.
That's an excellent point. Okay, so, it is now 7:40, and so, the next items on the agenda are, we're going to do agenda changes, additions, and deletions. Then we'll do oral communications, then we'll do the consent calendar, and then we'll do city manager comments after consent. How many oral communication speakers do we have?
Ten.
Ten. So, I'm going to suggest we take a five-minute break now, and then come back to agenda changes and deletions before we dive into oral communications. So, could we, everybody come back here at quarter to eight?
This is you, Stanford, Vince Larkin, coming to you live from the Palo Alto City Council, as the Palo Alto City Council's had a busy night tonight. They dealt rail, and they went from rail to, oh, an hour and 15 minutes with Supervisor Joe Semidion. Joe Semidion talked about things, was touch base on things like Stanford and the GUP plan, and he had spoke to President Levon when the day of the Stanford pulling out the GUP plan. And he also talked about another GUP plan in San Mateo County, and that there was money for that, that if you didn't know, he said, there was there. You know, it's very interesting watching him. One of the things that has made him such a great public servant is, well, certainly, they say money is the mother's milk of politics. He certainly knows where there is money to get money for your community or for your city, and it almost turned into, from a Q&amp;A to almost a lobbying session there at the end. I thought that was very interesting, he even admitted that. But he talked about various things like taxes, and why, in the past, he's been against taxes of certain things, because it certainly didn't serve his region. Talked about transportation, and how transportation is San Jose, certainly San Jose-driven, that the Measure B, the vast majority of it goes to that San Jose to Bart, Bart to San Jose, which he supports, but it leaves the 14 other cities without really anything. And he also talked about dealing with the VTA, that in many ways, they hold a lot of the purse strings that the county doesn't. And also, he talked about GUP and the future of GUP, and the future with Stanford, that they are thinking about other things, that is something we're going to hear about again. But Stanford has not really contacted them yet, and it was very interesting. 175,000 square feet is out there, they want to do something with housing. He says it's three football fields or two Coshos, and it is out there. It is out there as a project that is sort of waiting to be done, and it was interesting hearing him also talk about other tax issues that he didn't feel was representative. Talked about the toll taxes, that people go through, hard-working people coming across the East Bay, and it's from $3 to $6. If you add that up, you're paying $750 if you do work 22 days a month, a month, and then you put that in how many days, how many months in a year? It's about $750 you're paying, and that's really hitting the working people. And also, he talked about, you know, the sales tax, and why he's against so much of the sales tax. Very interesting hour with Supervisor Semidion, and something, it was a great thing, he and Liz Ness together, right up there. They talk about, many times in the past, where they collaborated on a lot of different things, and interesting to see going forward, as he certainly is re-upping for another term to run for supervisor again. And certainly, it was Tom DeBois who praised him for his work with the Stanford GUP issue, and sticking up for the city's, the local community, as the Stanford GUP, Stanford pull that, pulled that project. There was a lot of problems with it, and Stanford is considering what their next move will be. There's a lot on tonight's agenda, and so, two things. One thing that's coming up is rules for the council. There's a lot of accusation that, when it comes to council's relationship with boards, you know, the Architectural Review Board, the HRC, the many, many boards, that are basically volunteer boards, and certainly is a way for people to get into and onto the political process and into politics in such a big way. So, but there's some question about the relationship between the city council and the boards, and how that's done. So, they're looking at rules tonight, they're going to take a look at that. It's a memo, one thing they are all going to think about is their term limits for boards. That's something that may be talked about as well. This is from Sarah Taban in the Palo Alto Daily News. Rules for council. How should they conduct themselves with other boards? The Palo Alto City Council members are working to come up with the rules for how they should interact with members of the city boards and commissions after complaints that council members have too much sway over the panels. The city has several boards and commissions whose volunteer members are appointed by council. The panels include the Planning and Transportation Commission, the Public Arts Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Historic Resources Board, the Library Advisory Commission, the Utility Advisory Commission, and others. A memo from the city manager, Ed Chikata, for council meeting tonight asks council members to respond to the proposed guidelines for council members when they attend meetings and boards and commissions. Respecting the opinions of others, council members get assigned to different commissions and are to support and to serve as representatives for the council. Suggestive rules include respecting different opinions, not lobbying commissioners, and showing up to the meetings for commissions on which council members are serving. Council members may have a closer working relationship with some individuals serving on the boards and commissions, but must be fair and respectful to all citizens serving on the boards and commissions, says the memo. Councilmember Liz Ness, a member of the City Council Policy and Services Committee, said the goal is to provide a clearer set of rules and responsibilities that are, and to avoid such misunderstandings. Listen and participate. She said there are disagreements over whether council members should just listen or participate at the council meetings, at the commission meetings, rather. Ness says she tries to just listen at the commission meetings and report back to council without swaying the commissions. There have been complaints over the years that council members try to influence commissions too much, she said. Ness said that the council doesn't currently have any rules for what to do, when commissioners complain that certain commissions' members are causing trouble or not contributing. And then, as I mentioned, term limits for the commissions. Ness said term limits for commissioners have come up in policy and services meetings, and she expects the issue to be discussed tonight as well. Also tonight, in the closed session, is that item that has to do with the urgency law to protect renters. I mentioned that before, we'll see where that goes, that's item number 8A. So, it's been a busy night for the council, as they...
So, we're going to regroup here? Are there any agenda changes, deletions, additions, subtractions, multiplications, square roots?
Okay.
Convolusion integrals?
Very good. Well, just to reiterate what you had mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, a couple of just technical items, that the revised agenda includes 8A, which was in addition to the originally posted agenda. Also, just in the order of items, the city manager comments will be taken after the consent calendar, rather than immediately after this changes.
Thank you. In that case, we move on to oral communications, at which any member of the public may speak to any item which is not on the agenda this evening. And seeing as we are, it's now 8:50, seeing as we are now about 45 minutes behind schedule, you'll each have two minutes. And the first speaker will be Indra Monga.
Hi, council, thank you very much. So, my topic is related to the recent traffic report released and the study, so I hope you will bear with me on this. So, we studied the traffic report very closely and feel that the traffic report does not accurately represent the traffic situation that the residents experience. And the diagrams definitely do not show that, they show one or two cars, actually Dexter, I was surprised, did a good job of showing what the real situation is. My concern is that that traffic report is misleading, it's creating a false perception that this can be resolved with the suggestions they have, and feel that this is not a comprehensive traffic study that we can depend on. I mean, just for an example, there are three block backups, and now they're proposing multiple lights on one block lanes, and, you know, you know that it is going to back up even beyond the traffic lights, and that's not going to work. So, what I feel as a resident and studying this, I'm not sure how to address that, how to interact with the people who did the traffic study, to see more insight and to see whether that makes sense or not, but by reading the report, it does not make sense at all. Also, city guidelines state that the width of the road should be 36 feet with bike lanes, and, you know, some of the streets that are being represented as two lanes are only 30 feet wide, so not even sure that if they took into case the reality of the situation, they got rid of parking on the Embarcadero Slip Road, and for that residence, where will the traffic, where will cars park if they come? They're actually, high school kids get dropped off there and picked up there, and if there is no parking, it's going to create even more of a traffic issue that is not being considered. So, I think, from my perspective, that some of these things which are being done and reported, there is no way to provide input. Okay. And the last thing I want to say is that bikes were not included in this study at all, the interaction of bikes in the traffic, and for people who are going to Palo Alto High School, that's a big deal. So, thank you.
Thank you. Reshma Singh.
Respected leaders of our city, my name is Reshma Singh. I live at the corner of Embarcadero and Alma Street. I have two kids that have been through Walter Hayes and Jordan and Pally, and my kids walk to school every day. I would like to request our city leaders for a comprehensive, long-term master plan, something that takes into account not just the current traffic study, but something that takes into account the Stanford expansion, the Palo Alto Avenue and University Avenue expansion, Castle expansion, because all of that is going to impact that whole area a lot. Right now, we as neighbors, we pride ourselves with walkability, and the way, the two parts of the coin are really the measures at Churchill and the mitigation for the rest of the city. And currently, the way the situation is being set up is it's like neighbor versus neighbor, and we really don't want to have that. We really want to have an equitable city where we follow process, we are an inclusive community, and my kind of solution to this problem is that, why don't we think about an inclusive workshop, perhaps, that talks to the XCAP? I'm not sure what the current process is in terms of inclusion or incorporation of the neighbors' comments within the XCAP, so perhaps, before the three town halls that happened in February and March, we do a couple of workshops that includes the neighbors. And my primary concern really is around the safety of the kids. Right now, Embarcadero is too fast or too slow. At off-peak hours, it's too fast, on-peak hours, it's too slow. So, I think there's a lot of things to take into consideration, and as somebody who has had design, urban planning and design and architecture experience, I would love to be able to enthusiastically put myself out there and help save what's remaining of Palo Alto neighborhood and happy process that we can have out here. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Weiss.
Good evening, councilmembers and fellow Palo Altons. My name is Mark Weiss, I live in downtown north, but I think of myself as Pan Palo Alton. When you walk in, you notice that there's something in the bulletin board that says this is our 125th anniversary of the incorporation of Palo Alto, and we should be proud of that. It's also, I've been telling people all year, 2019, that is the 250th anniversary of when Portola and his group of Spanish explorers got as far as El Palo Portola and his group of Spanish explorers got as far as El Palo Alto before they turned back, but that's how we got our name. So it's a doubly interesting year. But my point tonight is that this is also the fifth anniversary of the Mitchell Park Community Center, and I think we should be celebrating that, being rebuilt. It reopened in 2014. And for one, I think Ms. Councilmember Cormac mentioned that earlier today in this meeting, and I think we're all proud of her leadership in getting that done and her leadership so far on this board. Personally, it was a big thing for me because I met my wife, Teri Acebo Davis, the former arts commissioner. She was chair of the commission when that room was built. There have been some wonderful, besides the library and the teen center, there's some wonderful events in the El Palo Alto Ballroom. Michelle Jokic and Dr. Rona Hu have a classical series. Akita Tana has a series of benefit events for the Tohoku tsunami victims. And I'm actually throwing an informal five-year anniversary party on December 20th with the musicians Elvin Bishop, Mitch Woods, and Maria Moldauer. I've actually, under the name Earthwise Productions, have done eight shows there so far and another seven on the books. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Scholl.
Thank you. Recently, or just recently, the Departments of Public Health and Engineering at the University of Washington just published yet another university study on the dangers of ultrafine aircraft exhaust particles under next-gen's concentrated arrival paths. To quote and paraphrase the main study findings, this is the first study of ultrafine particles at Sea-Tac Airport in Seattle to distinguish between roadway and aircraft sources. We could separate the pollution from the two sources using measurements of particle size and black carbon concentration. Roadway is relatively larger and more black carbon. The other is termed ultrafine, is relatively smaller and has less black carbon. We observed the larger type near major roadways. In contrast, we found ultrafine below the landing paths of aircraft. Our findings are consistent with previous literature on roadway and aircraft-related ultrafine particle pollution. Monitoring campaigns conducted in airports, communities of Los Angeles, Atlanta, Boston, New York, and Amsterdam have all identified elevated levels of ultrafine particles that aircraft have caused. The Los Angeles study in particular has found elevated levels of ultrafines beneath the landing paths at LAX and that these ultrafines were smaller, were the smaller type, the ultraultrafines. The study's finding is also consistent with previous studies, which showed that these ultraultrafines are produced by jet engines set at near idle for landing and not during full thrust or takeoff. There is relatively rapid downward transport of these plumes, in part because of the downward weight created by wingtips. These smaller particles do not dissipate easy as fast as the larger particles created by cars. Therefore, quote, "There is the potential for more people to be affected by ultrafines from aircraft than from all roadway noises." And I would like to call your attention again to this Department of Health's determination. Due to their small size, ultrafine particles are believed to exert higher toxicity than larger particles. These peer-reviewed university studies are piling up, and I really think we need to have a focused address on this. It's not just noise, it's health we need to worry about. Thanks.
Thank you. Ken Horowitz.
Good evening. Tomorrow night, the Policy and Services Committee is meeting, and I'm not going to be able to attend, so I wanted to make a comment because one of the items going to be discussed tomorrow night is city council's priority setting process. And something that's been going on a lot longer than even the rail problem is coverly. And I think it's about time that the city council, you know, put coverly front and center in regards to its priorities. And in fact, to put the interests of the residents first and not try to work, continually work with the school district. You know, I was here about a month ago, and I suggested that, you know, that I would recommend that you walk away from the agreement with the city school board and take care of your first priority, which is to make sure that the people that are leasing the buildings and that are in the eight acres that you do own are in safe buildings. And right now, it's not safe. So I would hope that at your priority meetings, that you put coverly front and center. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Epstein.
Hi. I'm on Emerson Street. I'm part of the Cloverleaf for the rail crossing issues that we have. And I want to just implore the council to use fairness in looking at a small group of very underrepresented people in our neighborhood, which is a very small area, and it feels like we are not being heard because we're such a small group compared to the rest of the thing. And with all due respect to XCAP, I don't feel like that they're not representing us in that thing, although they're trying to fix this thing in general. So I want to ask that you listen to us as well. Before concluding something like a closure on Churchill, take a look and please mitigate the area that we're going to feel as soon as all the traffic follows in our Cloverleaf. The studies that I've seen are woefully inaccurate. They really don't show the impact already that we have in our area and on Embarcadero Road. And those things are going to get much worse with Castile and Stanford. And I know that they've said to us they don't want to take that into account because it's out of scope, but it's certainly not out of scope within the next 20 years. Those things are going to happen. And I do understand on the 2040 master plan, Embarcadero was already set up to be mitigated from the traffic impacts like Charleston was, and it feels like that's just falling out of favor as well. So please listen to the underrepresented group as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Bennett.
Hi, I'm Keith Bennett with Save Palo Alto's Groundwater. There should be a presentation. So as you, let's see, the next slide is the arrows. As you may know, the Palo Alto updated their dewatering regulations in 2018. This is the first year they took full effect, but they, regulations are not working as intended. They had good intent, however, the dewatering in 2019 shows that the current relations are ineffective, difficult for contractors, too complex for the city to manage, unenforceable in practice, and furthermore, damages stored drains. And we have data this year that shows the impacts of current practices are significant, cover extremely large areas, and are unacceptably large. I'm going to go to the next slide since I only have two minutes. This shows you the water levels at the same site from a period of 2016 to date. What is noticeable is most, is that 2018, the groundwater level did not go down very much. In 2019, there were two pumping sites, one 1,100 feet and one 1,900 feet from this location. And despite 2019 being a wetter year than the previous year, you can see that the water table drops more than two feet. In fact, it drops 31 inches, 1,100 feet from the nearest dewatering. I can go into a longer case study here for 2151 Byron. The current regulations allow a total dewatering period of 84 days. This site took 114 days, the first 42 of which, despite regulations to the contrary, they did not do any excavation after starting pumping. They overpumped. The water level was lowered to at least 13.6 below ground surface 500 feet away from the site. Engineering, which I guess is the planning department, has not made most of the records. I'll let Greg finish.
Thank you. Greg Ziegler.
Continuing on from where Keith started, so continuing on 2151 Byron, they were, yes, they went 42 days before they even started digging the hole of pumping. And they, despite repeated requests to the city's engineering department, they've not provided the records, the required monitoring wells, weekly monitoring data, survey data of neighboring properties. So this is just an example of how the regulations are not really enforceable, not practical, and not being followed. There's a couple photos here showing the storm drain right next to 2151 Byron, where if you blast two fire hoses at a storm drain for four months, you're going to start seeing erosion and impacts on the concrete. When that storm drain down the road starts to sink in, who's going to pay for that? We're all going to pay for it. That contractor should be doing it, and the homeowner. So previous years, like last year, they showed that the CCAN cut-off wall method is effective at reducing the amount of water that's pumped. It was shown at three residential projects in North Palo Alto. The city did it itself with the parking garage in California Avenue area and the Marriott Hotels in San Antonio. Some of these pump less than a single family home. There are also design ways to get around this, like shallower basements, smaller basements. If you dig eight feet instead of 12 feet, you don't have to pump. So the bottom line is pumping 100 to 200 gallons per minute of water causes impacts to property, public property, private property. We need better regulations to force people to pump less. Thanks.
Thank you. Roland Lebrun.
Thank you, Mayor, and I've got exactly a two-minute video presentation. It's video, yeah. All right. Excellent. So what I want to present you, well, it's a follow-up on the conversation we had in June, as you may recall. And I believe I brought to your attention that asking AICAM to look at South Palo Alto Tunnel with either freight upgrade or, you know, freight and passenger in same tunnels was not going to lead to the kind of expectation you might have. And I'd like to see that AICAM did not disappoint in that respect. So what I've been working on is an alternative which keeps everything, including the shoe flies, within the right of way. So what you're seeing there, the green lines are the shoe flies, the gray is the ramp, and then you can see what the tunnels do and how we managed to make this so narrow. And we've actually got examples of this in Europe. So as the tunnels carry on, the freight goes back to the original tracks. And, oh, sum up. All right. So not sure what happened to my video, but right at the end, you're going to see a cost estimate of a tunnel in Germany for $125 million. And for the first time tonight, I'm going to give you what I believe is a reasonable cost estimate, is $250 million plus contingency. So you're looking at something between $250 and $200 million. And that's my presentation. This is the what, and my next presentation will be the how. And I am delighted to, just this afternoon, receive a bunch of questions from AICAM and staff, and I look forward to answering them. Thank you ever so much.
Thank you. And Jay Hashmi.
Hello and good evening. I'm an Emerson Street resident living on the Cloverleaf connecting Emerson to Embarcadero. And I am a parent of two children going to Palo Alto High School. And like any other Palo Alto resident, I'm very concerned about the safety of all the children, and not just at one part, but wherever the crossings are in Palo Alto, we have to be concerned. And if there is any closure of any roads in Palo Alto, we have to definitely consider the impact on the safety for children. So today, I see a lot of children being dropped off right in front of my house. Cars are randomly stopped, and they are stopped as well on Embarcadero Road, and that's definitely the problem, and that problem will worsen. Looking at the report recently received, the simulation model seems very simplistic. Looking at the pictures drawn and the overall model as an engineer, having done a lot of simulations, hundreds of simulations in my life, I can tell you that any simulation model is as good as the input to the model. This simulation model has not taken a lot of variables into account, and therefore the results are, in my opinion, not very realistic. Like, for example, if I were simulating this building for earthquake and I take all the variables into account but just miss one, you would not get that correct result. And when the unfortunate event happened, you know what could be the possible results. So I will definitely challenge the results in the report and have another look at what the model should look like and consider a few other things. For example, if you look at some of the pictures, what is depicted, what's going to happen after the lights are put in place? I think we show, see very nice pictures of few cars passing through those intersections and at those lights. And I welcome you to go visit those areas at 8:00 AM and see what happens today. So I'm sure you can imagine what will happen.
Thank you. Fred Bellin.
Last week's candidate interviews brought home that your process for selection of applicants to interview for boards and commissions needs an overhaul. If an applicant has not read relevant sections of the comprehensive plan, municipal code, or master plans, heard of SEQA, attended or viewed border commission meetings, or have a grasp of the key recent items that have come before his or her particular body of interest and are likely to be presented in the future, it makes little sense to interview that person. But what we need is beyond that. A minimum requirement for preparation stipulated in the application, a general baseline of knowledge for candidates for each board or commission generated by the city with board input posted on the specific commission website so those interested in the near or longer term can prepare over time. No final competency exam. Each applicant tests to his or her good faith of this basic knowledge via their signature. But no matter how impressive or comprehensive the curriculum VT, professional experience or civic engagement, when it is clear that what the candidate brings is an overriding sense of ego, entitlement, and/or grievance, there is no right to an interview. At the time when the clerk makes the first public announcements for applicants to a border commission, it should also include a fixed date and time period for the interview. This allows candidates sufficient time to plan or rearrange their schedules as necessary. If the latter is not possible, exceptions can be made to provide an alternate date. Your time is precious. It should be respected in the interview selection process. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the consent calendar. And let's see, so as there is, as the city manager mentioned earlier, there is an item 8A, which was not on 11 days ago, which is now. Is there anybody that's going to recuse themselves from anything on here? Consent.
Oh, Dick. As previously, I will excuse myself on the item that involves road control for the reason I've given previously.
You don't have to leave the room.
Shall I step out?
You don't have to. Okay. You may stay. You may stay. I asked the procedure.
I'll move consent.
Let's see. I have a light on from Councilmember Tanaka.
No, on six.
No, on six. Are there any other lights? Okay. So I'm sorry, you moved consent? Was there a second? Councilmember Koo, second.
Mayor Phil Saff?
Yes.
We have two speakers, two public speakers.
Ah, we do. Thank you. Sorry. So let's do that. We'll have two speakers. You'll have two minutes, and the first speaker will be Anil Babar.
Good evening. Anil Babar with the California Apartment Association. I'm new to this issue, but not new to dealing with it. We wanted to just address the retroactivity component of the urgency ordinance. We are concerned that, of the impact it may have on those owners who have filed a lease termination in the past. First of all, just starting with AB 1482, because that's the kind of the elephant in the room. This ordinance, just on the face of it, without the retroactive component on it, isn't necessary because 1482 does what this ordinance aims to achieve. It provides the necessity to... It provides the necessity to provide cause for any eviction filed, as long as you give a 60-day notice, filed from November 1st to the end of the year. Because any notice that falls into next year requires you to comply with 1482. As far as the just cause component of it, the retroactivity component of it, what you're doing is requiring owners who've already filed legally and lawfully those lease terminations to have to refile and spend thousands of dollars more just because the city wants them to refile using cause. These notices were filed legally at the time. They follow the law, and they shouldn't be penalized because the city has now changed their mind on how they want to administer 1482. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Lu.
Dear council members.
Sorry about that.
I'm a Palo Alto resident. I also represent Bay Area Homeowners Network, which consists of a bunch of mom-and-pop landlords. I'm against the urgent ordinance to provide just cause eviction protection to tenants for two reasons. Number one, it's not necessary for any future eviction notices. The deadline for issuing notice for no-cost eviction is November 1st. Now, it already passed the deadline. If people issue the notice now, the 60-day will go beyond January 1st, when AB 1482 is already effective. Number two, for the notices, they are already issued. We don't know how many of them are related to be used in order to increase the rent. Some mom-and-pops landlords may have spent thousands of dollars to have lawyers to help with the document. If the urgent ordinance is passed, this means this more, the mom-and-pop homeowners will waste all the money and have to reissue the notices. The housing crisis, in order to solve the housing crisis, we need to provide a business-friendly environment for small landlords to be easier to do business. I hope the city can provide, can be more business-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We now return to, we have a motion, and so would you vote on the board, please? And so, the consent calendar passes overall 7-0 with Councilmember Niss recused on 8A. So, 8A passes 6-0. Did I get that right? 6-0 for 8A, 7-0 for everything else except 6, which passes 6-1. Councilmember Tanaka, would you care to speak to your no vote on item 6?
Yeah. So, I looked at this. This is about graphic design. You know, I'm looking at some of the rates in here. They're pretty externally high for graphic design. I'm not sure if you guys have ever seen 99 Design, but there's a bunch of design websites out that could do a lot of this work for a heck of a lot cheaper. So, for me, to see that we're spending hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars on some items that could cost a fraction of less doesn't seem like a wise use of money, especially when we are considering to raise our utility rates on our customers. It doesn't seem like this is how we should treat taxpayer money or ratepayer money.
Thank you. Okay. We now move to city manager comments. Mr. City Manager, you have a floor.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a few items to note for you today. Let's see. First is on the National Citizen Survey. Previously, I had some questions about it. Actually, first off, it's been retitled to the National Community Survey. So, you heard it here first. The new name, newly named National Community Survey is being prepared, and staff is preparing to finalize the work to come back to you in January. Administration of this annual survey has required negotiation of a new contract with the National Research Center, reflecting the merger of the National Research Center with civic engagement platform provider Polco. It's a new provider to the National Research Center. As has previously been reported, the survey must remain mostly standardized for benchmarking purposes, but staff is preparing some recommendations for a limited number of customization questions for council feedback early next year. Second, note, the rain delays are related to anticipated tree work on the bike path off Arastodaro Road. The rain that we've all experienced recently has delayed tree maintenance work that was scheduled to begin last Wednesday, December 4th, in the SFPUC, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission right-of-way in the area between Arastodaro Road and the Los Altos city limits. Public Works staff today assessed the soil and determined that the work could begin tomorrow, December 10th, at 9:00 AM. The section of roadway will be closed, or pathway will be closed, for the tree work, expected to last about two weeks. And finally, oh, actually, two things. One, a bit of good news, another recognition for our utilities department. It's been honored with the Smart Energy Provider Award by the American Public Power Association. This is the first year American Public Power Association has issued this award, recognizing public power utilities for smart energy program structure, energy efficiency, and distributed energy programs, environmental and sustainability initiatives, and customer experience. So, kudos to our utilities department. And finally, just a follow-up to some of the public oral communications that was received, the next XCAP meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday, December 18th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the community meeting room at City Hall. And as always, the information is provided at connectingpaloalto.com, all one word. That completes my report.
Thank you, and kudos to the utility department. Okay. So, the, we now move to the action calendar, and we have two items, both colleagues' memo. And the first is related to colleague, actually, the second one's colleagues' memo. The first is staff-generated. So, the first item would be council direction on scope and review for procedures and protocols related to council-appointed boards and commissions. Is there a, let's see. Yes, there's a staff presentation.
Yes, very brief. Good evening. I'm Monique Season Henney. I'm the Assistant City Manager. Tonight, we bring before you a report requesting direction on the scope of the review for procedures and protocols related to boards and commissions. I will mention that other items are agendized for discussion tomorrow night with policy and services, so also related to procedures and protocols. But tonight, we are asking you to give us guidance on how to look at the range of issues that have come up as they relate to all the boards and commissions, looking at a variety of topics. So, one is the role of council liaisons, so looking at your participation as the liaison to different meetings, looking at the relationships between the boards and commissions and the council roles. So, asking whether a procedure should be established that enables the council to affirm interest in having the board or commission engage in a topic prior to development of recommendations. There are, in relationship to that, there are times where commissions or boards have developed a topic also requiring, requiring not only their own time, but also staff time. So, before they go too far down the path, perhaps there's a way for council to weigh in. Third is a question about commissioner conduct and terms. Should there be a greater clarification of expectations and a definition of particular elements as they relate? And finally, fourth, are there additional topics that we should also clarify, such as staff support level, the amount of resources to be invested on certain topics, how agendas are created, and rules of order? Should those be left up to the board or commission, or should we perhaps create something that is more, more common throughout, for all the different groups? So, we would just, at this time, like a confirmation of the issues to be included, maybe some idea of how, or perhaps there are other issues, and then we can look into this and come back. You also have the opportunity to suggest an ad hoc, and we'll look forward to hearing the discussion. Thank you.
Very good. So, we also have an ad hoc committee comprised of Councilmembers Duvois and Cormac, who's going to work with you folks more directly on this. Do you, do you guys want to speak to this? In fact, do you have a couple of slides?
Do we know this in ad hoc committee?
We announced it.
Tonight?
Last week. That's in an email. Okay. Councilmember, do you want, so do you want to do that now, or should we go to the public?
We do have two short slides. I think I'd, let's see, I'll see what Councilmember Duvois thinks. I prefer to hear from the public first.
Okay.
If we may.
That's, that's mine, too. So, we will go to the public, and...
With your permission, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
I'm kind of puzzled about this. You have a policy committee. Three people are on a policy committee. I think I can guess what is to be discussed from the memo tonight. Boards and commissions ad hoc committee is looking at pretty much the same thing, which means five people will have already had a discussion regarding this, which is a bit much, unless you very carefully dissect and remove some aspect of policy and procedures of Policy and Services Committee. It seems as though we're taking ourselves down a rather, rather awkward road.
Yeah. Councilmember Niss has brought up an interesting point, which is if there's an ad hoc committee and the Policy and Services Committee discussing similar stuff or overlapping stuff, are, can we manage that within the context of the Brown Act?
I think you'd have both practical problems and potentially Brown Act problems with that arrangement. So, council should really decide where it wants these questions to be discussed and then returned to council for action. It should be one or the other.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if you could perhaps tell us, this is your committee?
Yes.
Okay. So, you've named this committee.
Uh-huh.
And you clearly had some reason for creating a separate committee, which would be kind of like creating a separate finance committee, to overlook the other finance committee. So, I think you either need to tell us policy and services. You don't need to worry about that, which you worried about in the past, because that's been a pretty standard kind of assignment through the years. And, and I think it's going to be up to us as a body of seven to decide which you prefer to have, have attacked this, this problem that may or may not exist.
I think that's, I think that's a reasonable question. I, with some consultation, appointed the committee because I felt that it had not received adequate focus from the council in any form this year, and there was a compelling need to move more quickly on it. And so, that was, that was the source. But I think it's worth a discussion as to, you know, is, is the Policy and Services Committee gonna, should, should we do that, should we do that, should we have the Policy and Services Committee do it instead of an ad hoc committee? I think that's a reasonable discussion.
It's somewhat unusual. So, I would ask you, are you feeling that this should have come up in Policy and Services earlier this year?
I...
Because you could have directed that. I mean, that's your purview.
Yeah. I think, I think we have, I think there is a need here, and that it needed some focus here, and so that's why I did it.
Well, I wouldn't deny that it needs some focus, but it hasn't taken it up yet. So, until it takes it up, I don't know that there isn't any focus. So, let me ask, is the problem more than one of the problems we've been hearing directly from the public about for some period of time?
I think there are a number. I see the city manager.
Yes.
You want to...
So, maybe you could articulate all the problems that exist.
I think that's a fairly broad view.
Well, part of, well, I could speak to one specific area of interest. And actually, in terms of the procedures and protocols that is pending with Policy and Services Committee, would note, as is described in your staff report, that there is one specific section, it's actually Section 2.4, that's attached to the staff report, that is in the procedures and protocols that deals with boards and commissions. So, that's really the, the only section of the procedures and protocols that deals with the interaction between the council and boards and commissions. There is also, though, a section, or actually several sections in a municipal code that describe or relate to the commissions themselves. So, it's actually larger than the assignment that currently sits with Policy and Services. Boy, it's, the terminology here gets a little complex. But in any case, to just be clear, that it's more than what's currently pending with Policy and Services. The specific issue that I would like to chime in on is number two, which is the relationship between the board and commission and council roles, and perhaps that could actually be described a little better. I will have to acknowledge that there have been several instances that have been brought to my attention recently of inherent friction between staff and commissioners that, quite frankly, I would assign to a lack of clarity as to how issues get raised by commissions and then are brought to the council. Currently, that's a really, there's basically not great clarity on that question. And so, a number of the commissions have identified issues that they want to tackle, and in some cases have undertaken some work without really indication of whether this was a topic that the council is interested in taking on. And as such, staff is somewhat caught in the middle between, do we spend time on the issue? Do we not spend time on the issue? Because commissions do not assign work to staff. And so, establishing some process by which issues that commissions want to initiate have a way of confirm, being confirmed by the council are of interest is definitely an interest for staff. Just to give you an example, in prior organization, we did annual work plans from commissions that would be approved by the council, and that would establish that clarity for each commission as to what topics they would be taking up over whatever the upcoming period was, whether it's a year, semi-annual, or what have you. But that's a way of, again, ensuring that the council has a way of agreeing on where the commissions and then staff would be spending time during that upcoming period. And consistent with what we do at the council, it's always important to have some way to bring up an issue in between, that time period, if and when it's necessary based on some timely issue. But again, establishing some predictability and setting some expectations on a topic is, as I mentioned, an issue that's actually come up, unfortunately, fairly frequently recently. So, that was one in particular, and could describe others as necessary.
If I might, let me continue with Ed for a minute. So, if we have an ad hoc committee with two members, they don't have to meet in public. So, whatever is discussed, they can discuss in private, and then would bring it presumably to the full board, correct?
We can set this up in whatever form makes sense for the council, and again...
Well, wouldn't that be the normal way you would do it, unless you're going to have the ad hoc committee report to the Policy and Services Committee?
It would typically be to the full council. What we could do for staff or as staff...
So, you're really saying ad hoc committee will substitute for Policy and Services usual role? That, that is how I would see it, to be quite honest, because you can't, you can't have it both ways. You can't have both a smaller committee that can meet, frankly, in secret, because you will not find out what they discussed until it comes out, but the public will not have input. At Policy and Services, the whole reason for having that committee is to have input from the outside world. So, I am, I'm troubled by this, and I don't think it's headed in a good direction.
Understood.
Councilmember Cormac.
Are we going to go to the public now, or do you want us to continue on this line of...
Well, I was going to, actually, your call, if you want to respond to this, if you want to weigh in on this at this point.
I think we should go to the public, and then we'll go on the process.
Fair enough. Let's go to the public. First speaker will be Winter Dillon-Bach, and you'll have two minutes.
But if you haven't, I'm sorry. If you haven't made a decision, the public can't speak to which way they want this to go either. And clearly, the public has an issue that they have wanted, and we know what the issue is. I think we're, I think we're kind of hiding behind the issue.
Actually, I don't agree. There's a staff, a staff proposal here, there's an agendized action item, and the public can speak to it.
I, it's your meeting.
Winter Dillon-Bach. Valerie Stinger.
I have been on two commissions, HRC and the LAC, and I'm speaking for myself this evening. I want to begin by thanking the council and the city manager's office for your attention to the work of boards and commissions. We come to our work with good intentions and strong commitments. We need that to be matched by appropriate rigor in policies and procedures. Thinking about my time on the two commissions, I have two observations which may be related to the staff report, and are not related, I think, to the most recent question at hand, but related to the staff report. First, council members have been very generous to me with your time and guidance. When I get a moment of your time, I want to use that time on a higher plane to discuss the commission's work. It is a waste of my time and yours to puddle around at a lower level to belabor how we function or our working mechanics. Second, in my experience, the council has alternatively given commissions wide latitude to establish priorities or specific directions. While the wide latitude is appreciated, specific direction has been more productive. And I appointed the library strategic plan, which produced Mitchell Park, upgraded Rinconata Downtown and College Park, and that plan came when the council narrowed its direction to the commission. So, speaking from my two personal observation, my request to you is twofold. I believe that the commissions I know would be more effective if you established ground rules comparable to the bylaws of a well-run service organization, so the commissions can do their own housekeeping, manage themselves without taking advantage of your time. And second, I would ask that guidelines be established to formalize the process by which the commission sets its annual priorities and by which these are agreed to. Commissions exist to respond to council. Additionally, commissions have their hands on the pulse of their charge, and they are in a position to develop their own priorities. A more rigorous, formal review of the proposed priorities would focus commission work and increase our utility to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth and council members. I'm speaking as an individual, not representing the commission tonight, but looking at this, the more I thought about the relationship between the boards and commissions and the council, the more concerned I became that we're not really being clear. And let me give you an example. You say that the very end, it says, "Should a procedure be established," this is on the second point, "should a procedure be established that enables a council to affirm interest in having a board, commission engage in a topic prior to development of recommendations?" Sometimes, members of the public, or property owners, or businessmen will come to a commission or board with an issue that the commission and board, staff, the council was unaware of. And these issues can be raised without, let's say, prior evaluation and approval by the council as something the commission should be looking at. So, I don't think you want to limit what the commission says or just studies, only the things which are, which are in direct consistency with the council priorities, because sometimes your priorities will change after you've had input from commissions and from the public. So, I'm not sure how to reword this, but I would just say that it ought to be allowed to evaluate issues that come to their knowledge, whether it's directions from the council, from the staff, or it just comes in from the community, because sometimes the community knows what's going on better than you do and we do. I just think it's worthwhile to encourage the community to get together with the council and the commissions and present their concerns.
Thank you. Fred Bellin.
There is both valid reasoning and public support for removing Michael Alcheck from the Planning Commission, as well as authority in the municipal code and a mechanism in the current council protocols wherein the mayor, wherein the mayor may address an unresolved problem to the city council as appropriate. That is where we are. But tonight, initiation comes instead from the city manager to consider new processes, opening up potentially protracted undertaking, and maintaining an indefinite status quo cloud over the commission. Without a current council majority and support of removal, these steps may be necessary, but they are not sufficient. You should also exercise your authority to prohibit Commissioner Alcheck from maintaining or assuming a leadership role on the commission, i.e. as chair or vice chair, until this problem is resolved. Moving on, the council protocols on conduct are fine as long as they are followed. Term limits for commissioners is a good idea. Eight years is what you get, that's just great. Take two years off and go to another commission or come back again. We need a common core of policy and procedures across all boards and commissions, and board specific requests for revision should be reviewed by the council. In 2010, the Planning and Transportation Commission loosened their rules for quasi-judicial communications in private while the council was tightening theirs. We need to have boards and commissions have all their hearings in public and not have outside private conversations. What procedural rules are commissions following? Roberts Rules, a modification thereof? Those rules should be standardized and in sync with the council. Finally, as long as commissions do not stray from city council-specific direction, it's okay, in my view, for them to explore paths of interest together with staff's help that has occurred in the past and is generally worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to note that the tenure of any particular commissioner on any particular commission is not agendized tonight. Rebecca Eisenberger.
Hi, it's Rebecca. I just want to thank first the mayor for bringing this to the attention and to the level I think that this situation deserves. As to why, to council member Niss, that we would possibly need a new group to look at this, I think it's a fairly standard and rational point of view that it's best not to trust the people who caused the problem, also to solve the problem. So, I think possibly what we need here is a fresh look, whoever serves on that committee. That said, I do think that the answers to most of the questions that the mayor stated, I guess, if it wasn't mayor, in this statement of what would be needed on this new committee, the answers are actually found in the municipal code. They're pretty clear if you're a lawyer. I mean, again, I've been practicing law for 27 years, so I know how to look these up, but maybe there's some sort of misunderstanding right now on the commissions as to what the rules are. Additionally, when there is a conflict or when there's a question whether to disclose, the answer always is disclose. There's really no excuse, or absolutely no excuse, for a commissioner with a potential conflict not to disclose the potential conflict. Whether or not that commissioner ends up recusing him or herself is a different story, and that could be discussed. But whether or not a commissioner or a council member should disclose a conflict of interest, I think goes beyond argument. The answer is always disclose. Thanks.
Thank you. We now return to council, and I'm going to make a suggestion here, which is, so first of all, you know, this item is not about, you know, any one particular individual. I think it's quite a bit broader than that, and it involves, you know, a look at many board and commission processes. That said, the councils, I mean, the staff's discussion this evening really tees up, I mean, you have an issue of content and structure. The council, the staff's item really tees up a council discussion of what content and what space should be explored here, okay? And then, the discussion that we've just been having a few minutes ago is, well, what's the structure? Should it be this structure or that structure? I'm going to suggest that we focus on the content first, and maybe that will help us inform a discussion of structure.
Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. I have a really longstanding interest in how our boards and commissions work. I started attending those sessions here and throughout City Hall more than a dozen years ago, and frankly, I was really surprised at the wide variety of approaches that boards and commissions use to what the difference is between policy and operations, how they handle minutes and meeting management, whether or not the council liaison attends, the role of staff. I just thought that's how it was, and so, I just worked with it. And then, when I was thinking about running, in 2017, I attended one of every single board and commission meetings. I guarantee you, if you do that and sit through to the end, they will come up and say to you, who are you and why are you here? Because you didn't speak and nobody stays for the whole thing. So, I was once again exposed to the whole variety. When I joined council earlier this year, members from many boards and commissions reached out to me as the new person, with concerns about a better understanding of how to work with council, and frankly, sometimes concerns about how to work with their colleagues. So, this is not a new topic for me, it's one that I have a lot of interest in. And let me explain what my intent is for any work that I do on this topic. It's to create a better working environment for the dozens of people who are volunteering their time to help us refine projects and programs. This is, as the mayor said, not about any one individual or board, and the more I think about it, the broader the work is that we have to do. I think this is about our responsibility as a council to provide a clear structure for all of this work. And now, with the mayor's indulgence, I'm going to, I'm just going to list off all of the things I think we should be considering. They're in the scope of what's on here. The line between policy and operations, the use of ad hoc committees. We have boards and commissions that have zero, we have a board and commission that has 10. Attendance expectations for council liaison. Roles and responsibilities for board members and commissioners. I've never seen a process where you hire someone and then you don't tell them what is expected of them and what they can expect from you. Attendance, appropriate behavior with colleagues and staff, the neutral role of the chair for meetings, how we create agendas, necessary recusals, appropriate disclosures, options for board or commission to regulate behavior, options for council to handle any violations of these roles and responsibilities. This responsibility lies with us. The application for boards and commissions, I think, is a good start. You know, it gets at certainly some of the content, but it doesn't get at the process in terms of how people work with others. Term limits, I think, is absolutely something worth considering. Whether or not to have student representatives, which has come up a number of times actually already in this year. And let me see, I think I have a few more things. That's about it. That's about it for, for the scope of what I think we should be doing. And whoever it is that does this work, I think in terms of a work plan, the very first thing that should happen is interviewing current and former board members and commissioners to understand what their work has been like, what has gone well, what has not gone well. And before councilmember Tanaka gets to it, we should ask them their net promoter score. Would you recommend doing this job to someone else? So, I have a very expansive view of the work that we should do. It's been a very long time, you know, and all the time I've been watching this, that, you know, we really haven't paid enough attention to it. So, that is my concept of the work that should be done here, and we'll defer the question of who does it for the time being.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, and nice comments, councilmember Cormac. So, I guess the first thing is, I got involved in stuff here in the city, because I grew up here, and one day I saw a notice in the Weekly about openings in the Planning Commission. I sent them my application, and I'm pretty sure I sent it in the day before it was due. Somehow, I still got up here. And I guess the first question to me is, you know, what do we want these boards and commissions for? A few of them are required by state law. I think Planning, HRB, and ARB. Is that right?
I know Planning is. I do not know about HRB and ARB as far as state law requirements.
Okay. Thank you.
There are some limits on HRB, I think.
Well, that's a pretty show. On HRB, we have certain requirements for the members. But if you step back, like, what's the purpose of these? I think we could, we probably want a bit of a statement or some kind of goal for our boards and commissions, and we can probably all agree on some of it, right? Some of it is community input and awareness, some of it is, you know, specific expertise in areas that council may not have, some of it is actually just delegation, helping us do the vast amount of work that goes on here in the city. But I put that up as kind of a beginning thesis, that we need some definition of what we want out of these boards and commissions. Completely agree with councilmember Cormac that we should survey and invite existing board and commission members. I think in the audience, I can count one, two, three, four, five, if not five, current and past members of boards and commissions. They show up at our meetings a lot, they're not always identified, but they do a lot. And so, there is a role for survey and inviting those folks to participate in this. Couple more comments. Totally agree with staff that sometimes the council expectation, timeline, and alignment with priorities is really not there. And I've experienced this both up at council and as the planning chair, where I came, was standing there and was, you know, reporting to council, some of you, and said, hey, this is what we did on this item, like, does that work? And, you know, sometimes the answer is like, eh, not really, like, thanks, and we're just going to go in a totally different direction. Sometimes, there's no answer, and I'm just saying, there's miscommunication there. In the past few years, I think I have seen and heard of more conflict between staff and commissioners or commissions, and that is something I don't think any of us should brook, so we need to address that. Okay. I went through and, like, councilmember Cormac made a list of things that staff has brought up in my own, and I also kind of mapped them to whether we have some definitions or not. So, expectations of these boards and commissions. I don't think we have expectations mapped for any of them. Qualifications, for some of them, we do, right? ARB, we require a certain number of architects, HRB, we require some expertise, others, you know, whatever you want. Term limits, I don't think we have any term limits for any of them. Recusals and disclosures, we do have FPPC, the Brown Act, and Section 2.09.030, which is disclosures. I don't know if they're robust enough, but we do have some measures there. Attendance, I don't think we have any. Rules of conduct and behavior, I think we have none, although I'd like to think here in Palo Alto that we have, you know, some social contract to be nice and responsible and, you know, good citizens. Removal of commissioners, I think we do have it in Section 2.16.020. Is that correct to the city attorney, that we have a procedure to remove boards and commissioners or other appointed officials?
There is one, I don't recall the site off the top of my head.
Sorry?
There is, there is a provision. It's very brief. There are not detailed procedures.
The appointing authority may remove any member with the approval of the council. So, are we the appointing authority?
You are.
Okay.
But, well, it says we can do it, there's no process defined.
Okay. So, maybe that's something that needs to be worked on. In terms of definition of staff support, there isn't none, and this is something I will say I've really seen variability on. I think on certain commissions, for example, Parks and Rec, our community service department does an excellent job engaging with those folks, sending the appropriate manager to discuss items, work with the chair and vice chair. On the Planning Commission, I saw it change over the years, where at first, there was an administrative assistant, you worked with the assistant head of planning, community, environment, and we had support from the city attorney's office, and I've seen that change and shift. And as new commissioners have come on board, they say, like, what was the commission like? What should we ask for? And there's some disconnect there. In terms of liaisons, I don't think there are any rules around this. It's another one, I think, I've seen really differing levels of support and engagement from council members, where I know some council members will go to every single liaison meeting they have, others go to absolutely none. Sometimes, it's just a meeting with the boards and commissioners, and let's define that. I mean, maybe it's the right thing to have liaisons, maybe we just want to drop them overall. I will note, when I first joined council, I asked, you know, why is there no liaison to PTC? And the answer I got from a few outgoing council members was, oh, well, it's seen as too political. Is it? I just don't know. So, I'll just put that out there to everyone, that that is interesting to me, that there's no liaison to PTC. Maybe there should be, maybe we should have no liaisons. Three other areas that I've thought of, maybe we want to address. One is what I'd call public awareness, maybe, not noticing exactly, but I'm sometimes surprised when an item comes to us, and we've kind of been tracking it maybe through one board or commission, and they've had two, three meetings on the issue, and the public comes here and says, there have been no public meetings on this thing. And like, you know, we're up here, and like, we know there have been public meetings, maybe you didn't know about them, maybe you weren't engaged, that's an issue. Training for boards and commissioners. Training for boards and commissioners, that certainly varies. I know some are invited to League of Cities training, some get a meeting upstairs, I think some we just throw to the wolves. Let's figure that out. And then that kind of leads to another thing, what do other cities do? I know some cities really support their planning commission deeply and broadly. You know, other cities have different commissions, right? Some cities have like, you know, like digital engagement communications committees, and that's something we've been talking a lot about, right? Some cities, you know, their planning commission is the final approval on buildings. Do we want that? Do we like that? You know, some cities have like a citizens' finance committee, right? Is that a good idea for like our infrastructure projects? So I'm kind of wondering, you know, what other cities do? Those are some of my thoughts. We may want to, this seems like a silly exercise, and I wish we could use Google Docs on council, but like, list all these, these criteria that we're listing, because I assume the rest of you will have others, and kind of map out, you know, do we do this at all? Do we do it well? What could we improve? And then have whatever group we designate go through this stuff. Those are my thoughts.
I'd say that's one of the tasks, is to go through.
Yeah, this list.
Go through the list, right?
Yeah, I will agree. One last comment with councilmember Cormac, chairs and agenda setting, that's another one that's really just not clear, and I've seen it shift.
I'm going to agree with that one, too. I mean, that's actually one of the ones, I mean, you've got most of the list. One of the ones on my list is, I remember, you know, when I was, in my first year as councilmember, you know, the, one of the councils, one of the commissions that I was on liaisons, this is a very, very good, absolutely not dysfunctional at all, it's a bad word, bad choice of words, but a very, very high-performance commission, but one of their big issues was agendization. I mean, there was no clear path to agendization, and there was some, there was some tension between the commission and the staff, actually, as to, you know, how the agenda got set. So I agree with you, I think that varies all over the place. Councilmember Koo.
So, I mean, both councilmember Cormac and vice mayor has basically put forth a lot of good points. I did want to add in there, in terms of qualifications, I'd actually like to see that there are members, when they apply, that we know how long they've been in, as a resident here, because I think our commissioners really need to know a little bit more, or board members need to know a little bit more about our community. So that might be something to define. I'd also like the word decorum to be defined, because it is in PTC's procedural rules, as well as in council members, and I found it on our municipal code 2.04.120, and then it even has at 2.04.130, the enforcement of decorum. So would, I think we have those, and it should apply to our boards and commissions. Let me see here. In terms of, in terms of, you know, council members, my understanding is that we are only allowed one hour of staff time on outside matters, if I understand correctly or not. So I, and as it is, we constantly get complaints that there's not enough staff time to look at topics. So I think that, you know, when, there needs to be a procedure so that we, we, when the work plan, as you said, city manager, when the work plan from each of these board and commissions come forward to council, we approve it. If there's any additional items that the council or board members would like to take on, it's something that they should form, they should discuss among themselves and agree to it, then form their ad hoc committee and work on it without staff time. They should, it should be something that they're doing in reaching out to the community and getting consensus, but not using staff time. I understand Parks and Rec had done, Parks and Rec had done that on a couple of topics, and then on that one, it just kind of blew up. Let me see here. And I was just wondering, is the oath of office that the commissioners and board members take, are they the same as the one that we do? What kind of oath do they take?
Yes, it's the very same oath.
It's the same, right, okay. I agree with the, giving them tools, giving our commissioners and board members tools. Training is very important. I think PTC really, really needs to have training on both the traffic, transportation, as well as CQ, you know, and introduction into our codes, municipal codes and land use, land use. Let me see here. Also, I'd like to see, you know, in order to reduce contention and, and, you know, bantering and bickering, that we actually look into the commission and boards taking turns on having chairs and vice chairs. So I know some cities have that in place, where they take turns rather than being appointed by the, or nominated and appointed by their body. Let me see here. I'd like to see us further go through the removal process of defining a process for And also, on our application forms, it does state that they need to fill out the Form 700. However, I noticed that that's not reviewed. I'm not sure if it's reviewed or not, because there are certain members and board that has nothing on it, you know, I mean, in the past, I think there were even council members. So how does that work? Is that reviewed when they take the oath? Is their Form 700s reviewed by the clerk or by anybody in the city? No? So we're not really kind of following up to make sure that they're disclosing, they're letting the public, general public know whether there's a conflict or not? I think that needs to be a process, too. I think that's something to look into. Also, I noticed that in PTC, they voted to take out substitute motions or secondary motions, that they're not allowed to make that. I don't know how that came about, but it should be the same as what we're allowed to do on council, how we move forward. Do they, do they have different rules that they follow? So that's something that we need to have consistency throughout in terms of how they make motions, how, I guess, the Rosenberg rules, is that what we go with? Is that for all of the boards and commissions? So let's have some consistency there. Then also, I've been noticing that a lot of times on all these boards and commissions, when they make motions, they don't have any staff members to throw it up on the, on the screen, and it's hard for me to vote on things when I'm not reading it. It would be absolutely helpful to have that. Perhaps the staff who's supporting that commission or board should have access to putting up the motion, just so that it's done correctly and they're voting on the right one. Also, I just wanted to say that I believe HRB is, is a state, is a state, is required by state. So it is required by state, I just wanted to point that out. And I, I believe that having a council liaison is pretty important. When I joined, became a council member, and I would attend it as council liaison, I learned a lot of what the commission and boards are doing, and it actually lets me, lets me appreciate them because, because I am there. I see the work that they do and that they show up, and they study their, their, their staff reports. And so it keeps me up to date about what they're doing in the city for us. So I'd like to see that continue. I don't know what my colleagues think, but I'd like to see that continued. Another thing is, we need to look at enforcement of our rules, so we need a process for that. I also think that on the page of each of these commission and boards, that there should be a paragraph about what it, what conflict of interest means, just to be very clear. Where you take it out of, I don't know. But that's it for now, thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so I, I do actually think this is a pretty interesting topic. I, as the vice chair, have also served on a commission, and so I have a, I think, probably a unique perspective. I'm not sure who else here has served on the commission or board? You, just, is this you and us? Does anyone else has? No? Okay. Anyways, so first of all, I wanted to thank, you know, all of our commission members and board members that have served. I know they're not paid, it's all volunteer. I could tell you, I've served on the planning commission for two terms, that I've worked with some very talented people, people who are volunteering their time. I think people have really good intention, at least as far as I can tell, and people really do put their heart into it. So I, I think the discussion, I think we want to just be careful of the fact that, you know, we are, we're blessed that we have so many people willing to volunteer a lot of their valuable time to help the city. So I think that's something I think we want to make really clear. So, you know, my, my view is very much colored by the fact that I was on the commission, on the, on the PTC for a while, and I, I really think that as council, we tend to get on, get into the weeds, you know, I think we, to me, it seems like we, we could delegate a lot more to our boards, commissions. We have people who are, who have a lot more time than we do, perhaps even more expertise than we do, and yet we kind of hold things very, very close. And I, I for one, think that we should, I mean, we wonder why we have really late meetings, and part of the reason why is because we take on a lot ourselves, right? We don't delegate very much. We, we, we take things on, which in some ways, we're not necessarily as expert in, that we have boards and commissions set up that can actually study them more. And, and so I think it's kind of a shame, because we actually do have good people. You look at, you look at the people that apply, and it's, and they have pretty amazing backgrounds. And, you know, I think the fallback of having the fact that we kind of route everything through council as, as we do, and we don't delegate as much authority as we could, is that if I look at the city, right, for most part, 99% of the city, perhaps more, is run by staff, which is not a bad thing, but I'm just saying, it's like, in terms of oversight, because we, we're like a thin straw where everything has to go through. We, you know, I, I think the city's kind of like on autopilot, right? We're elected, so we're kind of accountable to the voters here in the city. But, you know, because we have only so much time and so much capacity to actually take things on, for most part, you know, and people in the public may think differently, but I think for most part, the city does run on autopilot. And, but it doesn't have to. I think we could, we could do much better if we actually empower our boards, commissions. I think it's really important that we give them clear direction, we, we, I think, set goals, I think all that's, I think, because I, I do agree, I forgot who said it, it's like hiring someone, not giving them a job description, telling them what they, what they need to do, and so we can't expect too much. If we don't tell them what we want, how are people going to, going to try to make it happen? So I do agree with that, that, that perspective. You know, one concern, and I think councilmember Niss talked about this, is this does seem to have a bit of overlap. I mean, I don't know whether we should have another, yet another subcommittee that does this versus policy and services, it seems, it seems a little bit redundant. And, and that's kind of the part that I was seeing earlier, which is, I think, on council, we take a lot of things on, and yet there's so many things going on that, for most part, because we only have limited capacity, it's pretty much staff deciding everything, right? And we take a cursory look at it, and I, I think that doesn't serve the public as well as it could. I think part of the reason why there's probably a reluctance on council to delegate, actually, to, to our boards and commission more, is because I think maybe there's sometimes perceived alignment problems. I think people think, well, gee, the people on the boards, commission maybe don't align to, to what I think, right? And so, you know, in fact, when I, I don't know if the vice mayor would agree, but when I first got on council, we actually saw the same items again that we saw on PTC, it was like, almost like a total redo, right? Like, it was a total redo on council for the same, staff presented the same exact report to us, we've gone on PTC as council saw. And I think about the discussions we had on PTC versus the council we had on, on council, I can't necessarily say they were that much deeper, that much better. It was just a basic, a total redo of what PTC had done. And I don't think that's, you know, so for the members on the boards and commissions, I don't think that's, that's got to be kind of disheartening, right? Because it seems like, God, I did all this stuff and it's happening yet again. So, you know, maybe in terms of trying to align the commission or board to, to members of the council, maybe what we should do is, we should have a different way of appointing these, these board members and commission members. Maybe it should be, each council member appoints someone, so that's reflecting their idea, perhaps. Or maybe we should, you know, elect them when we change, elect council, or, I don't know, maybe, but to make it more reflective as to what, so that council can feel like they can trust the boards and commissioners to make decisions, versus us having to second guess everything, and then stay here till late or do a really cursory job on something. Because when we do that, it's pretty much, staff is running everything, right? And, and I, I don't think we are necessarily giving the oversight or, or direction that we could, that would really kind of align things better to what the community wants. And I, and this is the other thing, which is, I know that there's limits to staff time, we have an hour limit, right? And there's limits on the PTC and all this other stuff. But I actually, I mean, the, the problem with doing that is that it kind of creates more autopilot from staff, because, because it depowers the elected and appointed officials to such a degree that pretty much is all autopilot by staff. And staff, you know, they're, they're, yeah, they're appointed by us, and they're kind of accountable to us, but for most part, short of firing them, there's not much we can do about things. And so I think, actually, what we should do, you know, in my, from my perspective, is we should empower our boards, commission more, we should delegate things more to them. Maybe some decisions they make should be on consent calendar, so we don't have to do a total redo of the same thing that they just did. And to kind of allow us to trust, trust them, maybe we should, we should figure out a different appointing system, so that we, so the council members feel like they're representing our views, and if they're not representing our views, maybe we get rid of them, right? Or whoever has appointed them gets rid of them, that's, that's not my view, and, you know, or, I don't know. But I, I think that, I'm just trying to think of better alignment, so that we get leverage on our time. Because the members of the public, they, they're, they hold us accountable, right? If we do a bad job, we don't get reelected, right? And, and, but our, our, because we take so much on as a council, we have only so much leverage, so much, so much time to review things. And I, I fear that for most part, like I said, this is total autopilot on, on the staff part, because we don't have the time. We, you know, we spend, not every city council actually spends as much time in meetings as we do, right? I mean, it's kind of amazing. And yet I don't think we're that much more effective because we're spending more time, but I think it's because we're holding so, we're holding so many things so tight to ourselves, versus maybe appointing people that we trust, and then allowing them to make the decision on, on the smallest stuff, and let us, let us debate and figure out what is, what are the big things, right? Because I spent, I feel like we spend so much time on the small things, right? And not enough time on the big things. And so for the big things, we barely have time for, like, I mean, one example is like Great Separation, we have barely time for that, right? And we have X happens, things like that, but I just feel that we could do better than what we're doing. So, so that's my overall view of this, is that, so I think, I do think this is a worthwhile topic, but it, for me, it just, I, I want us to get more leverage, and I think all of us want to be more effective, and I think we could be more effective if we actually empower our boards, commissions. Back to what councilmember Koo agreed, said, I have to agree with her, right? In terms of, how do you make motions when you can't see them? And I think on the PTC, one reason why, you know, when I was chair, I asked for that very thing, because I agree with you, it's actually super hard to know what you're voting on, because you have these long, complex motions, and you have no idea what, what people are saying or voting on. And so we asked staff, hey, can you do that? And the answer was, there's no, no resources, no funding for this, right? So, so that, that's an issue, but, you know, so one thing we tried doing was, let's use Google Docs, we could all do it ourselves, and we could present it up there. But, you know, there's all those things about, oh, we can't use Google Docs, you know, for some reason. So it's kind of weird, but true. So, so I think we all kind of want something, I think we all feel that there's not, it's, some things aren't working as well as they could, and so I just want to throw some of these ideas out there, to see if we can try to, try to get to a point where the system's more effective, because I think if it is, we as city council members could be more effective, and we'll have a better-run city.
So I'm going to go to councilmember DeBois in a second here, but let me see if I
I can summarize a major piece of what I think we just, of what I think council member Tanaka just said, which is, so far, most of the discussion in the staff report has sort of, kind of been operational stuff. It's like, how do things get agendized? You know, you talked about sort of social contract, and sort of, you know, motions and procedures and so forth. And I think council member Tanaka has brought up sort of a different angle, which is, what if there's alignment issues between such and such a commission and the council, which I think is, I think is kind of a, a different topic, but, but it may be one that the, that the, you know, that the, that the staff and the, and the council choose to consider as part of the span of this study. Council member DuBois.
So, I just want to say, in terms of the need here, I support looking at these policies kind of, kind of the end-to-end process, I think. Starting with recruiting, interviewing, serving, and then working with council. So, I think that goes with what everybody else has said. And however we do this, I think it's just a recommendation that has to come back to the full council. I mean, that kind of goes without saying, but just wanted to say it. I, one, as I thought about this, I think in general, we should think about crafting a policy with a light touch. I think if we really try to have a very detailed, complex set of rules or processes, we're going to miss things. So it's kind of a balance, it's kind of like the Constitution of the United States, in a way. But clearly, we have some gaps, and staff is asking us to fill those in. And kind of the bigger issue council member Tanaka was raising, I do think we need to keep in mind the differences in roles and responsibilities, and the difference kind of between, behind an elected official to make decisions versus kind of appointed volunteers, who, at least today, are making recommendations to council. So, when I looked at this, I see a need, there is a small section in the council protocols that applies, but more importantly, I think there's our ordinances, and we could potentially consider creating a new document that's like a board and commission guideline, more like a handbook. I do think we should try to do this with some focus, kind of quickly and efficiently, and bring back recommendations to council in a few months. And so, the way I was thinking about it in this discussion tonight, was really about scope, and trying to do something in just a couple of months, but...
Okay, so, so I'm going to go to council member Niss in a second here. Let me ask staff, in terms of sort of looking at sort of the scope, is this kind of what you were hoping to hear from, from council? So, the content?
Well, as expected, yes, a fairly expansive description, or narrative.
More than you came in with, really?
And, well, if nothing else, I don't think I've heard any comments to limit the scope. And as such, I think, as has been suggested, I think the question really then does turn to how best to tackle it as, as a topic area in terms of the work ahead.
Council member Niss.
So, I will have a couple of other things to say, but before I do that, I think if, I'm trying to look at the ad hoc committee and the policy and services at the same time. I think we would do better if we incorporated one into the other. And we're about to change mayors, and I think at that point, we should have a plan for, if this is something that policy and services isn't going to do next year, then that should be outlined at the beginning of the year. And if the kinds of issues that we've discussed tonight, which are very broad, need to go through an ad hoc committee, then I think that would be the time to set it up, is when, at the beginning of the year. Otherwise, I think you're in an awkward state right now. But, but let me, let me ask another question, because sort of underlying everything that people have been talking about tonight, and we've heard it from those of you in the audience, and we've heard of it, you know, in, in letters and so forth that have come to us, is how do you get rid of someone? How do you get rid of someone on a commission that you don't like, or doesn't align with you, or how does that happen? And there are a couple of situations that are ongoing right now, that most of us are just not going to speak about baldly, but they do exist. So, so I'd like to ask our city attorney, if we were to vote, which apparently we think we could do, to remove somebody from one of the commissions, what are the rights of the person who is, who is perhaps going to be removed?
So, council members, the local law makes it clear that council appoints commissioners and has the power to remove them. There, there aren't procedures, detailed procedures, for doing that. And in the occasions where that has occurred in the past, it's been handled informally and in a cooperative way. If a more formal process was needed, we would need to work with you to set up a process that would protect the council's right to make those decisions, but also other, other rights and procedures that, that might apply. So it would depend on the circumstances, and we would work with you to do that. If it's council's wish to set up more, more clear or additional step procedures in your rules or in the municipal code, then we could assist you with that as well.
So, I think Tom just said something that I would agree with, which is, you talked about either a deft or a gentle touch. And I think that, that would be very important if someone was going to be removed. I haven't seen that happen since I've sat here, and I've sat here a long time this time, and a long time before. I have never seen anyone, I've never seen a council vote to remove somebody from a commission. Pardon?
People have been asked, will they sit more formally?
Yes, but I have never seen it come to a vote of the council. And, and I think that would be so regrettable if that were to happen. I don't, I just don't believe that fits this community's humanity, and their, their sense of how a person should be treated. And perhaps if somebody, in fact, I don't even know anyone, Tom, I know you said it happened quietly, I can't think of anyone recently, maybe one of the rest of you can, in the last four or five years, that has been, is there somebody, Adrian, you can think of that was gently guided off a commission?
Um, no point in naming names, but my, my understanding is also from the city attorney that, you know, the council has the ability to remove somebody, and if there's a majority of votes in the council to do that, that can be transmitted to that person, and I guess they have the option of resigning from a commission.
But my recollection is that's never happened.
But it's never come to, at least in the several years that I've been here.
It's never been agendized, if I may.
So, but the question is, if we're, if we're talking about this, and we're specifying ways to remove someone, I think we want to think, how, how could that be handled in some way that's different, different than that? And I think it would be. As to the rest of it, I think everyone has put out, you know, a very extensive agenda. I don't know if that's what you were looking for, Ed, something that extensive, but I think what's really important is there, is, is at the top of the page, is it re, what's the relationship between the board and the commission and the council? And right now, we're thinking apparently that it's, it needs to be tightened, that it's too loose. Is that kind of what we're hearing tonight? We need to go through and, and revamp it, and have more clarity, and more, a more concrete understanding of what the boards and commissions should do? Is that correct?
I mean, ask staff, I don't think so. I think it's more how they should work, right? And then...
I think as, as the discussion has pointed out, there's some specific areas that can be clarified.
We spent a huge amount of time discussing, well, I mean, and it's the most emotional piece, of course, right? It's, you know, I mean, certainly, certainly because of, you know, I think council member Tanaka has correctly pointed out, I mean, all these volunteer folks that, you know, are committed to doing good. We spent a huge amount of time talking about this one little piece, and, you know, I think, you know, what we're trying to do here is, is sort of like this much, and we're really focusing in on that little piece, but that's like, a really small piece of what we're talking about here tonight, right? But it's, it's the most, it's, it's the most emotional one, for sure, right?
Well, although, this is due to come up tomorrow night, this is on the agenda for policy and services, we can begin to make a dent in it. But I'd suggest for next year that this be on policy and services plate, and that that be the group that does it in public, so that it can be discussed, and, and everyone can hear exactly what we're talking about. I think that's, that's one of the most important parts. We tend to do our best work, I think, when the public is there, when they can comment, when we have communications back. And so that would be my suggestion as, as we go forward.
That's good. So I'm going to go to council member, or to vice mayor Fine in a second here. But I think this is good. I think we're sort of shifting into the, the, the discussion of, okay, how do we structure to do this? And I hope we'll do this, and we'll do it quickly, and, because it's 9:30 at night, and we'll make a decision, and we'll move on. So let me briefly comment on the, on what I think is some of the most important reasons why we ought to do an ad hoc committee. You know, we only got seven people on council this year, as been pointed out, right? And that means we got a 25% reduction in committee resources on all the committees. Policy and services is busy, they have a lot of responsibility, a lot of territory. You know, we knew we were going to rely more on committees when we went into this year with the council reduction, and including ad hoc committees. And if we, I mean, the current process is frankly slow, right? And if we want, I mean, I believe an ad hoc committee will move faster and get more done, right? More quickly than if we sort of refer it to one of the standing committees. And I don't think this is the kind of thing that, I mean, this is a, this is a process that's going to be bounded in its span. We're going to do it, and then we're going to move on. And there's going to be, you know, a report and a discussion, and the council's going to adopt some, some policies, and then we move on. And so if the criteria is, look, how can we get the most work done the fastest, right? Then I think that points toward the ad hoc committee. Given enough time, could other processes do it? Probably, but I think we'll get more done faster if we do it that way. And I think that ought to be our criteria. And I don't think we should wait till the new year to get started. I mean, we do still have a couple of works, a couple of weeks left in this year, right? We are still all at work, okay? As most of the world is. And I know it's sensitive, because there's potential charter issues and so forth, but if we're going to get it done, I think that's the right way to, I think that's the quickest way to do it, and the most effective. Vice mayor Fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to be brief. Just two or three other areas I was thinking about we may have missed. How many of you know we have an emergency standby council? A few of us up here. That's, if there's an emergency and we can't make it, there's previous council members who come and take our places. Another issue we may want to look at. Tom, council member DuBois mentioned applications and recruitment, totally agreed. We also have a number, I don't know how many right now, of ex-council members serving on boards and commissions or appointed things. I want to look at that quickly. And then the final one is, do we want to potentially remove any commissions or add any? So, those are a few more areas, like cuts to look at this issue. But I'll propose a framework, I don't think this is a motion, but maybe if we can just like type these up, just list them, a framework for how we want to think about these things. What is the purpose or goal of our boards and commissions? How do they align with the council and/or staff? What are the expectations around staff support? What is the need for a various commission? And the big one is, what the mayor for just kind of operations or mechanics, you know, recruitment, responsibilities, term, et cetera, all these things we've listed. So those are kind of like five bullet points I'm thinking about. I'm not really convinced on the policy and services versus ad hoc thing. I hear both arguments. I think there is something for the public to play a role in here, and especially our boards and commissioners. I also hear the point of view that, you know, an ad hoc can get this done faster. And council member DuBois, you're absolutely right, both of these will be reporting back to council, and we're going to, just like, are we get our reports from our boards and commissions, we're going to take it where we want to. So, I don't know, I'll repeat those, purpose alignment, staff support, operations, and then the need for commissions.
I would say that, I mean, potentially, the council can take a report in a couple of months and send that to policy and services, right? If they want. But, I mean, I mean, I'm open to the case that the policy and services can get it done faster than an ad hoc committee, but I think it's going to be a difficult one to make. Council member Cormac.
So, as a member of the ad hoc committee, appointed a couple of weeks ago, yes, Mr. Mayor? Council member DuBois and I have actually already met, happy to maybe just talk a little bit about the work we've done, to see if that's helpful, as we've been thinking about this. I wonder if the clerk could just put up those two simple slides there for the moment? The vice mayor is headed in the direction that, that we were, thinking about, what is the objective, right? What is, what is it that we're trying to achieve here? And it's to review and revise purpose, process, and standards for boards and commissions to work with us. So that was the overall, overarching goal, is we thought about, what is the work that we're trying to do? And then on the next page, if you would just move to the second slide. Because the mayor was interested in this going quickly, for all the reasons that council member Niss mentioned, which is, you know, there will be a transition, it's possible we'll have changes in the composition of various committees, et cetera, and commissions, this, this was the, the plan that we came together with. And, you know, again, I want to emphasize, and we already have seven questions outlined for a survey that we're ready to work on, that I think gathering that information, I think, is a really important first step. I totally second the vice mayor's mention of reviewing all of the commissions. Are there some to add? Are there any that we, you know, we might decide that their work is complete? That's absolutely, I think, an appropriate thing to consider. And I guess my question about, you know, whether it would go to policy and services eventually, or start, you know, as an ad hoc, is, I just don't know, you know? I mean, how many members of the public usually come to policy and services committee? Do you usually have a lot of members of the public come? I'm not quite sure. I think that, you know, given the volume of work that needs to be done in this, again, I only have my experience on finance so far this year, but the volume of work, I think, is, is more than, than the, does policy and services meet monthly? Is that how often? Finance is like every two weeks? I, I feel like an ad hoc committee could really get a great start on this, that would give us something to work with, that is much more detailed than this wide-ranging discussion, and then we, then we could, you know, work with that. So, those are my thoughts.
Council member DuBois.
Yes, so, just quickly, and again, the idea here was, was a two-to-three-month timeline, including over the holidays. So, you know, we did start working, I think we were trying to figure out how we can do this pretty efficiently. I think we would do our best to complete our review and then bring the recommendations back to council kind of early February. You know, we don't, we don't have a lot of meetings in January, so that was kind of the idea. Council member Cormac and I worked well together on the Stanford GUP, and, so I think we can do this pretty efficiently. And just to clarify, when we talk about surveying, we were talking about emailing current and former board members, just to gather some quick feedback. That's what that was about. So I would go ahead and try to like, make a motion, which would be that council would, would direct the ad hoc committee to work with staff on the items listed in the staff report, including processes from recruitment through serving and working with council. Yeah, and, so council member Fine, I think everything you mentioned would be in there. I just had a, kind of a simple summary.
I would just suggest, if staff sends a quick email to us, if we can send topics, we would love addressed by the ad hoc.
That would be awesome, too. Yeah. If we can do that.
So then, I will have a question. This is a little tricky tonight. A question about policy and services for tomorrow night, which is due to take up this discussion as item number two. Shall we get rid of that, looking at the assistant city manager? So are we saying that the council, city council protocols and procedures handbook is going to go to you guys? Is that right? To the ad hoc?
No, we're only looking at boards and commissions, most of which is in the ordinances.
Okay, so you want us to continue the handbook, essentially, and you're going to take over... So I think what I need from you to really be clear, is I need to know exactly what you're going to work on. Remember, I'm only chair of this committee for two more weeks, so, somebody else will take it over after that.
And I haven't looked at the policy and services staff report, is you guys were looking at overall council protocols and procedures, all topics.
But they, they do run into each other, though. They, they do.
Yes, and maybe if you want to be really clear, we could exclude the one section that's in attachment A.
Well, let's not work on that tonight. We'll, I'll figure it out tomorrow with, with staff. But I, I think we, we, yes, and I would agree, there's some expediting of that would probably be a good idea. I still, I'm, I'm not going to vote for the new ad hoc committee, because I'm troubled that, once again, it, it's not... that once again, it, it's not going to be held in public, whereas policy and services is. But that's, that's my prime concern for having it happen this way. So we'll look forward to something coming in February, if not before.
Not before.
Seeing no further lights, would you vote on the board, please?
Give me a second.
Yeah.
What is the motion?
Oh.
I said from, from recruitment through serving and working with council.
Wait a second, recruitment isn't the right word. Yeah, that's a good point. On the process for, what's the language?
I said, we would work with staff. We would work on the issues listed in the staff report.
You've gone through a whole lot more, though, tonight.
Yeah, with, yeah. Yeah, with, with, with stuff brought up by council.
Including processes from recruitment, from, from, not for. Through serving and working with council.
There you go. Through.
To, to what?
Serving and working with council.
And you need a line in there about not just the staff report, but stuff brought up by council this evening.
Including additional items raised by council.
If we don't like the results, we have a process for removal from the ad hoc.
Yes, we do. Ad hocs sunset. That's the great thing about them. Councilmember Tanaka.
Actually, I was going to make the same comment, which is, I don't think it's just a staff report because I think we all brought up some topics that are not in the staff report, so.
That's important.
Yeah, it would be incomplete. But I'm also with Councilmember Niss. I, I, you know, this is back to my point, I think, on council, we're taking on too much. You know, I feel like, I actually feel like we have a lot of committees and subcommittees and all this kind of stuff. And I, I, I think one of the biggest issues that we suffer from is we don't delegate, right? I mean, we, we want to make every decision big and small, and it doesn't make sense, actually, because sometimes we're not that good at making that kind of decision. So, so how do we split this so that it's, it's something that we're, if Councilmember Niss and I want to vote, like separate out that part of the motion? I think it's what Councilmember Niss was saying, right? Does this belong to policy and services or should it, should it be separate, right? How do we separate it out?
Vote, vote again, vote against, vote against the motion. Seeing no further lights, would you, would you vote on the motion? And that passes five to two with Councilmembers Niss and Tanaka dissenting. Okay. We have two items left tonight. One is a colleague's memo on vaping measures and the other is a closed session item. Thank you. Please proceed. Welcome.
Oops, excuse me. Thank you. I was simply going to note that this is obviously a colleague's memo, so defer to the council and authors of the memo. At the appropriate time, we do have a brief staff presentation that speaks to existing regulations and some of the ongoing activities. So with that, Mr. Mayor.
So, so do the authors of the memo want to speak first before the staff presentation? Okay. I see a light from Councilmember Cormac.
Thank you, Mayor Phil Seth. I'll just speak briefly. I see that we have many people in the audience who'd like to share their thoughts, and we've certainly heard a lot about this issue at the City School Liaison Committee. I want to start by thanking my colleagues, Vice Mayor Fine and Councilmember Tanaka, for their work on this. I want to continue by thanking staff for doing such a, such a quick and thorough job of coming back with information. And certainly members of the public who've shared their concerns for, for some time now. Fundamentally, for me, this is a public health issue and the city can and should be part of the solution. I believe that absence of appropriate federal regulations has caused this problem, which we'll talk about in more detail later. And then the one thing that I do want to say, just as we start taking this up, and I, let's see if my, my colleagues on this memo will agree, I think removing the word urgency from the first part of the recommendation is in order. As I think about the complexity of this, we discussed it earlier this evening with Supervisor Semidion. I think giving us the opportunity for a second reading will allow the public to participate in a more holistic manner. And then finally, the fourth part, the provide funding, I think the staff's recommendation that they come back with a suggestion of exactly which organization would benefit the most and the amount and the location of that from the budget, I think, is appropriate. So if my colleagues, Vice Mayor Fine and Councilmember Tanaka are comfortable with that, those two changes, I'll let Councilmember Tanaka think about it. And with that, would you care to add anything? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cormac. Glad to join you and Councilmember Tanaka on this. As you mentioned, this is really a public health and safety issue. And, you know, we, we have a lot of discussions here at council, but ultimately, our, our biggest responsibility is the health and safety of our community. And that's, you know, even more important among our youth. I see some of our youth council members here. I think it was maybe two years ago that you all reported, you know, in the survey you did, upwards of 90% of kids who you surveyed knew somebody who was vaping, right? Obviously, we've all seen the stories online and in print about how this is really an epidemic across the nation. And, you know, whether the science is known or not, people are dying from us. So we clearly want to address something here. Just a recap of what we're asking for from our colleagues and staff here is, one, to prepare an ordinance roughly mimicked on what County Supervisor Semidion mentioned, banning the sale of electronic cigarettes. That may need more definition, we can work on that. Two, identifying avenues to support legislation at the state and perhaps even federal level, whether that's things like identifying packages with special markings or requiring a signature just like for alcohol shipments, prevent kids from obtaining these products. That said, I'll be the first to say, I don't think this is going to solve the problem just prohibiting the purchase of these items here in Palo Alto. Youth will be able to go to other cities or other counties or still order online somehow and get these products, which kind of leads to the next two items. One, providing an update on the enforcement activities at the county level and looking at what we can potentially do here in Palo Alto, whether that's through our police department or through school resource officers. And the final piece is funding roughly for communications and education on this topic, although I will remark to my colleagues, County Supervisor Semidion's point about, you know, everyone attends the, you know, video or drawing contests and those aren't the people you want to reach, that is a challenge we will have. Councilmember Cormac, agree that probably should not be an urgency ordinance, given the community interest. And then returning with a suggestion on the funding and targeting of that is probably appropriate. But again, want to thank my colleagues. Thank you, everyone who is anxiously waiting to speak.
Seeing no further lights, let's go to staff.
I didn't know, I had to put my light on. So, yeah, thank you for Vice Mayor Fine and Councilmember Cormac in helping to put this together. Definitely excited to be part of it. I think vaping, as we all know, is becoming a really big issue. I'm not going to talk about some of the other things that have always been talked about. But, you know, I do think that just stopping the distribution is not going to be enough. I think, as was said, online and getting friends and other people is so easy to do. So I, I think, one thing I'd like to try to do tonight is for us to actually have a bigger discussion in terms of, you know, besides the distribution side, is there anything else that we may want to look at that might help stem this spread of vaping? And so that's, that's another topic that I think is important because I think education is going to be, is certainly one part of it. I think distribution is another part of it. But I think we also have to look at, at the possession of it as well and, and think about it. So it's something which I'd like to have further discussion on. One story I'd like to relate that I heard was at Palo, at Palo Alto High School. I'm not sure you guys heard, but a lot of, the fire alarm was being pulled quite frequently. I'm not sure if you guys heard about this, maybe not. Some of you guys, some of you don't have kids there, but that fire alarm was getting pulled all the time. And so what the principal did finally was they, the principal instituted a $1,000 fine if you were caught pulling that fire alarm. And two people pulled the fire alarm and got caught. And since then, there's not been another time that that fire alarm has been pulled. So maybe that's something for us to think about as we talk about this issue.
We now return to staff.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Seth and council. Brad Eggleston, Director of Public Works. As Ed mentioned, we have a very few slides to kind of give you some background on the city's current ordinance and how it relates to the county's recently updated ordinance. Just thought I would mention, the administration of the city's retail tobacco ordinance is a collaboration between Public Works Community Services Department and the Police Department. Phil Bobel from Environmental Services, Public Works, is here with us, as well as Kristin O'Kane. Phil will kick us off walking through our slides. Chief Johnson is also in the audience. And we also have Nicole Cox from the County Department of Public Health here in the audience who can ask questions, answer questions, that is. Thank you.
Phil Bobel, Public Works. So I'll do the regulatory part of this and then Kristin will do the non-regulatory part. Julie Weiss is also in the audience, who's our really most knowledgeable person in the Public Works Department on this. So here's, this first slide is a summary of our current ordinance. And we have prohibited the sale of e-cigarettes and flavored tobacco products at what we call non-adult stores. So let me define that term by the inverse. So what are adult stores? Adult stores are stores which have 60% or more of their sales coming from tobacco products. And we have six of these in Palo Alto. So the non-adult stores is anybody else. Principally, this is convenience stores and gas stations. You'll recall that our previous ordinance banned all sales at pharmacies. Actually, they had pretty much taken them off of their shelves anyway, since they wanted to be the health stores pharmacies. Anyway, so this sentence about non-adult stores means convenience stores, gas stations, everybody except these six stores that have greater than 60% of their sales coming from tobacco products. The next bullets are, for tonight's discussion, probably a little less important, but I'll just mention them quickly. Another of our requirements is that tobacco retailers have to be 500 feet from other retailers and they have to be 1,000 feet from schools. With respect to enforcing these requirements, it comes in two parts. The third bullet up there, City of Palo Alto provides undercover checks. It's our job to do the undercover checks with respect to the age limit. And you recall that the age limit was moved up to 21 from 18 by state law fairly recently. So the age is 21 and it's our job to do those kinds of checks. The arrangement we have with the county currently is that they do the permitting and other types of compliance checks at these stores. Well, what are these other types of checks? The non-age-related checks. They check to make sure that the entity has a permit, first of all, under their system. And from our perspective, more importantly, they check to make sure that they're selling things that are allowed, looking at the actual items that they have for sale. And I'll just insert here, because it was one of your questions in the colleague's memo, what is the compliance status? And the county, I just checked with Nicole, she's here if you have more detailed questions. But the big picture is, when they do those annual checks at the stores, they find very minor problems that are corrected right on site. So they haven't had a situation where the county has had to take further action. With respect to our enforcement, the under 21 checks, those are going to begin in earnest in 2020. And the police department stands ready to start those up in that timeframe. So the next slide, so that's our current program. Now, the county has just adopted an ordinance revision with new, more aggressive requirements. And so the first option for council is to adopt the same ordinance that the county has recently amended. That is, amend our ordinance to continue to be consistent, completely consistent with the county ordinance. And just as a reminder, we did this before. When the county adopted the current, our current ordinance, their previous ordinance, we followed suit. We adopted the county ordinance exactly. And so one option is to continue along that vein and adopt the revisions to the county ordinance exactly. That's what the county staff would have us do if we want to continue the partnership that we have now. And the partnership we have now is they're doing the administration of issuing permits and the non-age checks. That's what they're doing in Palo Alto. They're doing it under an agreement that you approved and we signed with the county some time ago. And only those entities that do exactly what the county is doing are able to enter into that partnership with the county. There's two entities now, it's us and Los Gatos. So we're doing exactly what the county is doing in terms of an ordinance and they're supporting us in the way I described. And option number one would have us continue along that vein. That is, adopt exactly what the county, the revisions the county has adopted and then they would continue that partnership with us. The second two bullets are, well, the middle bullet is sort of less important. The last bullet is pretty important, though. We would need to have an ordinance revision that became effective, really should say, by July 1st, 2020. That is, that's the county's deadline is July 1st, 2020. And our new revised ordinance would have to have an effective date on or before July 1, 2020 to continue the consistency with the county. All right. The next option is really sort of everything else. If we don't do exactly what the county is up to, then we may need to run our own permit and non-age compliance program ourselves. I say we may. The, the staff has told us this is what would have to happen. We haven't checked in at a higher level in the county organization and we'd want to have discussions. It's a large organization, they have different components. We'd want to check in with all those other people and including their county council or whatever they call it. So we'd want to, we've started that process of checking with the county as that bullet indicates, discussing. indicates, discussing flexibility. So we're not sure how much flexibility there'd be. Like I say, the staff is telling us there really isn't any flexibility. And we'd either have to do exactly what the county is doing or take over the administration ourselves. If we take over the administration ourselves, we'd need additional resources. We haven't tried to put a finer point on that to say exactly how much. So we'd have to first look into this with the county to see if the partnership could continue in some way and then we come up with a resource estimate. One, that last bullet just indicates that one possible linkage is to say, well, we're not going to adopt the county ordinance immediately because we want to see what the state is up to. And you know, the state has gotten close to very similar rules statewide in the last several sessions, but tabled it in August of 19 once again. But with the growing sentiment on this issue, there's probably going to be more pressure on legislatures and we may see statewide legislation. I just point that out. So that's the two options. Either do, have an ordinance that the county, mirror the county's ordinance, or go our own way and spend some more time looking into that. And now I'll turn that over to Kristin for some bullets on the non-regulatory stuff.
Thank you. Kristin O'Kane with Community Services. So we wanted to just share a little bit on what Healthy City, Healthy Community, the work group is doing on vaping. So we decided as a group that we would be best served as conveners instead of trying to actually work on a project together and focused our first effort on youth vaping. There was strong interest in addressing that. And what we are doing is through PAMF, who's hosting, there'll be a community leaders breakfast in the end of January that will bring together experts in the field, medical professionals, guest speakers, just people who are either interested in vaping or have the knowledge and information to share with others on what is working and what's not working. We realized in healthy cities that there were a lot of unknowns, not knowing who's doing what, where there might be gaps in the community and where we might be able to focus our efforts to make an impact. So that's happening again in the end of January and it'll be at PAMF. And then we're proposing to come back after that, once we learn some things about what's happening out in the community and where we might be able to devote some time and potentially resources. And then we'll bring that to council with a recommendation. Thank you.
And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Let me, I mean, I think it looks pretty obvious to me, but let, maybe just, just, you know, ask it to be just nauseatingly clear here. If we follow the county, basically we're banning the sale of all e-cigarette products in Palo Alto, is that right?
That's correct. Both e-cigarette products and flavored tobacco products as well.
And, and at a, effective at a time of our choosing, but no later than July 1st.
Effective date, yes.
Okay. All right. Why don't we go to the public next? And we have, looks like-
I'll be going first.
About a dozen speakers, so you'll each have two minutes. And the first speaker is Diana Bang.
We're swapping.
Oh, you're swapping, okay.
I'm Dr. Inokchoy. I have been, I had been a physician for 20 years at Palo Alto Medical Foundation in the urgent care and now for the last two years at Santa Clara Valley Medical Center in the emergency room and urgent cares. I'm speaking on my own behalf. I've also helped out with Healthy Cities, Healthy Community and some other city health-related I've had the chance to see what the effects of the way that youth-related advertising targeted towards, targeted of tobacco-related products such as Jo Camel led to such an increase in youth-related smoking. In a similar way, it's been targeted for our youth. And I can tell you from my own two children who are teenagers here in Palo Alto, it's an incredible epidemic that has allowed those children to not only have the opportunity to get hooked on nicotine, but also have the entryway into THC and other illicit substances. This is not a benign issue. Not only does it introduce them to the possibility of developing COPD, you've seen the terrible pictures of people having to be trached, meaning a tube in their throat because their lungs are so damaged that it's irreversible and they can't breathe without a machine to push the air into their lungs. This is something that you have to protect the children early in their life and adults. Adults are similarly able to be damaged by the vitamin E that's used as an additive to make, to thicken the products, not only in the tobacco-related vape, but also the THC-related. And that's the way that the serious complications have been having. CDC has reported that there's been, anyway, thank you for banning vaping.
Well, we haven't done it yet. Thank you very much. Diana Bang.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Diana Pang. I'm a resident of Palo Alto, volunteer and a board member of the Paly PTA. Today, I'm speaking from a personal perspective to support your memo suggesting legislation banning e-cigarette sales in Palo Alto following the recent county ordinance. E-cigarettes are prevalent in our high schools, hurting the students and is an immediate life risk, as we all know by now. This situation needs to be changed right now. E-cigarettes have much higher nicotine levels compared to the traditional ones. These products are designed to hide in plain sight, to look like school supplies like pens, highlighters, and USB sticks. Flavors such as mango, mint, cotton candy were on purpose. The e-cigarettes were directly marketed to kids on social media where teens hand out. This is just so unacceptable, but nicotine is nicotine, period. As busy and caring moms, we look up to your leadership in removing access of e-cigarettes from our students' lives, away from Paly, from Palo Alto, and from everything. We want the kids to grow up healthy, happy, and useful to our society. That's what we're here for. We thank you for your directions today and the support, whichever actions the city takes to eliminate access to vaping devices, pods, and liquids in stores. We also applaud you of promoting healthy habits in teens. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Ma.
Good evening, late evening. My name is Grace Ma. I'm a Palo Alto resident for 35 years and a parent of a gun student. I am also the Gun PTSA Advocacy Chair and I'm on the Santa Clara County School Board. And I am speaking tonight as an individual and a parent and supportive, certainly of the colleagues' memo for urgency ordinance. It's very clear that following along with the Board of Supervisors ordinance without exceptions and prohibiting sales near youth-sensitive areas is something that we should all just go ahead and follow and do. It is, the latest information from the CDC is that of, as of December 5th, there have been 2,300 lung injuries and 48 deaths. We should go ahead and just pass the ordinance and ban vaping to save our youth from a lifetime of nicotine addiction and depriving kids from a lifetime of health benefits. I'll keep it short so we can go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Jan Parcell.
Hi, and thank you. I'm a grandmother, retired engineer, and vapor. And I've been following the evolution of vaping and the science around vaping for nine years. A week or two ago, the CDC published findings from lung samples from 29 patients from the recent vaping lung injuries. All 29 samples showed vitamin E acetate, a recently developed black market thickener added to THC vapes only in order to make them appear to be pure cannabis. This ingredient is never in tobacco e-cigarettes, period. Most of our patients who initially enclaimed that they didn't use THC later changed their story and said, yeah, we were. But a few in felony states are still saying they didn't. There have been zero injuries or deaths due to e-cigarettes, as defined legally by the FDA. The CDC doesn't actually know that definition. In short, black markets from prohibition or high taxes caused these illnesses and deaths, just as 10,000 people died from poisoned alcohol during prohibition. Studies also show that no unexpected toxins like formaldehyde come out of vapes at normal temperatures. The ones that showed that, they were burning them. And the New England Journal of Medicine has a recent study that shows those things aren't there if you're not burning them and vapors won't vape them if you are burning them. Microwave ovens have exactly the same problem. If you run them on empty, they will burn up and release massive toxin smoke. And I've seen in the 60s that when people exaggerated the dangers of marijuana, kids stopped believing adults. And I got a midnight call from my sister, you've got to come up and take my friend, we can't wake her up, you've got to take her to the free clinic. She had decided since adults were lying and exaggerating the dangers of marijuana, saying you'll be on heroin right away and die, that she didn't believe in barbiturates and alcohol. She was okay, but others weren't. I think we need to preserve adult credibility to protect our teens.
Thank you. Eileen Kim.
Hi, my name is Eileen Kim. I'm a Palo Alto parent and I have a child in middle school as well as elementary. I'm also the VP of Health and Wellness on the Parent Teacher Council at Palo Alto. I'm actually here to speak on myself as well as as a parent. I hold several degrees in pharmacy as in the sciences, as well as a doctor of pharmacy degree. I've worked in the hospital system, both on various units, including cardiology, orthopedic surgery, and general medicine. I'm here to support the expansion of the ordinance to prohibit the sale and distribution of the electronic cigarettes to mirror Santa Clara's ordinance. But I actually want to urge you to go one step further and actually reinforce the current restrictions in place of where people vape, where they should not be vaping in public places. I want you to go further and take enforcement action against people who vape in public places. And this is the reason why. The 2019 National Youth Tobacco Survey showed that its increasing rates of e-cigarette use in middle and high school students, more than 5 million youth have used e-cigarettes in the past month. That's more than 1 million using it every day. These compounds are highly addictive. As a pharmacist, I'll tell you that nicotine cessation patches have no more than 21 milligrams of nicotine in a 24-hour period for an adult. Now Juul pods have been found to have an equivalent of 41 cigarettes. That's one Juul pod. Kids are using more than one pod a day. Kids are showing up in the ER room with nicotine overdoses. But not only that, I want to talk about the absorption rate. When you inhale it through the lungs, it's an instantaneous reaction in the brain. So you are not only having a chemical addiction, you're having a habit loop forming where it's an instantaneous powerful reward mechanism that's occurring. Thirdly, these are not just cancer patients that are occurring, but you're having acute structural lung damage happening within about three years. Please protect the children and the immunocompromised and the pregnant women who do not know that vaping no longer has a tobacco scent. People vape around here and no one knows and we inhale secondhand smoke. Please choose the positive effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Premsky.
I'm a Palo Alto resident and a parent of, along with my wife, of a gun freshman. I was here two years ago when you were debating the multi-unit prohibition on smoking and vaping and you passed that. We were in support of that. And I'm here to tell you tonight that it worked, that it was actually very good in our unit. What it did was it made enforcement stronger by the owner, who fired the manager and got a new manager. So the work that you do here and the ordinances you pass, I want to attest that they have, they do some good. I want to reinforce what the previous speaker just said about secondhand smoke. Because one of the problems in our building with 60 units was that the smoke traveled all through the building through various ways. And we could smell it and we knew that. Now, a lot of people are vaping and we can't smell it in the same way. We smell various smells, but we don't know exactly what they are. So it becomes more dangerous. We have a kid and we're concerned, but for all the residents in the building, because the secondhand smoke is harder to detect. So I support totally the measures that you're going to take and even stronger measures so that people will know that this is not acceptable behavior in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Erwin Morton.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity. I've been a Palo Alto resident for nearly 40 years. I'm currently serving as the Vice President for Advocacy on the PTA Council, so serving our 17 schools, even though my kids have long since graduated from Paly. I was happy to attend the Hooked event. In fact, a couple of us from the PTA Council shared a table with Councilmember Cormac and with Becky Beakham from PAMF and learned a lot. And we've been attending a lot of other meetings where we've learned a lot. This is both a local problem and a global one. And we are thinking about the issues and working on them at every level, from the individual child and the student leaders at our high schools, up through policymakers here, this city and neighboring cities, and PAUSD, to the county, the state, and even the federal government. Because we are fortunate that our Congresswoman is currently the Chair of the Health Subcommittee in the House. So I want to thank you for focusing on this issue and I just want to encourage you to create complete alignment with the county, both for the reasons listed on that slide and also because it reduces the incentive for kids to cross from one jurisdiction to another to purchase things that might not be available, might be available here but not in Menlo Park or vice versa. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Divya Ganeshan.
Good evening, Council. My name is Divya Ganeshan and I'm the President of the Palo Alto Youth Council, here with my Vice President, Faisal. Today, we are here to represent the youth voice in this critical topic affecting generally us. I want to take a second to look at the audience here. We have a great range of people, but unfortunately, I would say there are not enough youth here who are the people who are primarily being affected by the issue of vaping. It is great to see that distribution is being a key thing addressed today in the ordinance. But as Councilmember Greg Tanaka pointed out, distribution is simply not everything. As Palo Alto Youth Council, we have pledged to address two other aspects of vaping that are equally important. Number one, we are surveying teens who are actually vaping to schools to ask them, what do they think would be the effective solutions? Because as it stands, adults and even teens who don't vape can't tell us what's going to actually work. And number two is a key education for parents. What we can control is what's going on in people's houses and that's when parents have a role to play. As Palo Alto Youth Council, we pledge to work on that. And we would love to work with City Council to see how these measures can be turned into effective legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Anderson.
In full transparency, well, I'm a Palo Alto resident, I was born and raised here, but in full transparency, I've worked in the tobacco industry for over 20 years. Okay? And I'm not here to represent my previous employers, but I'm here to give my own personal views from my, my experience. Now, I really agree with everything that the Council has said in terms of the health and welfare of our community needs to be our primary objective here. But I think we can agree that consuming or consuming nicotine via the combustion of tobacco is unhealthy. It's something that should not be promoted. It's something that should not be promoted. If we have a way, however, to deliver that nicotine to those legal adults that choose to do so in a less harmful measure, that's something that we should be staying, stepping away from. We should be giving choice. As you have all said, distribution, control, and keeping it out of the hands of minors is the most important thing we can do. And prohibition, wholesale prohibition, is not the right solution to that. It's education, as we've talked about. It's about managing the supply chain. There is technology today that will allow us to better track and trace the distribution of these products, the use of e-cigarette devices, being able to lock them or trace them through the supply chain. And if we care about the health and welfare of the entirety of our community, the discussion has to be broader than just keeping it out of the hands of children, which is a primary concern. But it has to be, how do we provide products that are federally legal that reduce the risk from combustion as it exists today?
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers, we return to council. Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, so first of all, I want to thank members of the public for coming out. I think this is a very important topic. I have a son in high school and a daughter in middle school, so I definitely can associate with a lot of the comments here. And maybe just as a beginning, I thought that we could just make the motion, or I can make the motion, to have the recommendation on page one on the screen, and then we could start from that. Is there a second?
I apologize. I was answering a question off mic, and I didn't hear it. I apologize. I was answering a question off mic. I didn't hear the question.
Oh, sorry. Okay. No, I just thought we could start.
As a prepared motion, okay?
Yeah, prepared motion.
So, prepare an ordinance prohibiting the sale and distribution of all electronic cigarettes in alignment with the county, with as few exemptions as possible. Legislation may get harder for minors to successfully order, i.e. needing a signature of a 21-year-old at delivery. Provide an update on the county's recent enforcement activities, and provide $25,000 from the council contingency fund to the Healthy City, Healthy Community Working Group. Is that the, that's your motion?
Yeah, I thought we could start with this, if there's a second.
Is there a second?
People could build off it if it makes sense.
I'll be happy to second with minor modification to D if Councilmember Tanaka is open to that, with staff suggesting the amount of funding needed after the community meeting in January.
Sure. Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay. So provide funding in an amount to be determined from the council contingency fund?
Yeah, so what I'd written down for direct staff, so we're missing the part where we direct staff, I think, in the motion.
Oh, yes.
Up in the very top before A.
To direct staff to, yes.
Not like we're going to do it, as we discussed earlier.
You're busy enough on the ad hoc, right?
So under D then would be direct staff to suggest funding as needed after community meeting in January. So that just captures what was in the staff resource impact, and then what Director O'Kane spoke about. Okay. So the rest can be deleted. Thank you. Happy to second.
Do you want to, in the amount of $25,000, to go away?
I think, yeah, I think all of it should go away after the January 2020.
I think that's fine.
All of it?
Yeah. So it'll be set in the future. That's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Tanaka, care to speak to your motion?
Well, I think a lot of people spoke about it already. The part that I would like to speak about more is, is kind of, because I think this is kind of like a good baseline. I don't know if there's going to be too much debate on this part right here. Maybe there is. I don't know. But we'll find out. But the part I guess I would like to talk about more, and I think I'm glad some members of the public talked about it as well, which is, I don't think distribution's enough. I think this is kind of one step. I think we could all admit that probably it's not going to, you know, you can buy it online, AliExpress, no ID needed, you know, there's lots of ways to get vaping products. So, you know, we could try as we want to stop it at the physical stores, but I don't think it's going to be totally sufficient. Some members of the public talked about vaping in public, or youth vaping in public. And, you know, I didn't push too hard for this to be in the memo right now, but I thought we should discuss it, because I do think it's warranted. You know, I've actually had a lot of discussions with high school students on this very topic. Most said that distribution might do a little bit, but not a whole lot, just because it's so easy to get. But of course, this will make it harder. So the part that, and I guess I'm looking at Councilmember Cormac for thoughts on this, is something more around, maybe as an E here, to, to, like, youth vaping in public, something around there with, like, having a fine, because I think that we could, we could try as we want to stop on the distribution side, but I think the challenge is, it's kind of within high schools, this view that's been cool, that it's no big deal, right? I mean, my kids go into the bathroom, they say it smells like con candy, right? All the time. Kids are vaping openly in public, not even trying to hide it anymore. And so that total lack of enforcement, I don't think provides a really good educational environment for our kids. And so I think, I wanted to just get Councilmember Cormac's thoughts on this in terms of, what could we do that could take this one step further? Because I think some members of the public have talked about this, and I've talked to a lot, and I think this is something that might help. I mean, very much the way, I think, the fire alarm at Paly has not been pulled again since the fine went in place. But maybe share some of your thoughts on this.
It hasn't, it isn't something that I considered before this evening, so I'm reluctant to support it at this moment. We could certainly ask staff to research, you know, the options for, you're basically asking it to be possession to be a crime? What exactly are you asking?
No, I don't think we want it a crime, or we want to, like, suspend kids, because I think that's, I think suspension of kids, and we've talked about this before. Suspension of kids, probably taking kids out of school is probably not the right thing. It probably makes it worse.
Can I, can I try here? I think you're suggesting that staff investigate potential disincentives for use by minors?
Yeah, disincentives, and particularly, like, fines, fines for vaping in, for youth vaping in public. So it's not a, because I think right now, vaping in the bathrooms, at school, no big deal to a lot of kids, like, it happens, and it's hard, and it's like, there's no...
So maybe we could just modify A then? Maybe, oh, maybe separate. Okay, let's put it in D. What was the mayor's research disincentives for students to?
Yeah, I believe staff to investigate possible disincentives for vaping by minors.
Vaping in public, yeah.
Sorry, there's a difference. Minors or in public?
I think, I think minors or youth vaping. I think to vape, to cut down, you know, I think that's probably a better starting point.
I'm tempted to leave it vaping in public slightly broader, based on at least one of the comments that was made this evening.
I'm actually, I'm actually okay with that, but I don't know if my other colleagues are, because that's more broad than narrow, but if...
Okay, well, let's, I'm sure people get another chance, and I realize also I should have, if Councilmember Tanaka is amenable, to C. I think the staff has already provided an update on the county's recent enforcement activities. I think what might be more helpful is to have staff provide a yearly update on enforcement activities, period, because that would include our own. Are you amenable to that? Okay, so C would read, provide a yearly update on enforcement activities. So you can get rid of the county's recent. Yeah, sorry, and I'll wait till you're done with that. And then D, actually, I do think is two separate ideas. So yes, and then...
I agree. I think that ought to be E.
Perfect. Thank you. And you can take out the direct staff and just get to investigate. Sorry, I'm wordsmithing. It's late at night. Okay, I'll stop there. Are you done speaking to your first?
Yeah, I mean, basically, basically, I just, as I was saying, I think this is a starting point. I think, I think fines for vaping in public, or something along those lines, to also hit the demand side as well.
Is it, is it actually illegal to vape in public?
Only in those areas, if you're over, well, only in those areas where smoking has been banned. So it's, it's the whole University Avenue commercial area, it's the California Avenue commercial area, and it's in condominiums and multi-unit places. It's a whole list of things.
It's happening at schools, right? Pretty, like, pretty openly and widespread, and that's what really bugs me, actually.
So, so is it, is, hey, Phil? Is it illegal for somebody under 21 to vape, period, in Palo Alto? I mean, I know they can't buy it, but can they use it?
No, it's not illegal. It's that the 21 applies to purchase, and then you look at these locations to see whether anybody can smoke or not. No one can smoke in those areas that we designate.
Yeah, I think the idea is to make it not, I mean, so someone in the bathroom vaping away, making it smell like con candy, right? Getting secondhand vaping on people, there should be a way to stem that, right? To, if you're caught doing that, you get a fine, like $500, and maybe it escalates or something like that. I'm sure staff would come up with a way that would be effective, but I think, I think we want to attack it from both sides.
If I could ask for clarification, Councilmember, you're speaking specifically to schools, and certainly would be, certainly be appropriate for us to consult with the school district as to what options might exist.
Yeah, I mean, this is also why I wouldn't want to be so prescribed, because I don't necessarily know the solution. I just know that distribution's probably not enough. But, I mean, it's schools, certainly, one aspect of it, but town and country right across the street, that's also another issue there. So I think it's, it's, you know, I think it's going to take the staff some time to kind of really figure this out, but I think, I want you guys to understand the intent, which is, we're going to try, I think, distributions, distribution-wise, we'd kind of copy the county, if that makes sense. But on the other side, which is kind of attacking the demand side, how do we do that? And so, you know, how do you enforce it? You know, how do you, what kind of fine levels? How do you collect it? I mean, there's a whole bunch of issues that I think, I think we're not going to figure out here tonight.
Understood.
Mayor, could I just offer one area where we need a little clarification?
Yes, please.
On A, it refers to electronic cigarettes. It says in alignment with the county, but there's two parts. One part is electronic cigarettes, the other is flavored tobacco products. So what we've done to date, and what the county did, was both electronic cigarettes and flavored tobacco products.
You meant to include both, right?
Yeah.
So why don't we include both?
Yeah, it would say, and flavored tobacco products, which includes menthol cigarettes, which we've banned in the non-adult stores already, but not in the adult stores.
The exact language of the county ordinance is e-cigarette product. Is that, I mean, does electronic cigarettes cover that, or is there stuff?
We don't think it was entirely clear. So we, we think this phrasing, the county ordinance is kind of long and has references in different places. So we, if you want us to mirror the county ordinance, we'd prefer you have both electronic cigarettes and flavored tobacco products in your motion.
Councilmember Niss.
So...
Oh, uh, let's see. Councilman, have you spoken to your second? Sorry. Councilmember Cormac, care to speak to your second?
Thank you. It's still been clarifying. Actually, while we're wordsmithing on C, I think we've lost a little bit. After existing, we should, if you could please put tobacco retail ordinance on C. Tobacco retail ordinance. Thank you so much. Okay. So earlier, I just made short comments. Many people have covered why, you know, this is so important. I do want to say, I've had a small number of people reach out to me concerned about harm reduction. And I'm not unsympathetic to the argument of harm reduction for current smokers. But when I balance that against the health effects on young people whose brains are not yet developed really truly until they're 25, I feel that this is an appropriate action to take in the interest of public health and welfare. A, the reason to do it in alignment with the county is, A, that's traditionally the way that we've operated, and it will frankly save us on enforcement costs going forward. It will also mean, you know, I think consistency, whether it's here or in our, our building ordinances, makes it easier for people to operate. B, you know, we know from the study that some, some children are able to purchase these online, and so we know there are already methods for making that harder. We can't do that ourselves here, but I'm confident that working with our lobbyists, we can, we can work on that. Having a regular update on enforcement activities, I think, would be helpful. I think that would just be good hygiene for us to have a standard thing. The way we get our Earth Day report, we're going to get our update on enforcement activities. And then with D, I think, you know, I totally agree with what Vice Mayor Fine said, that this is absolutely, as I've said repeatedly at city school meetings, that we are not going to change the world, you know, by, by making this decision here tonight. We can be part of, part of the solution, but I do think it's important for the community, including the students, to come together and brainstorm about how to work with people and families to be more healthy. And E, again, as I mentioned earlier, I'm reserving, you know, my right to see, to see about that, but I think it's certainly, you know, it's certainly worth investigating. And again, I thank my colleagues for working on this and the community for helping us make it better.
Councilmember Niss, to be followed by Councilmember DeBois, and then Vice Mayor Fine.
It's great to have an item that's easy to support. So thank you all for bringing this to us tonight. I certainly appreciate that. And with my background in public health, I couldn't help but support this. But one of the things that, or one of the areas, Greg, I wonder if you'd be interested in adding on, and I was puzzled as to why you didn't, was work with the school district?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's really important. Yeah.
Yeah. So could you add an F that says, work with the school district?
Yeah.
Because there's still some nurses left in the system out there.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think that what you said earlier just resonates, having listened to some of my family, because I was back east this weekend, they said the vaping problem is just astonishing in schools.
Yeah, no, it is. And actually, one thing I was going to add was, and while we'll have to work with the school district, is the money, we do get fines from people vaping in public. The money could be used to pay for vaping sensors in bathrooms that go off when people vape in there, so.
Well, I hadn't realized it was so prevalent with teens that are 13 and 14, so, which I think is just astonishing.
You want to say, work with, work with PAUSD to reduce youth vaping, or something like that?
Yeah, working with PAUSD through city school liaison, or however you want to do that, but I think that that would make, that would make some difference, as was just said. We're probably not going to wipe out vaping with this one, with this one item tonight, but I think that we've brought it to the attention of the public, and especially, as I said, I was really amazed at how prevalent it was among young teens. So delighted to support it. Thank you for adding F.
Councilmember DeBois.
Yep. Happy to support this. Want to thank my colleagues for bringing this to us. We've been hearing about these issues for a while. Just a couple of practical points on the, on the motion itself. Did staff know when county passed their ban?
The time, it was, I believe, November of 18. Is that right, Nicole?
November of this year.
Say it again.
The current ban is November of this year.
Yeah, it was November of this year.
Okay, so just recently. Okay.
Oh, 19, sorry.
Yeah. So, yeah, the only thing was, like, we're going to do two readings now, and then we have the ban effective in July, so just to, hopefully we can do that in January, I guess, have it come to us fairly quickly. I mean, I'm just wondering, like, legally, is there a certain amount of time we need to give them? give them before they have to remove it from their shelves?
Well, they'd have to, to be in alignment with the county fully, they'd have to remove it by July 1st of '20.
No, I know. The county gave them from November to July. I'm just asking, like, when our ordinance would come, and how many months that would be?
Tom's asking if there's any reason we can't make them remove it by February.
No, no, that's not what I'm asking. You had all...
So, I think there's plenty of time if the staff comes back, you know, and, or the two readings need to be 11 days apart, and then there's 30 days for the referendum, period. But certainly, staff could start doing outreach fairly promptly next year, and there's plenty of time to let folks know.
Yeah.
By, by the July 1 day.
There are these six stores, for all practical purposes, that are impacted.
Yeah, okay, I just want to make sure we don't get ourselves in trouble if we, the period's too short for some reason.
Yeah, we can, we can do that outreach fairly quickly.
And then the other items, I guess, B through F, it's not really clear to me, like, how those are going to be achieved. I'm wondering if we should refer these to, like, Policy and Services. So, when staff comes back with the funding recommendation, where is that going to go? And they come back with a yearly update, or other avenues for legislation, that's like a pretty substantial discussion potentially. So, I, what was staff planning to do with B through F?
I think, once again, it's at the pleasure of the council. We could either bring it back directly to the council, there is a reference to city-school liaison for a piece of it, or, again, to committee. So, at your pleasure.
I just think it'd be good to be clear. Either, either way, I think some of it might be a substantial discussion.
Send it somewhere.
Yeah, to send maybe to Policy and Services.
I guess, how does the secondor feel?
Well, the legislation one, I think, that comes to the whole council usually, right? Legislation isn't reviewed at the committee level, so I think B should stay.
Can be. And if there was a recommendation, P, Policy and Services could make it.
So, if I can help a little bit, so, A, because that, that legislation is already worked out in quite a bit of detail, although there might be some refinements, it's, that typically wouldn't be sent to a committee? It probably comes right back to council.
No, I was saying, yeah, B through F.
Right. But the other items, then it's, again, it's at your discretion whether you want them to come directly back to council or to committee for further work and then recommendation to council. Any, any additional ordinance, of course, does have to come to council and be adopted. So, if there was anything that developed out of E, that would definitely eventually come to council.
You know, on further reflection, I would note that there are so many dimensions to this, that it probably makes sense for us to just bring it back directly to council so that we could give you an update based on fleshing out legislative options, where we are with enforcement activities, again, as a, as a package report. On behalf of staff, let me make that recommendation, that it be brought back to the full council, and then, depending on what we find, may choose to refer it further.
Okay, so could we just clarify that? That these things are being returned to council? Great, thanks.
Sorry, just, I'm looking at the word. The words are still aren't, the sentence still isn't exactly right. The meaning's clear, the sentence still isn't exactly right. Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to four colleagues for crafting this so far. I don't think I'm going to make any changes, but one or two questions. So, I noticed on the slide about the option one, about permit suspensions being extended from 24 to 60 months. Have we had, anybody had their permit suspended?
No.
Recently, or ever?
It, it's a fairly new program, and we've not.
Okay. And then, I just want to thank our chief for coming, and I just have one or two questions, Chief Johnson, if you wouldn't mind. This is largely around letter E. And so, so the mayor was asking a few questions earlier, you know, if you're under 21 and vaping, what, how do we treat those individuals, and understand that there are some areas where smoking is just banned? What about if you're under 18, and one of your officers finds a youth vaping? Do they do anything, or smoking?
No, as far as the enforcement, as you heard from a few of the commenters earlier, as well as, I believe, this supervisor, is California in 2016 decriminalized tobacco products with minors. So, if we come in contact, or the SROs, the school resource officers, come in contact with a minor in possession of e-cigarette or vaping device, they can confiscate it, and they generally do, and they offer it back to the parents if the parents want the device or the product back, or to the school. A vast majority of the interactions within our schools within Palo Alto are already addressed by the student, the school staff...
Okay.
...who handle it administratively.
Okay. And with letter E here, you know, investigating disincentives and or fines, could you just, like, paint us a picture of what that might look like? Do you hear of any other cities, you know, having their officers actually assess fines or citations? I'm just wondering, what are we...
Well, I think, and this is really probably a question for the city attorney, I mean, in our world, generally, fines do go hand in hand with criminal violation...
Okay.
...or an infraction. Again, what makes this more interesting is in California with minors, and the fact that most of these types of things have been decriminalized, a fine would be kind of associated with it being a criminal act.
Okay.
As far, and I think, did you want to say something on that, Molly?
Yeah, it's an interesting question. There is such a thing as a civil fine. We have to explore whether it's within the city's authority at this point to do that kind of regulation, or whether the state has reserved that to itself.
And that, that's where I was going to go. Administrative fines could be imposed, or civil fines, but then you have to have the process to collect them, grieve them. When I was with the city of Palmdale, we had administrative fines for various things. And, but it was a whole department that ended up having to oversee that, because they have to, if there is issued a fine, they have to have the ability to grieve the fine, there's appeal processes, and then there's collection processes, and everything else. So, it can get relatively complex.
Okay. That, that's really helpful, and thank you, Chief, for that. Just wanted to issue a couple of questions there, so my colleagues can understand better. Otherwise, happy to support this.
Councilmember Tanaka to be followed by Councilmember Koo.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the reason why I thought the fines are kind of important is because it gets parents' attention, right? And so, I think, but I do understand the complexity, and this is why I think it's really good for them to investigate, because it's not, it's not so easy to implement.
Councilmember Koo.
So, I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this memo forward. I learned about this issue from a high school student two years ago who approached me at a, at a Halloween party, and ever since then, I've been working with the Palo Alto Youth Council to get them to find out more from their, from their environment, from their peers. And that was when they came here for the study session and conveyed the survey that they had worked on. And since then, going to the county's Hooked Symposium, I've also learned that the waste of the e-cigarettes is another problem, and that the cigarettes itself, I mean, these products have chemicals in them, and it's becoming a problem as well. So, I think there needs to also be consideration for measures to eliminate that environmental contamination. My understanding, in this combustible tobacco product, they have also the, it's actually considered a hazardous toxic material. And so, disposal of it, it should be actually going to our hazards facility in order to be disposed of, rather than just into our trash cans, rubbish cans, and so forth, simply because somebody else might pick it up, or animal might get to it, or it can actually leach into our water supply, and it could cause problems there. So, in addition, I think, I don't know too much about these products, but there is a battery involved in these e-cigarettes, and it's usually lithium ion. And, and so, that might be another. As it degrades, it might, again, leach into water sources and contaminate, contaminate other, other things. I'm reading here, besides the nicotine inside these products, there's also heavy metals involving lead, and we know lead is not good for the body, or for anybody. And then there's tin, and then there's nickel. So, I would like to ask the maker and the secondor if they'll consider to add in here to ask staff to explore, or to come back with disposal method, or...
Could I just speak to that? That you're exactly right. It's a hazardous waste, and we do accept it at our household hazardous waste facility, 9 to 11, Saturday mornings, Friday afternoon, first Friday of the month.
That's great.
We accept any kind of these devices. You're right that the battery is a complexity that we're sort of looking into, but we get few enough of them that we'll deal with that for now. But the battery should be separated from the other to make it more easy for us to deal with, but we'll deal with whatever comes in.
Thank you. So, I don't know if it's educational that we need to provide in order to have people understand it is a hazardous substance, and disposing it just willy-nilly is not a good idea. But I would, it would be really great for you guys to consider putting something in there about disposal.
Councilmember Tanaka?
I don't oppose it, but I, do you have something specific that you want to...
What if, what if we, we add a G that says something, we're already directing staff to recommend appropriate disposal methods and education for electronic cigarettes?
Thank you.
I'm, I'm fine with that, although I'm hoping that, you know, we stop vaping, that this doesn't become a problem.
Yeah, but until then, you know, we need a way to ensure that we don't further pollute.
And my, my, my thinking would be here, just make sure it's on all of the zero-waste things, and, you know, it's listed, and, you know, don't put this in the garbage. You know, we, our utilities department will be able to work with this.
We, we just added it to our website, so it's clear that you can bring it to the household hazardous waste day. And there's a parallel to medicines, you know, where they wanted to get it out of the house, and that, and we have a place for them to take it.
Thank you for your consideration and for putting it on.
Seeing no further lights, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes 7-0. Thank you very much to the authors of the memo for bringing this forward. Thank you very much to the members of the public who joined us this evening, and we will move on to council member comments and quest, and questions and announcements. And I see no lights. Very well. We have one further item tonight, which is a closed-session item related to property negotiation in, in the California Avenue area. So, can I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Cormac, seconded by Vice Mayor Fine. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes 6-0 with Councilmember Koo absent.